Can we, sorry for being late, we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda. Is there reconvening from closed session with your roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jidovic.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember Brent.
Here.
And Mayor is absent, and Mayor Protem Nierenheim.
Here. All right, Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
You have a report.
Under items F3 and F4, the City Council unanimously authorized the City Attorney to defend the city in both of the listed cases there, F3 and F4.
All right, perfect. So I'd like to get a roll call for our start, call to order a regular meeting at 6:23 on our fourth meeting of the month of May, our bonus meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jidovic.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember Brent.
Here.
Mayor absent, Mayor Brent absent, and Mayor Protem Nierenheim.
Here. All right, we'll do a salute to the flag, and then we will do a moment of silence. On three, one, two, three.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, we have no presentations today, or proclamations, or checks to give, or get. Can we get announcements, though? Councilmember Lowenstein?
Yeah, just one quick announcement. A really nice District Two community meeting. My colleague, Paige Kellard Jarovic.
Yes.
Did I get her right?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, good, yay, joined us. And we had a really nice talk about District Three and her priorities, and also the budget. So I'll be back talking about the June District Two meeting at a future council meeting. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kalu Jidovic.
Just a recap from last announcement, I guess. Tomorrow is the last day to fill out the Metro Transportation Corridor Survey, so please do that before tomorrow.
Councilmember Obaji.
All right, I wanted to thank Tom Lasser for setting up a beautiful and entire Veterans' Memorial Task Force, for setting up a beautiful Memorial Day celebration commemoration at Veterans Park yesterday. It speaks volumes to our city and the memorial that our U.S. Representative Ted Lieu was there, Senator Ben Allen, State Assembly Member Al Marisucci, and all five council members were there. So it was a beautiful, and the City Manager, Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, beautiful event, lots of veterans in the crowd from all six branches of the military, and appreciate that. Second, I wanted to let folks know in District Four specifically, North Redondo, all Redondo, that it's budget season. So if there is something that you think could be better in Redondo Beach, or you'd like to see money allocated for a specific thing, this is the time to reach out to us, the council members, and make your thoughts known. Really, we can't be on every block in the city, we can't observe every corner. So if you see an opportunity for improvement, please do let us know so we can bring that to this body and hopefully get money allocated to it. That's all, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to announce that I am going to have my second community meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, May 31st, at Anderson Park Senior Center at 6 o'clock. And we will be discussing the budget. And to Councilmember Obaji's really good point, we invite all comment, all input. You are the eyes and ears of Redondo Beach. And so please come and visit with me and with others from District Five and beyond. We are expecting a special guest, who I will not announce, but come see for yourself. Hopefully they'll be there. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. A couple things, yes, we had a Memorial Day celebration event yesterday down at Veterans Park, at the Veterans Memorial, which the Veterans Task Group Force put together. They put it together twice a year for the Memorial Day memorial event for those who have fallen, and then, of course, for the Veterans Day event for those who are veterans of serving our country. And they changed the flags there, and it's fantastic turnout there. We've got all the way up from our Congressman Ted Lieu to our State Senator Ben Allen, Al Marisucci, Assembly Member. We had the Mayor of Vermosa Beach swing by, Ray Jackson. And let's see, who else? We had, oh, can't forget Scott Houston from the Water District, West Basin. It was great to see him there, he always shows up. And of course, our Police and Fire were there in full force, thank you very much. Of course, our Public Works for setting everything up, and Community Services, Shannon, Mike, you guys have all done a great job, had big kudos from the team down there. And of course, can't forget the Alex Club for putting on the barbecue afterwards. And it's a lot to organize, a lot to take care of. It's a real privilege to have that down there on the coastline, and have so many residents come out for that. In addition to city items, there is a survey on the City Redondo Beach website for our budget. And if you are interested, in the same token as two councilmembers have spoken regarding the community, there's a survey. How should we be spending our money? City staff came up with a budget, we are now reviewing that at the council. And you can go online, check it out, and try to see if you, what your priorities are, and let us know through that. Those results will be coming forth towards us. And with the May 30th, just over a month from now, I'm going to start letting you all know that there's a fireworks show down in Riviera Village on Avenue I, and there is going to be a musical venue down there as well. And the headlining band will be, or the group of people, if I get this right, is the members of the Oingo-Bongo Band singing their big famous hits. So it's not the Oingo-Bongo Band, but it's the members of the Oingo-Bongo Band singing their, singing the hits of Oingo-Bongo. Legal distinction, if it sounds exactly like them, then maybe, you know, it's good. So there's going to be a big, big party down there, a big event, so welcome all down there. And of course, it starts today with a Fourth of July fun run for Mike Ward, Village Runner. It's always exciting, the firecracker run. Hard to have the Independent Day Fourth of July fun run on Third of July, so it's great to see it on that day. So with that said, that's it for me. Back to the order of agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Blue folder items, I know I saw three items come in to the blue folder, anything else?
Yes. No, those three. So J1, non-agenda items, public communications. L2, approve the public hearing related to the Engineering and Traffic Studies, public communications. P1, which is adopt of a City Council policy for display of similar flags. There's codes for Title, United States Code Title IV, Chapter 1, and Government Code, California Government Code, Section 433, 439. Those are it, that I have.
Perfect. Is there a motion to put those to the record?
So moved.
Second.
All right, anyone opposed? None. Okay. Moving forward, we have no agency recesses, skipped over that. Consent calendar, we only have two items on the consent calendar, can we go ahead and make a motion to approve those two items?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone opposed? Anyone want to speak to the two items on the consent calendar? Thank you, appreciate that.
Zoom or ecomments?
Is there any Zoom or ecomments on the two items that are mandatory for us to post, which I'm not exactly, well, that's why. All right, none, seeing none. Public participation on non-agenda items. So this is a 30-minute comment period. We start off with these cute little orange cards first, and then we go to in-person comments right here. Then we will go to Zoom comments, and then we'll go back to in-person comments, a maximum of three minutes per person. And we cannot respond, we can ask the clarifying questions, but we cannot respond to any of the comments, it's not on the agenda. You can only speak on items that are not on the agenda. So if you're speaking of something on the agenda, we will have to take that for a later point in time. So it is 6:30, one on that clock up there. The first one we have is Lena Creo from Redondo Beach Professional Service Association.
Hi, hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. Lena Creo, President of RBPSA. Some of our members are also here in attendance tonight, again, showing support for this statement as well as for their fellow employees. There's two items I'd like to address tonight. First, I wanted to add some clarity to the statement made at the 516 Council Meeting by RBCEA President Pete Tucker, comparing Redondo Beach compensation to that of Manhattan Beach and Beverly Hills. This comparison was questioned by a council member at the end of that meeting, saying Redondo is not in the same league as Beverly Hills. The statement from Pete Tucker was actually a direct reflection of a statement from this dais, specifically the City Council Meeting of October 4th, 2022. Watch the meeting video at the 44-minute mark. It was the discussion on raising City Council compensation. At the 44-minute mark, it was said from that dais that council compares its employee wages to those of Manhattan Beach and Beverly Hills. So this comparison did not come from city employees, it did not come from this podium, it came from your dais. So to have it turned around on us, that we are the ones making an irrelevant comparison is simply wrong. I actually encourage all of you to watch the entire meeting video from October 4th, item H8, especially our two new council members. It's a great discussion on why competitive compensation matters. And as a reminder, with the increase to the Mayor and Council pay that was approved last October, your compensation will be 112% that of Beverly Hills. So I would still say Beverly Hills is a fair comparison to our employees' salaries. Otherwise, your own compensation is out of Redondo's league. In fact, even your old compensation was already 42% above the median in the comparison chart presented to the Budget and Finance Commission when they considered this matter. With the increase you approved for yourselves at that time, it brought you to over $1,000 a month above median, the highest pay for council members overall. And here, your employees are struggling to convince you to just even get us to the median at the very least. Second, I want to address the same topic I've spoken on the last few times, opening up negotiations early for our current MOUs. The nominal salary increases over the last seven to eight years have left us on average 10% below market. Our current MOU spans the years of 2021, 22, and 23, with only on average a 1% salary increase each of those years. This contract is dated through the end of this year, December 31st. It's actually been asked of me, if we're still under contract, how can a salary increase be negotiated ahead of that end date? The answer is simple, it can be. To provide you an example, back during the Great Recession, the employee groups were in only year two of a four-year contract. Due to the economic conditions, the city approached the unions and asked to open those contracts. The unions agreed, and so we worked cooperatively by renegotiating our contracts, foregoing the salary increases owed to us in years three and four of those agreements of 8%, and taking a 6% pay cut on top of that. So just like the employees were willing to come to the table at the city's time of crisis and renegotiate our MOU, we now ask the city, come to the table at this current time of crisis for our employees, and renegotiate to provide salary increases to bring us to market well ahead of that December expiration date. It's not about ability, it's about the city's willingness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person, anyone want to come down and speak? Open mic. There you go.
Mark Hanson, King Harbor Boater. I just want to add about the Memorial Day event, they just do a spectacular job. Everybody who works on that is to be commended. I mean, I just sit back every time and watch and just think how amazing it is what's put together. As I think all of you know, I stumbled on the fact some years ago that the Veterans Day event and this event are routinely not on the city calendar. Somehow, it's just something we all miss, and a lot of times I don't notice it, you know, until Saturday and Sunday, it's too late, the offices are closed. Fortunately, I spotted it Friday, and this was a Friday we were open. And so Shannon Snead was absolutely wonderful, she contacted Renee and Rabby, and within moments, they had it up on the website. I contacted Mara, the Vice President of the Chamber, within moments, she had it up. So that's my little contribution. But it was funny, sitting here, and as the Mayor Protem mentioned, Fourth of July coming up, I thought, oh, I got to go check the website. Of course, sure as heck, and I guess I should back up to say, this Mayor Protem did a great job of covering the District One fireworks, but of course, the actual city-sponsored fireworks are that same day. And I'd encourage everybody to come down, you can see the fireworks from a lot of the harbor restaurants, and of course, it's quite an amphitheater for it, because in various locations, you can see it reflecting off the water, which almost doubles the impact. But we should all make a note, that's not up on the city website calendars yet, so we should get that up also. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come down and speak on non-agenda items? All right, onwards to Zoom.
I have none on Zoom or ecomments.
Wow, really? Okay. Anyone else? Last chance for in-person. All right, therefore it is, we're done. Going forward to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is our public hearing.
Ex parte.
Thank you. So ex parte, so I'll just start off, I've talked briefly with Councilmember Lowenstein on this. I've talked with members of public, Vic, Mayor, and of course, city staff on this item for L1. And L2, I have not talked to actually anyone yet on that other than just reading it. I haven't even talked to staff yet on that. So Councilmember Lowenstein?
Yeah, very briefly with you, Mayor Protem, Mayor Brand, the public, and staff on L1, and as you said, nobody else on L2. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kalu Jidovic.
For L1, staff and the public. L2, no one.
All right, Councilmember Obaji.
Councilmember Barrett, and perhaps staff at some point, and I don't know, L1, and nobody on L2, except for when we had this hearing to start it off.
All right, Councilmember Barrett. Thank you. On L1, I have spoken with Councilmember Obaji, the mayor, city staff, members of the public, and other interested parties. And on L2, I've spoken with city staff.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there a motion to open up the public hearing, to reopen this public hearing for this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. All right, so, Mr. City Manager, I take it, this is our second hearing date, thank you much for our extra community workshop day, we need it, as you can, everyone sees, this is not our normal working day. So this is an extra Tuesday in the month of May, and we are taking full advantage of it.
Yeah, the goal really is to have four substantive discussions, and so we have opportunity to adopt the budget at our scheduled June 20th hearing. Typically, we would have three hearings, which sometimes compresses the conversation and the questions that the council has an opportunity to ask, and it can lead to kind of a condensed budget motion making night. We are grateful for this fourth hearing, allows for a little bit earlier deposit of information. Tonight is really just an opportunity for inquiry, and any questions you might have of our department head team, who have been so part and parcel to the development of the proposed budget for you. We have 77 decision packages, we've discussed. You can go through any one of those if you'd like, you want to talk about specific financial summaries or fund balances, we can answer questions on that. And if we can't get you specific answers tonight, we certainly can come back with additional information at our subsequent hearings. So the beauty of this evening is that we can spend a little more time with preemptive information, and the stars of the show tonight will be our Community Services Director Cameron Harding, and then followed by our Fire Chief Pat Butler. Those two departments have, I think, some of the more interesting and more meaningful proposed decision packages. Not that all 77 aren't wonderful, they all, they all have importance, and they are all key to department operations, but we thought a preemptive presentation from those two departments in particular would be of interest to the council and the community. I have a brief PowerPoint to kind of remind everybody where we're at in the budget cycle and what we're proposing to do. Is this ready to go? Excellent. I think that's a slide ahead, maybe. So here we are tonight, as mentioned, we are continued public hearing, we've got tonight and a few others, and we'll see that in the schedule. Next slide, please, Wendy. A reminder, our total budget with all funds included is about $175 million before proposed decision packages. On the general fund basis, our core general fund budget proposed to you tonight is about $104.5 million, again, before decision packages. And then with all of the various cost outlays, both revenues and expenditures, and some of the use of current unallocated fund balance, if adopted as proposed, would leave a residual unallocated fund balance of a little over $1.7 million. We'll see more specifics on that in a second. Our total capital budget is a little over $89 million with 130 total projects. There's $21.7 million of new recommended appropriations as part of that CIP. I discussed 77 decision packages. And tonight, what you have is not the budget response reports themselves, but our initial table of contents and master list of all the questions that the council has asked for and requested material on. And we have 37 identified budget response reports to date. I suspect you'll have more questions tonight, we'll add to this list. And we will begin, following this evening, slowly depositing information through our BRR portal on our city website. We're not going to wait for staff reports for the next hearing to begin to build that information. We want to get that out in real time as it's available. The link tonight on the budget will begin to populate updated versions of the budget response report list based on your direction and questions, as well as any budget response report that is ready for public edification. And we will begin to do that between now and June 13th, which is the hearing before the 20th. Not to say you couldn't ask us a question on the 13th and have some information that we would give to you on the 20th, but we're really advising and cautioning against that. Ideally, all of your BRR questions are asked either tonight or on, or at the June 6th hearing, so then we can give you a complete report as part of your June 13th discussion. So you have at least a full week to consider that material before your budget motion making night on June 20th. That's our goal. It's not hard and fast, it's your budget. If you guys want to take more time, or you want, you have more questions, we certainly will be responsive to that. But I think for all of our sakes, the more of those that we get out early, the easier a process you'll have on the 20th. Just a little primer on general fund tax revenues as proposed. Generally, good news across the board, I won't go through these in ignotium. We talked a little bit about it at the last discussion two weeks ago. On a overall basis, we're proposing core revenues in the general fund to increase by almost $3 million year over year, reflecting about a 4% change. Obviously, the biggest factors there are our property tax and utility user tax revenue categories that continue to show strong growth. Next slide, please. General fund appropriations year over year are all down, and the reason for that on a core basis is because last year's budget was loaded with one-time appropriations that we were able to make because of the significant one-time proceeds made available by the federal government funds that were provided to offset pandemic hit, ARPA funds, as well as the residual general fund bond proceeds we had for refinancing our pension obligation debt. So our proposed budget is year over year less in the expenditure area due to the significant number of one-time appropriations that were made in the prior budget. Some notes, the budget is balanced, I mentioned that a couple of weeks ago, and the most notable figure in all of this is after decision packages, what is our structural revenue or ongoing revenue versus our ongoing expenditures? And if all is approved as proposed, we would have structural revenues exceed structural expenditures on a $1.2 million basis, on an ongoing basis as they are proposed. We have a residual fund balance of a little under $2 million based on the existing fund balance flow-through with the ongoing expenditures and one-time revenues and expenses. Two other items of note that you should be aware of, the budget, and you don't see that in your flow-through here, but outside of that fund balance calculation is an $8.6 million set aside for our economic contingency reserve. Really, in the event of an anomaly, we would have that, those funds to draw from if for some reason the sky had fallen and we weren't receiving our monthly distribution of revenue, and really, we're panicking from a proceed perspective. I've never in my history here, knock on wood, seen our city draw from the economic contingency fund. It's always been there at the ready, but never necessary. And that is by policy something that the council sets aside as part of every budget. It's effectively one month of operating expenses. We also have, and this was something that you all participated in increasing as part of our year-end designations, we have a little under $8 million in our CalPERS Pension Salary Benefit Fund. That is up from a little under $6 million that we had last year, you added $2 million at year-end, and we are now sitting at just under $8 million. And the proposed budget does not include a draw of those resources. Next slide, please. Couple of highlights, we had 77 decision packages, I won't go through all of them. Couple that I think are worth noting, we've got increased fees in several of our departments, Public Works, Community Services. You'll hear from Cameron a little bit on the background behind those proposed changes. We have also, not up there, although a regular increase for us, is our community development departments increased fees to recover costs associated with planning and building activity. Pat has identified a paramedic assessment fee that we've had on the books that's been quite dormant for several years, that has become far more part of modern fire services, and you'll hear from him on the genesis of that fee. It generates significant revenue, and has what I think is most interesting, the ability for us to, because it's a general fund fee, a compassion clause that allows us to ensure that the only organizations we're collecting from in those circumstances are from insurance carriers. So we're able to waive the fee for those who cannot pay it and do not have coverage under their insurance. So it's not something that would burden members of our community that might not have that type of access or coverage. So that's the good news with that fee. There's several decision packages associated with the restoration of community services programs and organizational structure. That is a department that has been hit and arguably decimated over the last 10 years. So we've got proposals to restore in key areas, either by reclassification or by addition positions that have been lost to prior year budgets and are needed because activity in the department has grown and is continuing to show steady growth going forward. As mentioned, key in this year's budget, I felt, is accounting for and acknowledging the need to structurally prepare for increased employee salaries and benefits with upcoming bargaining groups. That's a big part of the proposed budget, it's there to make sure we have structural revenues to pay for structural expenditures and can plan accordingly. Ultimately, what's implemented there would be up to negotiations and would be affected through contract obligations. This would be effectively a set aside for those discussions. There's an addition of a position in the City Clerk's office, Eleanor's office has been inundated with public records requests. We've had, and I would say, beyond our fair share number of our fair share, number of local elections that have also taxed her department. This would add a little bit of depth of administrative resource, not just serving the Clerk's Office and the internal service organizations, but the community in terms of responsiveness to PRRs, and will help departments, operating departments, I believe, turn around requests to the community more quickly by having a little extra resource here inside the organization. At least, that's what we're proposing. We've got apparatus and other equipment throughout the proposed budget for Public Works, for police, but most notably, our Fire Department proposed is the replacement of our breathing apparatus equipment, the second half of the of the various batch of equipment this fiscal year. That's DP 25. You'll want to look at that. Pat will cover some explanation on that later. We're proposing to add a senior planning position to the Community Development Department. As I've mentioned, and as this council is well aware, the state has inundated the Community Development Department with significant administrative obligations as it pertains to housing and housing zoning and potential and prospective housing-related zoning. It has truly impacted our Community Development Department's ability to provide service to our residents. We are so occupied, in some instances, by our state mandates, that it directs and redirects resources that otherwise would be spent at the counter, at the planning counter, helping our community to meet state concerns. And that is quite frustrating. So we are proposing to add a little bit more resource there to help meet those obligations. Mental health clinician position, that has been discussed at the council level, we have that in the proposed budget. Compensation increase for crossing guards. We raised the salary rate for that position by action. We need to provide resources to cover that. Crossing guards is a growing obligation in the community. It's costing us more money to deliver the service that we have committed to delivering, because we have had a very difficult time, as Joe, our police chief, has echoed, recruiting individuals to those positions. And we cannot staff the corners that we have committed the community to staff. And unfortunately, what that forces us to do is bring other full-time resources, municipal services officers, code enforcement officers, or police officers, to staffing those intersections for safety purposes, taking away from other duties that they would be performing for the community. So that's the purpose behind Decision Package 45. And I know Joe's here tonight to answer any questions you might have on that. There's a couple of new positions proposed in the, well, I should say, there's one new position proposed in the Fire Department and one temporary pilot program over-hire position that that Pat will discuss. That's the restoration of the old Training Captain position. That's been a position we used to have in the budget that was eliminated years ago, that there's been a lot of hope and interest in seeing restored. This year, we had the resources to do it. We also felt in restoring that position, if the council approves it, the decision package gives us an opportunity to make a stronger commitment to emergency preparedness, effectively two-for-one type position that would benefit not just the Fire Department, but the organization at large, and potentially the community through additional emergency preparedness training, both internally and externally. And then lastly, reclassification of the Transportation Engineering position to Principal Transportation Engineer. Not a large cost item, but one that I point out here because it's significant in that for positions we have tried and routinely struggled to hire or generate interest in, particularly in the engineering side of Public Works, we have to make changes to be competitive in the marketplace. It is a critical position. Traffic calming is something that's near and dear to all of your hearts. It's something we get probably the most requests on. You all could speak to this better than me through, from the community. And it's difficult to respond to those requests without a certified transportation engineer. We had a transportation engineer, Gene Kim. He left for another agency. And we've struggled to replace that position on a full-time basis. We're hoping that this reclassification will make us more competitive and bring somebody in that can really be responsive to the community.
Was it another agency or private?
Private sector, actually moved on to private community, private, private interest. So those are some of the highlights. Again, they're all important. There's, every decision package here has been well thought out. The departments prepare them, where they sit down with me, we talk them through. This by, while it's a lengthy list, is by no means complete from what was requested. Well over 100 decision packages are requested each year. And that's after vetting prospective decision packages that are never submitted because we have preliminary conversations on the likeliness of them ultimately making the proposed budget, given limited resources. So it may feel like, hey, whatever the departments are asking for, we're going to go ahead and propose it because there's resources. That's not the case. These are significantly vetted, and they're reduced in many, many areas to be as efficient and effective as we think they can be while maintaining some level of estimated success. Next slide, please. So in summary, I went through this a couple of weeks ago. We start with $2.4 million of unallocated fund, fund balance from mid-year, based on our year-end estimates for 2223. That begins our number there at 2.4 million. We have core revenues that are projected to be about 105 million, little, well, should say a little over $104 million this year. We have core expenditures that are projected to be a little over 101 million. We have net decision packages on an ongoing basis that equate to roughly $2.1 million. There's proposed revenues in there. There are proposed expenditures in there. And then we have one-time decision packages of about $1.8 million. We don't have any recommended CIP allocations in this budget. That's not to say you can't make them. We have $1.7 million of unallocated fund balance at the conclusion of all these recommendations. You can spend that money as you wish. You can repurpose any of the money that we've proposed to you to spend for purposes that other than what's in the recommended budget, and reallocate that in different ways. You all know, are aware of how to do that. But ultimately, I do recommend that we give ourselves a little bit of buffer at the end of the budget. It's, you know, while we can technically go to zero on a projected fund balance, and there have been years when we were so tight, it was necessary to do that. But it is good to leave a little bit of money unallocated in case needs arise over the course of the year that we need to address, and in case any of our revenue estimates or expenditure estimates are off the mark. So we have a little bit of fluctuation there, effectively a little contingency beyond our reserve contingencies, if you will. Did you have a question, Zana?
Sure, quick question. If money is unallocated at the end, let's say we leave a few hundred thousand dollars, does that mean we don't need a four fifths vote later to allocate? Or we still would need a four fifths?
Good question. You would still need a four fifths vote. Your only, the only time of the year where you have an ability to adopt and appropriate funds on a three, by three votes is now. Of course, that has to stand up to a veto as well. So it's three votes sans a veto. But that is, when you adopt the budget, that's the one time. Anything you appropriate or spend, and that includes mid-year, by the way, there's, sometimes there's a feeling that mid-year is also a budget-type adoption process. It also requires a four-fifths vote to make any changes to the budget. So it's the one time of year where you only need three. Next slide, please. I won't go through all of this. Here's our upcoming calendar. We've got three more hearings after tonight. We've got review by the Budget Finance Commission, Harbor Commission, and Planning Commission. I will note that on June 13, typically, this, the focus of that hearing is the capital budget. We talk a little bit more about capital projects, what's proposed there. But that doesn't bar you, of course, from asking any capital project-related question tonight, if that's really something of interest, particularly as it pertains to any of your maybe supplemental or additional budget response report questions you want to raise. Tonight's a good night to do that. There is no, no component of this budget that we're not prepared to discuss with you this evening. And really, that's our presentation, not our recommended action, is to open, or you've already done that, open the hearing, take testimony this evening, continue the hearing to the 6th. And really, I think the focus, if you will, at the end of the conversation should be providing direction to us on any additional budget response reports you'd like to see us prepare, effectively expanding on that list of 37 questions that you have in your attachment to the staff report and your agenda packet. And if it makes sense for us to go through those later in the evening, we can. I hope you've had a chance to review them. Please look at how the question's framed. Is it, is it capturing the essence of what you're hoping to see? Is there something that you've thought of in the last couple of weeks that's not here that you'd like to see us follow up on? There's time. Tonight's a great night to ask all of those additional questions, as is the next hearing on the 6th. Like I said, with the goal that we come back to you with a complete set of budget response reports by the 13th. So you are prepared to deliberate on the 20th. So with that, I think we'll fire up the next presentation here for Cameron, who will speak to some of the Community Services Department interests. Cameron.
Second here. So you ready to go there, Eleanor?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So as Mike mentioned, I'll be walking you through some of the decision packages specific to Community Services tonight. As you may or may not be aware, our Community Services Department consists of five divisions, including their Transit, Housing, Recreation, Cultural Arts, and Administration. So as City Manager mentioned, over the course of the last decade, the the department has really just been decimated with staffing levels. We've lost several management positions, several supervisory positions, and we've really become more and more reliant on a part-time staff. So tonight, what I'm going to walk you through is our proposed reorganization, which would restore some of those positions. And we think that would really add to an enhanced organizational structure, reallocation of employee responsibilities that better align with individual skill sets, and an adjustment of certain salary schedules to better reflect current job duties and scopes of work. And obviously, we ultimately think these changes would increase the department's efficiency and output and service to the community. So an important part of what I'm proposing to you tonight is that we've, anytime you propose organizational reorganizations and personnel changes, obviously, there's a cost with that. We've seen, as the City Manager mentioned, a steady increase in revenues coming out of the pandemic. And we feel extremely confident that we can cover any increased expenditures with the increases we've seen in revenues. So the slide here that you're seeing before you shows that our projected revenue for this year was about 1.4 million. And we're actually trending to end, to end the year about, about 2 million above that this year. And then next year, we're proposing to see an even larger increase, or an increase of about 800,000. So as I mentioned, coming out of the pandemic, we've seen increased participation, not only in our programs, but in our facility rentals. And that's where this increase in revenue is coming from. So this slide is demonstrating our four major sources of revenue in the Recreation Division. We recently worked with a third-party consultant to complete a fee study that compared fees in comparable communities and cities, not only in the South Bay, but throughout Los Angeles County. And the results of that study indicated that we could increase our fees up to about 10%. That would, that would result in an additional $150,000, give or take, on top of the previously mentioned $800,000, which would lead to roughly nine, a little over $900,000 in increased revenue over the past couple of years. So this is a quick snapshot of the fee study that our third-party consultant recently completed. As you can see, for our special event application, we're much lower than both Hermosa Beach and Rancho Palos Fertiles. Our after-school program fees that we're charging are lower than both Hermosa Beach and Manhattan Beach. Our facility rentals down at Alta Vista are lower than most of the communities here, including El Segundo, Lawndale, Manhattan Beach, and most of the facilities that RPV rents out. And then also, you can see that we're much lower for our picnic area rentals and amphitheater down at Wilderness. We're still working on compiling some more information on this master fee study. But this is, these are our main areas where we make revenue from. And as I mentioned, they're much lower than than some of the surrounding cities.
And I might add and elaborate on that a little bit. The thing that's unique about the Community Services Department from a revenue standpoint is that it's, while we have an ability and a capacity to increase fees for a full-cost recovery for all expenses, we can't really do that because we have a bit of a competitive marketplace. The Community Services Department fees have to be appropriately situated as they compare to private recreation activities, public recreation activities provided by other cities who might open those programs to non-residents. And so we have to look at the market periodically to ensure that our fees aren't out of whack, because we could increase a fee and anticipate increased revenue. But if our participation declines as a result of that increased fee, we've gained no ground. So it's, it's important that our fees are both competitive and that we have strong demand for the programs. And as Cameron mentioned, additional data will be provided. I think one additional budget response report we'd like to provide is some elaboration on the fee study that's been performed, and ultimately give you some backup data on a fee-by-fee basis for what's being proposed as part of your, and typically, our fee schedule update occurs at the June, the second meeting in June is when we talk about the fee schedule and any changes to that fee schedule. You're getting a bit of a prelim on that now, particularly in the area of fire and community services, but that's when we talk about in that in a little more detail. Our goal is to have a budget response report that'll give you that comparative data on each of the fees that are being proposed for adjustment in Community Services.
Pardon me, would that be in addition to the actual fee study that Cameron referenced?
Yeah, it'll be basically, it'll be a compilation of that fee study in a budget response report. So we have that recorded and available to you as part of your deliberations.
Okay.
Because what I'm understanding is the fee study is, it's in Excel spreadsheets, and in some cases, it's fully complete, because you've got multiple cities that have participated and responded and have that type of fee, and in other areas, may not have that fee at all and cannot provide that comp. We'll organize, package that Excel data into something that's a little bit more digestible for you through the budget response report.
Okay. Could we get that backup, the raw data as well as part of that?
Yes, that'll be incorporated into that BRR. You'll have all the data that we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor Proten.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Cameron, go ahead.
No, thank you. So this slide is just, kind of summarizes what I went over with the proposed fee increases. You see our projected revenue increase for this year is just under 800,000. If we were to increase fees as recommended through the fee study by 10%, it would be an additional about 150,000. So overall, we would increase revenues by just over $900,000 off of our projected revenues for this year. So now I'll walk through each of the proposed decision packages for our reorganization. The first one here is our Recreation Division. As I mentioned, it's, this is really the division that's really just been desecrated. We've lost a number of positions over the, over the course of the last several years. Probably the most critical position here is our Recreation Supervisor position. A number of years ago, we did have a Recreation Manager position that was eliminated. Currently, the Recreation Supervisor oversees a wide, wide breadth of facilities and programs, including Alta Vista, Seaside Lagoon, the after-school programs, teen programs, senior services and special events, and as well as registration. So that supervisor position is really working out of class right now and really needs to be reclassified to that manager position. It's more in line with the duties that that position is performing and the oversight that that position has.
And I'll add to that a little bit, too, because this predates Cameron's time. There was a, there was a moment in the city's history where we actually had three manager positions, one in each of those categories. There was a Recreation and Youth Services Manager, and there was a Senior and Family Services Manager that all supported the department. We currently have zero managers in those three categories, just a Recreation Supervisor. So this would restore effectively a third of that management-level resource that we had back in, say, 2005.
Thank you. And that's actually a perfect segue to, to the next position here, is our, as Mike mentioned, we used to have a manager and a supervisor, I believe, that worked within our Senior, Senior and Special, Special Events Division. Currently, that is all staffed by part-time staff, one of which is our Program Coordinator, who's really taken the lead in overseeing that staff and those programs. But when you have a part-time staff, you're really limited by the amount of hours that that person can work. So what we're proposing is to reclassify that part-time position to a full-time coordinator position. We think we can restore, we've really seen a lot of demand, and we've heard a lot of requests for increase, especially with our Senior, Senior Services and Senior Programs. And it's really hard to do when you only have part-time staff. So we're confident that if we were to reclassify this part-time position to a full-time position, eliminate the issue of hours, we'd be able to restore a lot of those senior programs that we used to have prior to the pandemic and make things a lot more efficient there. that we used to have prior to the pandemic and make things a lot more efficient there. Another reclass that we're requesting is an office specialist three to a full-time recreation coordinator. The office specialist three used to work under, under me, was basically an office assistant. We saw, coming out of the pandemic, we saw a real need for a full-time staff dedicated to Alta Vista tennis and facility. So we actually moved that office specialist down to Alta Vista, where they work full-time now. The efficiency with tennis reservations and facility reservations and things of that nature has increased exponentially. The supervision of staff down there has increased, has been much, much improved with the full-time position down there. But again, it's not an office, that person is really working out of class. It's not an office specialist position, it's more of a recreation coordinator position, so we're requesting to, to rectify that and reclass that position. And then the final, the final position that we're requesting in our recreation division is, is a new recreation coordinator position. Currently, we, we don't have someone dedicated to overseeing our registration and facility reservation customer service component. It's kind of a mishmash of part-time staff, some full-time staff when they are available, and it's really not as, as efficient as it really should be. In, in other cities, they have multiple full-time people that are dedicated to registration and facility reservations. And I'm confident that if we could do that, we would, our customer service would not only increase, our efficiency would not only increase, but I'm confident that we could even expand on and increase our facility reservations and program registration, because this person could concentrate not only on that, but on the marketing and promoting aspect of our programs. And I think we could increase revenue based on that as well.
So is this something like, if you want to reserve a moon bounce at one of the parks? Right now, on the website, you'd call one number if you wanted to reserve one at Anderson or Franklin Park, you'd call another number, another extension, if you wanted to do it at Alta Vista, and really, all of this should be online.
Yeah, everything's decentralized right now, because it's just added to one other person's duties, right? We've got somebody at Alta Vista that's kind of doing it all, we've got somebody that might be covering four different sites in the north end of town. This would allow us to centralize that, market it appropriately, be more responsive and helpful to the community as they make these requests, not just shuffle them to another voicemail with the hope that that staff member has enough time to pick it up and process the permit. Again, a position that we're citing is new, but a position and a function that actually used to have dedicated full-time personnel years ago in the department that had to be, really, and rightfully so, needed to be reduced during the pandemic when programs and facilities had been turned off. There was no need for such a thing when you couldn't go out or rent a space and meet in public.
Okay, and just a, go ahead, please, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go for it.
I was just gonna ask, Director Harding, the appropriation requested here, is that a fully loaded number, salary?
Yes.
Benefits, pension, and everything else?
Yep. And, and the reason why, in those reclassifications, in the adjustment from part-time to full-time, you have minimal numbers, is the salaries effectively for those positions are the same. They're on an hourly basis. This will grow their availability of hours from roughly 1,500 hours a year to the full-time value of about 20, 80 with benefits. So that cost grows marginally, and then will cover the valuation of the insurance and the pension that goes with it. Those positions, the staffing and the part-time budget assigned to those positions is shared by multiple members, and therefore, the cost isn't as significant as you might expect. But it will allow us to dedicate one capable individual to step into that, that role and be there full-time as opposed to part-time.
Okay, and then just a quick follow-up from Councilmember Obasi's question. The projected revenue from the fee increases, and this is for Director Harding or for you, Mr. City Manager, did you take into consideration the financial means of people who live in Redondo Beach, who may or may not be able to afford the additional cost to have a bouncy house at the park, things like that, who may elect, regrettably, not to be able to participate in whatever activity or permitting that may be at issue, were you able to, and did you in fact look at that?
Yeah, actually, we heard last year, when we were having trouble staffing some of our after-school programs, we heard repeatedly that parents would say they would pay more for our programs in order to get more staff.
I have heard that specifically, that the cost of getting a nanny or a full-time babysitter to take over your kids after school is way more, and they would, they would gladly pay more to community services to be able to get, to make sure that their, their kids can enroll from year to year and that you have adequate staffing there.
And, and I'd like to make sure that everyone understands two things. There's, if you go back a couple slides, Cameron, there's proposed core revenue increases, not, not that right there. So the core budget is anticipating now almost $2.2 million in recreation services revenue, assuming no change in staffing, based on participation and based on the demand for service that has grown post-pandemic. So that isn't anticipating a fee increase, that's just anticipating continued and stabilized increase in participation. The 10% decision package that would raise fees by that amount generates an additional increment of about $150,000. That's subject to what you all need to discuss as part of these hearings. But that 772 is coming based on what we think and project to be increased participation on a sustained basis. What Cameron was beginning to explain, but it's, it might be superfluous, is our estimated year-end actuals in '22, '23 are going to be quite higher than the adopted budget, in part because we had sustained increased participation this fiscal year and expect that to continue next fiscal year.
All right, and then just quickly, the revenue that's being anticipated to be brought in pursuant to DP3 is part of the revenue that's going to be used presumably to balance this budget.
Correct.
And it's not just DP3, but I'll focus on it. Director Harding, you said you're extremely confident you would meet the projected revenue. Is, is that in connection with DP3? The fee increase of 10%?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Yep.
All right.
Just had a question. So with these proposed staffing changes and promotions, will this allow for increased enrollment for after-school programs?
The next one will, we're not quite done yet. The, the most critical element to increased enrollment is going to be the restoration of our part-time staffing budget, which is deep, the next, I think, slide.
Right, and I would just add too, that a lot of this is, is not only reclassifying people that work in the correct, under the correct titles, but it's really a retention issue too. There's a lot of neighboring cities, you know, we, we have good relationships with, there's going to be some retirements coming up in other cities that are going to be awfully attractive to some of our current staff that are really, really talented, hard-working people. And I, I would, I would put our work culture and work environment up against any of the neighboring cities, but if we're able to reclassify some of these positions, I'm, I'm very confident that we'd be able to retain some of our very, very talented folks, so. So this goes to what Councilwoman was mentioning.
Councilmember Obasi, did you have a question?
No, no, they're, they're getting to it.
All right, go ahead, go for it.
So this slide goes to what the councilwoman was mentioning about our staffing issues. We, we routinely go over budget because we are trying to increase staffing for our after-school programs and other, and other, other programs. So what we're asking for here is, is basically to balance out our budget, give a more accurate representation in the budget instead of going over. We, we do make it up from revenue, from program registration when we do go over, but what we're asking here is to balance out the budget, make a more accurate representation of what we're spending on our part-time staff, which would be about $350,000, as you see there. And that would, would allow us to increase staffing for after-school programs, Seaside Lagoon, summer camps, volleyball camps, those kinds of things.
You know, one, one thing that's very critical to a successful recreation program and liability and safety is, is the appropriate ratio of staff to participant, right? And that's no more true than in the after-school program. So when we limit the number of enrollment to a site to, say, 30 or 40 or 60, that's predicated on how many staff members are assigned to that location. And our ability to assign resources to that location is dependent on our ability to hire and our ability to cover in the budget their time. And this restores the part-time budget to pre-pandemic levels for the most part to allow us to grow that capacity and make sure we can account for all of our participant interest that's been out there. There's been a lot of frustration in the community in the last two years, particularly associated with the after-school programs cap, because we have not had the budget nor the ability to hire the key personnel needed to oversee, properly oversee those programs.
So does this contemplate any increase in pay to these part-timers, so that we can recruit any? Is there a decision package to that effect?
This gives us additional flexibility to hire, we have several program ranges, part-time program ranges, that give us flexibility to assign staff members on a supervisory basis, supervisory part-timers, and then entry-level part-times. By restoring this budget, we will have the capacity to, where necessary, hire at a higher level and be more attractive.
Okay, got it.
So next decision package is decision package number six. It's focused on our cultural and performing arts division. Again, another division that's, that's really been hit hard with losses of positions. As you know, we have one culture, the, the entire division has three full-time staff. It's a cultural arts manager, a theater tech, and a custodian. And for those, this division covers the Public Art Commission, the Historical Commission, and the Performing Arts Center. What's happening now is our, our cultural arts manager is so inundated with working with clients at the Performing Arts Center, handling the client's agreements, working with them on the actual performances, and thus, that he really does not have as much time as I think everybody would like to see him dedicate to the public arts side of his job. So what we're, what we're proposing here tonight is that we reclassify one part-time theater tech to a full-time theater tech. That would give us two full-time theater techs. And the thought is that one, one of the theater techs would focus squarely on performances, so working with the clients at the Performing Arts Center on load-in, load-out, lights, sound, that sort of thing. The second theater tech would then take on more of the workload of what I was mentioning earlier, the cultural arts manager is currently doing, working with the clients on agreements and customer service and ticket sales and that sort of thing. And then the, the thought is that that would free up the cultural arts manager then to focus more on the public arts side of things and the historical, historical, getting the museum back up and going. We've heard a lot of frustration, not from, not only from the council, but from the community and the Public Arts Commission, that we're just not able to get some of the public art projects out fast enough, and it's really just due to the fact that we don't have the manpower and things at the Performing Arts Center are just so busy. So we really think that this one small change would really alleviate a lot of the workload for the cultural arts manager and let him focus more on the public arts side of things. The other thing that we're requesting is...
May I ask a quick question before you go on, and I'll be quick. On the part-time technical theater two position to full-time, did you explore whether there may be opportunities to contract that work out for those who may be able to assist in that way, or any other options, maybe having two part-time, additional part-time people? Did you explore that, and if so, what were your conclusions as to what would be the best choice?
We haven't, we, we didn't explore the contracting out. I think it's a very specific operation over there. I mean, we, we could look into that, but I think due to the nature of the work over there, it really requires somebody that's hands-on, has been there, has done that, the person, it's very hard to recruit for part-time positions over there as well. We have to beg, borrow, and steal sometimes some of the part-time staff from El Camino College to come over and work for us. So I really think that having a full-time person dedicated to the Performing Arts Center would be my recommended way to go.
So I can, I can appreciate that, but I, on Councilmember Barron's point, if with regard to the Redondo Beach Historic Library, we've essentially done an RFP for somebody to come in and respond and let us know how they manage it and, and, you know, address our various values in that place, is there a reason that this, the Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center is handled totally in-house rather than assigned out or RFPed out?
Yeah, we've studied that years ago. We wrote, in fact, I was the community services director at the time, wrote a business plan that presented all of the various options to council, and what we learned through that exploration is that all we would do in bringing on a contract consultant is share the, the revenue proceeds. We would be paying effectively the same expense, but we would be losing a portion of the revenue.
Because we'd always have a staff member dedicated to overseeing their work.
It was studied very, in, in quite a bit of detail. A lot of agencies at the time were grappling with that determination. There were some groups that fashioned themselves as, as for-profit operators that could ultimately bring a facility like that into, into, into the black, into the profit margin. That, the areas where that was tried were unsuccessful, and ultimately, agencies found that the internal service costs and all the things that drive the city's obligations at a facility like that could not be fully offset by revenues. I will tell you, and you'll see this in one of our budget response reports, the Performing Arts Center's True Profit and Loss Statement, our revenues from facility reservations exceed our direct operating expenses to support those reservations and help offset our internal service allocations to the center. So sharing...
Help offset or completely offset?
Not completely offset it, but help, but offset a significant portion of it.
Right, okay.
And as you know, the ISF allocations are, are based on square footage, they're based on, on need, and they are real, and they exist. You know, our public works department has to go out there and fix the HVAC system, has to repair roofs, has to provide service to manage the facility, but the revenue generated by that, 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 the space actually helps eat into some of those current ISFs. So it performs well, it will continue to perform well, and I think it will perform better with increased marketing, and you're going to see some BRRs on that later. What we're trying to do with these decision packages is, as cost-effectively as possible, give us more resource, not so much in the theater area, but in the area of other culture, public art and history, and the historical side of the equation. You've got a supervisor at the PAC, Jack Meyer, who many of you know, does a fantastic job, but it's just Jack and Gary on a full-time basis trying to manage client relations as well as operations. This will allow Jack and a new full-time technical theater position to manage the PAC and free up Gary to provide more support for public art programming and oversight of the historical museum, which we haven't even been able to dedicate enough time and energy to bring on a, a part-time staff member to open the doors on a consistent basis, which has been a frustration for a lot of folks. So that, just to put it in some more historical context, the cultural arts division used to have a manager, two full-time supervisors, a tech, and a maintenance operator, all assigned to it.
Right now, cultural arts just hasn't.
We have three staff as opposed to five.
Got it, okay.
So do you project that the, a full-type technical theater two position would in fact generate additional revenues for the RB PAC?
I think it's going to allow for sustaining those revenues and allowing Gary then to spend some of his time helping us in other areas of cultural programming. I don't think it's going to be a revenue generator, but it's going, it's a more cost-effective way to free up a staff member to do public art. The alternative to this would have been leave Gary where he's at, bring on a new full-time supervisor to manage just public art, that would have been more like $150,000 expenditure. So this is kind of backing into that, using Gary as the primary public art provider and then shoring up the PAC operations through a adjustment.
All right, and for those at home who are watching, ISF, that's the Internal Service Fund expenditures which are allocated to the various...
Which are a combination of all of our overhead charges, you know, covering management's time, financial services, human resources, in, in the case of a small prorata amount for any internal service fund department, and then most notably for the PAC, an allocation of public works or our building occupancy charges for utility payments and site maintenance.
Thank you. When you come back with that report, it's a part of the decision package, is correct, I forgot which one, but...
Part of the BRRs, part of the BRRs.
Part of the BRRs, whichever one that is, can you also include the, a copy of the previous BRRs discussing the, the cost and...
Sure.
Revenue or profit, nonprofit, and some of the other ideas that we've had for, if there's been, I know there's been, to create naming rights, or...
Yep, we started naming rights.
Have it as a copy in there for the background history so that we know.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. There's been a, there's been a BRR on the PAC virtually every year for the last 17, 18 years, in some form or fashion.
Right. And to the technical theater one, yeah, the, the electronics need to be upgraded there, the display, audio, AV.
Well, and that's a, so we have a capital project, as you all know, we've executed about half of it, but that's Jack finding time to execute a capital project, manage client relations and operations. manage client relations and operations is a challenge, right? He has no help to do that. Adding a technical theater supervisor or technical theater position dedicated, again, creates bandwidth for those types of things. You know, you go there now, there are areas that we might spot as a patron and say, God, I'd love to see exit signs replaced. I'd love to see, you know, increased performance in the bathrooms, you know, from a cleanliness standpoint, whatever it might be. And it's, it's, it's just, just that, it's just one more thing for one person to do. And that's the challenge.
Yep, all right, moving on.
But there's been work done. I mean, we replaced the sound system-
There has been.
I think, right?
Yeah.
Lighting, but the seats and everything else need to be replaced, little by little, right?
And the seats are the big outstanding item still. We've got to replace those and there's about a half a million dollars in the capital budget for that activity.
So it's funded, is this a question of execution?
Exactly.
All right. So the last remaining item on this decision package, as, as Mike mentioned, is enhancements for our historical museum staffing. We've been trying to find and hire that position for, gosh, the better part of a year now. It's been extremely hard to recruit for that position. So we're hoping if we can add a little money to the pot there, we'll, it'll be a more attractive position for us to recruit for. And then we'll be able to open the doors at the museum on a more consistent basis, as the city manager mentioned. So moving on to decision package number seven, our housing division. And I want to preface this slide with this is, this is separate from the other decision packages in that we can offset this cost with the money we get from the federal government, from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or otherwise known as HUD. So as you're probably aware, the, the waitlist to get on our voucher program is extremely long. What we're, what we're proposing here is to bring on a new part-time coordinator and a new housing specialist who can really go out, start to recruit some more landlords, start to shrink that waitlist down. And as we do that, as program participation increases, we receive more money from the federal government. We're also looking at reclassifying our housing supervisor to housing manager. Housing manager was a position that was cut several, several years ago. The housing supervisor has really stepped in and taken on the roles and duties of that housing manager. So we're requesting to reclassify that position. And again, similar to the recreation requests, it's, it's not only putting that person into the correct classification, but also a, a real issue of retention there as well.
With those funds that would be available through a HUD grant, I think you said, would they be available for any other purposes that your department may have an interest in using? Or would it be only for what it is you're proposing?
Right, so how, so how it works is we, we send our expenses, I think it's on a tri-monthly, tri-monthly time. We send those into, to HUD and then HUD reimburses us for those expenses. So those go to the, the housing voucher program, administrative costs, software that we use to administrate the program, kind of all of the above. So as soon as we submit those expenses and costs, then HUD reimburses us for those.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So moving on to decision package number eight, our Administrative Services Division. These costs would also be offset with increases in revenue that we've previously discussed. Again, you know, you've, you've, you've heard it over and over again at this point in the presentation, but this is another division that's really been just desecrated. We've seen an increase in special projects, administrative support and oversight. And our senior management analyst, again, is really working out of class. That person has served as the liaison to the Recreation and Parks Commission, works directly with Public Works on several of our capital programs, has taken on the CDBG program that we provide to the community and is really working in more of a capacity as a, as a deputy director than a senior management analyst. So we're proposing that. And again, that's another, that's another retention issue as well. We're also requesting reclassifying our Office Specialist Three to an Office Coordinator. That Office Specialist Three has, again, another out-of-class issue. That person has taken on the oversight of our, our passport programs and is really overseeing a lot of part-time staff that help our front counter and customer service side of things. So we're really, like I said, requesting that we reclass that position from an Office Specialist Three to an Office Coordinator. And that wraps up the presentation I have tonight and can, here to answer any questions.
I think you have a summary slide there, don't you, that has the total kind of-
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, Mike. Yeah, so this is just kind of over, gives you an overview of the increase in expenditures that we're proposing. As you can see, if, if decision packages five, nine, six and eight were approved, we're, that would be a total cost of about $530,000. We would offset that with the previously mentioned increase in revenue from registration and facilities. And then the housing decision package number seven, as I mentioned, is about $145,000 and that would be offset by the grants that we get from HUD. So that, on second try, ends the presentation. I can answer any questions.
And this is a, you know, this is an outgrowth of conversations with, with many of you over the years, referrals, frustration with delay and certain initiatives. Projects in the Community Services Department have been of importance to the community, to all of you from a policy and strategic planning standpoint. It's been difficult to execute on some of those, given our current level of resources. As Cameron mentioned early on, it is probably the department that least resembles itself from a post-recession environment, meaning pre-pandemic levels. This, this department, if you looked at it in 2005, 2007, it had almost 50 full-time employees, it had multiple divisions, multiple managers. It's operating as a, as a fraction of itself. And in some instances, that made sense, particularly during the pandemic, when we just couldn't operate the programs. Now it's, it's making, the, the demand for service needs a realignment of resources. And we're trying to propose that in as cost-effective a way as we can. As you can see, the lion's share of these, of the $530,000 really comes from decision package nine, which is just restoring part-time personnel so we can meet demand for camps and after-school programming. So thank you, Cameron. Unless there are any other questions for him, I'm going to turn it over to Pat Butler.
Clarification on this, on just, this is proposed revenue increases. So this is an increase in, in fees.
Well, maybe just, just to put a fine point on it, the core budget has a proposed increase that's of $770,000. That's, you don't have to take any action on that.
Right, 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 right.
We're projecting that regardless. Now, if you don't approve the-
These decision packages.
If you don't approve decision package nine in particular, it's going to be very difficult to generate that forecasted revenue.
Number nine.
Particularly number nine, but all of them candidly are necessary for us to be effective for that. And, but the $150,000 is attributed to, of the 920 is attributed to the 10% increase through division package three.
Right, and, okay, so this is not 920 plus, what'd you say, 720?
It's seven, you might want to go back to that slide. It's 770 plus 150 is how you get to that 920.
Oh, okay, oh, good, I'm glad we had that.
So you got core revenue increases and you got the decision package, which is number, number three.
Right, I thought it was, okay, in addition to 770, okay.
That's why I was, I wanted to make sure you all understood that correlation. You know, one's in the proposed budget and one's enhancement through the DP.
Right, got it, okay.
I did have a quick question for the director before he leaves us. Did you want to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. As far as recruiting and retention, Cameron, can you tell us a little bit about the pool that you're looking at? You know, where do you go to recruit? Are you looking at universities, Cal State schools? How do you go about finding people? And, you know, what tools do you have at your disposal? Are you able to access LinkedIn recruiter, tools of that type? So that you could get out there and try to find people who I think, you know, may be very interested in these positions, but don't know about them, haven't been actively recruited? What are you doing to do that? What else additional support could you get from the city to help you in that process? If you could talk a little bit about that, I think it, it would shed some good light for me.
Sure, well, I mean, obviously, we, we post our job openings on the city website and use various social media outlets. We've gone to numerous job recruiting fairs at, at surrounding universities, whether it's Cal State Long Beach, Dominguez Hills, El Camino. We reach out to all the local high schools in the area. Work, we have great working relationships with all the school districts. So we reach out directly to the, the high school principals and get, get, get the word out through them, particularly through our Seaside Lagoon staff. We, we reach out to swim clubs in the area, swim, the, the local swim teams, those types of things. Really, what, what we found is eventually we're going to come to you and probably ask to, to, to raise, raise our rates a little bit for our part-time staff. It's been extremely hard for us to recruit. And sometimes what we're hearing is, you know, it's, it, it, it's, it's tough to say, but when you got a Taco Bell or a McDonald's paying more than we do for an after-school program, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to get. Our target, our target, our target staff are usually high school or college students that are looking for that kind of part-time job. So, you know, if we, if we have folks that are interested in, 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 you know, getting into education or some type of coaching or something like that, we're, we're lucky enough to, to get those folks. But if it's just, you know, somebody looking for a part-time job, it's, it's been really hard to recruit.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a time where our part-time positions were well above minimum wage and we were the attractive employer for high school and, and college-age kids. With the increase, it's significant increase in minimum wage in the last five years, that's become a real challenge for us, no question.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On that subject, I think that's kind of where, I'm surprised that there is no recommendation to increase the after-school program fee because there's a tolerance for, a desire for. So what I would be interested to know, and I'm searching the budget to see if we have it, is how does after-school program pencil out for the city? Are we offering that as, at a loss? Are we going to be offering at a greater loss now with these decision packets? Is a 10% increase in the fees adequate for that program? I guess, I guess citywide, we don't want to increase them completely, but, sorry, we, we don't want to increase every program by, by more than 10%, but maybe on this subject matter, since parents have articulated, hey, we will tolerate, you know, an increase in price. And I think I just looked it up. It's $200 per session, nine sessions per year, for a grand total of $1,800 per student for, for, for the school year, for this after-school program, right?
Yep.
I'm not sure how long it is per day, per school day. How long is it? Two, two hours, three hours?
It's three.
Depends, yeah, it's about two hours.
All right, so-
You have to remember that there may be more than one kid in your family, so.
Right.
Some of these people are working, I mean, I, I just want to say, some of these people are working families. $3,600 for two kids is a lot of money.
Right, okay, so I guess that's, my, my thought is, is there a, is there, does it pencil for the city?
Yeah, there's a mini-financial, I believe, in, in the proposed budget that, that breaks down the operating revenues and costs, but I think it might be worth us bringing back a specific budget response report on the after-school program to give you a little bit of history and an understanding of kind of where the program operates, what our costs are and, and how it's offset. It generally does break even. Last year and the year before, we're, have been challenging years. They're, they're not illustrative of the historical program that we once knew, so.
Let's say your after-school program part-timer is getting paid $15 or $17 an hour. I don't see a boost of 10% to that person if they're going to get that is really going to drive you a whole new slew of applicants or interest, right?
It's still going to be difficult for us. I mean, the expansion of, and restoration of part-time budget is going to give us flexibility to hire at a higher rate. But we're still, you know, we're still going to be somewhat dependent on bringing in those entry-level positions to manage the, the volume of students at each location.
Or maybe it shifted where, you know, it's 20% higher for the first kid, but then 20% less for the second kid. So that, so that there's at least a little boost to the-
There is, I think, one significant does do that.
Economy is a scale discount type.
So I think it's, there's enough curiosity there where I think it makes sense for us to give you a BRR on that. And certainly, the line item fee associated with the after-school program will be part of that fee hearing on the 13th and you can talk about that. There's obviously a little bit of data that was in the slide tonight that talked about what our neighbors are charging. Torrance offers a very, very comparable program to ours where we have a fairly comparable fee to them. The 10% increase would put us above Torrance, still well below Manhattan Beach and I think comparable to Hermosa Beach. So we have to be mindful of that and to Councilmember Lowenstein's point, we obviously want this to be an affordable program. The school district itself offers a CDC-based program, an enrichment-based program that is of higher quality than ours, no question. It's got more academic rigor than our, our program's a kind of a fun babysitting program, kind of a camp setting. The CDC program operated in partnership with the district on these same properties is quite a bit more than ours, but it's providing true enrichment-based education. So we have to be mindful of that as well. We don't want to compete with the CDC program.
And I, I share the same concerns as Councilmember Lowenstein and others and, but I'm, I'm coming from the angle of reliability in the program and availability of the program for, for the parents and reducing the angst of them having to be there at 12 o'clock to renew, renew, renew so they know to stop with their kid.
The registration coordinator would help provide, right? That's the other reason for that type of position. It's, it, it is going to assist parents in all areas, whether it be after-school program, camps or the like. That's why, that's why we wanted to present this to you in a holistic fashion because all of this hangs together. The revenue growth, the forecasted changes in positions. For us to be successful in this department, we really need to reorganize not just the one specific program area, but the entire department. And this, we think, is a strong step towards doing that.
And switching gears, my other point would be increasing everything by 10%. Were you, we just invested, or I think it was over $3 million or just under $3 million in redesigning the Seaside Lagoon. Should we not be trying to, I mean, we're not going to recover that amount or the, the reconstruction costs of 20 to 30 million dollars, but should we treat Seaside Lagoon differently in light of our investment in it?
Well, not, not for this year, I think, not this budget or probably the next. You're going to get a budget response report. There, there's one listed that talks about the water quality issues, our current, basically, modus operandi for the, the facility. One of the big challenges we face in our operating profit and loss at the lagoon is the number of fines were issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board for our exceedances in our water discharge, which are, in my view, it's an impossible standard to me, given the circumstances and given the condition of the facility. That drives our operating loss as much as anything. But we're going to have to suffer through that for the next year or two until we can rebuild the facility, close the discharge system, have it a circulating filtering system. But when we do that, we're clearly going to need to revisit our, how we operate, what we charge, how we reserve space. If we have year-round swimming, that's going to be a completely different category than a summer-only program.
Got it, thank you.
All right, any other questions to council on this particular item?
All right.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, Cameron. I think we got a load-up past presentation, I don't know if you can do that or-
We can, and just, if we can send us a copy of all these slide presentations as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure they're part of the blue folder after we're all done tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, there it is, right there, up there. Butler?
Good evening, councilmembers. Patrick Butler, Interfire Chief. And excited to be here. Yesterday, it was a great day there doing the Memorial Day celebration. Chief Hoffman and I got to stand shoulder to shoulder with Admiral Watkins and we were doing a little research on him. And he's the operations commander for a combatant command that oversees 50 million square miles. 50 million square miles, and it was a great day. Thank you, I have my staff here with me today. Chief Gary Daly and Chief Brian Regan will be assisting and I want to thank them for all their support. I'm going to go through our presentation, answer questions. And before I begin, I just want to talk a little bit about working with the city manager. This is my first time in government, working with a city manager-type system. And I think it's way more effective and efficient. I worked in a mayor form of government before and I want to thank Mike because he really challenges us, critical thought. And the main thing he said was, whatever we do in this budget cycle, make sure it's a core- make sure it's a core service that we're here to provide. And so uh, really, um, just a, a great process and learning for me. I, actually, Mike brings out the best in all of us and I feel the same, that, you know, working with him has been fantastic. So uh, I wanna start off with the, the budget. One of the things that we talked about and that Mike made clear to me early on was that we wanted the budget to reflect our priorities. What are the priorities of our department? Make sure that our priorities are matched up with our capabilities. Is it a priority that we have the capabilities to do? And then lastly, uh, Mike is big on performance management. Is, is there a metric that we can measure that your priorities and your capabilities and your outcome, your performance are, are squared away? And so the fire department's priorities for this budget is gonna be, no, you can, I'll just keep on that one for screen for now, thank you. Is, our priorities as emergency operations, emergency medical services, EMS. Last year, we treated over 5,500 patients in Redondo Beach. Emergency management, how well-prepared are we for a disaster? Are we able to prepare, respond and recover from? Equipment and apparatus are central to our mission. Fire prevention is a way that we limit risk in our city. Community engagement is how we educate the public because they're actually the first responders. Training is kind of the underpinnings of everything we do. And one of the priorities too is how can we find ways to recover costs? Because managing a fire department is expensive, you know, it's a form of insurance. Our capabilities in our departments, we have a strong workforce, uh, great staffing. We somewhat lack in administrative support, which is how we wanna shore up our capabilities in this budget. Equipment, we're up, you know, we're gonna fund equipment, apparatus, training, perhaps some facilities upgrades, and then external support, how do we work with our vendors? And then how do you measure a fire department? Uh, for us, it's response times, patient outcomes, fire inspections, revenue and cost recovery, training compliance is a big one. You know, there's so much mandated training that goes into what we do as a fire department. We have to make sure we're in compliance in case, God forbid, we kill someone or we seriously injure someone. The maintenance costs, community training, feedback loop. And one of the things that we did recently here, uh, working with Mike, is the implementation of trial programs. Let's try something. Let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. Hey, let's try this, let's see if it works. Let's use some part-time staff. So that's kind of how we worked our budget out this year. Next slide. So for most, most fire departments, we're operation-centric. You'll look at a few other slides here where pretty much everything we do is focused around operations. And uh, operations, when you look at risk in a community or in government, risk is a function of a threat, the consequence of that threat and the vulnerability you have in your community. Mostly operations deals with consequence. The people that are sick, the injured, the traffic accidents. In police work, it's crisis uh management. You know, they're responding to an actual incident that is happening. So the way our department is staffed is based on a 24-hour shift where the chiefs that you see standing behind me, um, they work 24 hours, but then they also have these ancillary duties. And because of that, most of our focus is on consequence, but we wanna be able to also focus on threat and vulnerability. And we do that, but I think this budget will shore up those areas. The Redondo Beach Fire Department is a Class 1 fire department, okay? There's 50,000 municipal departments in the country. Less than 1% ever, ever achieve Class 1. In fact, uh, there's less than 400 in the U.S. And it's a rigorous process. You got an outside, nonpartisan organization comes in and does an assessment. And in 2020, 2019, 20-ish, around there, an assessment. And so you have a Class 1 department. And fires cause about $14 billion annual damage throughout the U.S. And the other part about making sure that we're ready for disaster is making sure our community is trained. So we do these community risk reduction programs, CERT, CPR, education cadet programs. But once again, everything that we do in the department is fully focused to consequence because we respond to calls. Next slide. So if you look at, this is our current operations model here. The only thing that's in the circle here, that's, those are the only folks that are on a 40-hour work week. The rest of the department is geared towards operations. And part of this budget here is used to, hey, can we start moving from some operations-centric to some administrative support? And so this is just to give you an overview of how the department is set up. There's uh three platoons, they manage the fire stations, there's multiple platoons, there's basically a tripple kit of everything up there. And then on the left there, that's our 40-hour staff. And then up top, myself, uh, Admin Secretary and Analyst. Next slide. So in January this year, I'd been here about four months and uh I talked to Mike about, hey, I'd like to start a trial program so we can address the threat and the vulnerabilities. And so we put together a trial program where we um brought up a fourth division chief, an acting chief. Chief uh Brian Regan here is an acting division chief who came in to fill a spot and Chief Isaac Yang became the administrative chief. We brought in a part-time director of communications who unfortunately, she's gonna leave us soon, but she really did a lot of work for us. She helped us with performance management, she helped us in the recruitment process, community engagement, staff work, analysis. She has a PhD from UCLA and she got offered a, a fantastic job to run an institute at UCLA uh come this uh summer. So we'll lose her, but part of this trial program was, this is what an outside perspective brought in to us and helped us. We have a part-time plan checker because um expediting inspections and improving business development's important to us. So we put a part-time plan checker in. And then we had a deputy fire marshal did some shared training 'cause training is one thing, a training officer for the department was lacking. It didn't, doesn't pan out as well. It's more important to have a dedicated training officer. And lastly, a performance metrics. And in this trial program that we did, we had 88 projects that we put together that we managed them in performance profile, 78% completion rate. We had four saves, people that had cardiac arrest. Uh, our inspection uh program that you approved, our BFI's in place and it's working great. We reduced business delays as a result of the plan checker with businesses that were going through the inspection process. And we have a cadet program, an internship program. We implemented a tiered dispatching system where you don't get all the resources all the time because we determined what resource would be sufficient. And so, kind of on and on, but this is not possible with a partnership without the Association, the Union of Firefighters. And it was collaboration, working with them to help. And uh, certainly, um, I'm just here to carry the message, but they're the ones that do all the work. In fact, I could humor you that uh I graduated in the 5% of the high school class that made the top 95% possible. And then after all that, with this year, we returned $600,000 in salary savings back to the city. Next slide. This is uh our command staff. I know you, yes.
Can you say that for a second?
Yes.
What do you mean by return?
So we had personnel savings in our budget from last year. And I, I guess return, but we had an offset of what did we not spend that was allocated? It was right around the $600,000 range.
You were fully staffed the entire time.
We were prior, in the summer, we weren't. There was times that we're using part-time personnel. I had salary savings from these part-time employees. I didn't have an analyst in place. So I think at the end of the day, between all those moving pieces, I think that was the, the end of the month. And I don't even know.
Some of that's due, some of that's due to vacancy, there, absolutely. And the, and the, and the attrition that occurs through retirements and then bringing on new staff and resources and the gap between those retirements.
And that's every time, I would imagine.
And reduced overtime uh from years past. There was years past where we had significant overtime and overtime exceedance at that due to lack of staffing. So um, it's a combination of things, I mean, it's.
And it's just, I think it's just a credit on the, on the slip. It's not, I'm, I'm not writing a check to say thank you, but in general.
It's money not spent, not, not returned, yeah.
So what you're saying is you were fiscally prudent last year and now you want us to show you the money?
It's the sales pitch right here. Remember, the 5% of the class. And uh, I think the big thing we did this year was a lot of community engagement. Those are our chief officers and uh, we'll go to the next slide. So uh, the budget request uh this year is this pilot program that I did a trial program. I'd like to continue this pilot program and then put a, keep the fourth division chief, keep him on a 40-hour work week, but uh kind of expand the role to include emergency management, which is part of managing risk in the community. Emergency management has a good direct nexus to FEMA. And when communities that have emergency managers then all of a sudden are all of a sudden identified by FEMA as the city's emergency manager. And then with that, uh, we can then sometimes become self-supporting. Because if you have an emergency manager, you're involved with FEMA grants and there's training and allocation and equipment. But absent having the administrative staff, it's hard to gain traction in that. Uh, the other uh aspect of the fourth division chief would be to have administrative duties and uh the fire marshal duties. This position would be kind of funded through the elimination of an existing captain's position and upgrade it to a division chief. And so that would be in personnel.
But to put a fine point on that, on a temporary basis, on an over-hire pilot program basis, not creating an, a permanent fourth division chief. Because one of the things we're sensitive in with these recommendations is that we don't wanna create a structure that if council ultimately, as we go through our broader analysis with the county, determines makes sense to transition to the county, we've created a position that's going to be left hanging and not supported by that transition. Captain positions can make the move. Permanent administrative division chiefs uh have to be, in a sense, Y-rated and adjusted. So this is a temp position, it would be uh an acting position. It would be funded on an over-hire basis and would not create the permanent fourth division chief. But allows us to test this program, to Pat's point, uh, and continue, I think, the continuity service that comes with a division chief assigned a 40-hour work week that aligns with City Hall as opposed to aligns with two 24/7 shifts that catches City Hall periodically, but not all the time. That's the, that's the real value with this, with this pilot program.
And just to uh jump in on that, is this for a particular decision package? And if so, is that number 49?
I can check right now.
Yeah, I didn't queue them, I didn't queue them.
Could we?
It's 49.
Okay.
Did a fantastic job.
All right, and, and, and Mike, perhaps you can queue us on the decision packages as we go through so we can.
Absolutely. And each of these are specifically tied to uh that, that, and we will bring that up now.
So, what, did you just say the budget, so the budget won't be going up for the temporary over-hire?
No, it, it, the budget will be going up, but we won't, in this case, authorize a fourth permanent position. We will be assigning a captain and on acting duty pay to this chief spot for the time being and allow us to backfill at the lower rank. So we won't, we have enough, it's similar to what we do in the over-hire program with PD. We, we, we count on the continuity of turnover in that sense.
We count on the continuity of turnover, but we still have an open spot.
Well, in this case, we're promoting the existing captain position dedicated to fire marshal duties to this rank on an acting basis.
Battalion chief, uh, division chief.
Correct. So we don't, we don't, it doesn't affect operations. We're advancing and elevating that position. The training captain.
Elevating the position.
Right.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Temporarily.
Yeah, it's currently a captain. We would elevate it to the rank of division chief and then, and that way we can also regularize it in the budget. And is, being mindful that we have the feasibility study and a third-party consultant coming in, which is uh another good reason to have the trial program is that third party's gonna come in and be able to see what we've been doing and what we're doing now and, you know, and get their input. And the other position here would be the restoration of a training captain, which is not what most people think. Is it training captain like, you know, the professor? Is it someone that does didactic instruction and then manipulative? No, the training captain essentially is, is someone who ensures compliance, make sure that all our training records are standardized, make sure that we're compliant with the rules, make sure that the training calendars adhere to, monthly audits, that, uh, a training captain, I think sometimes the term, a training captain, it makes it so, we're all training captains, we all train each other. But this position right here is really specific to ensuring that we have some type of systemic system to manage our records and uh, God forbid, you have a line-of-duty death. I've been involved with three of them. And the very first thing that uh OSHA, NIOSH, um, state government comes in, the US attorney comes in, and they're, where are your training records?
Can I ask you?
Yes.
Who's doing those roles now?
So currently, we don't have a training captain. The deputy fire marshal has been quasi-doing some of the training roles, but it's, it's really insufficient. So we do not have a current training captain. And, and right now, we manage our training records mostly by notation, uh, you know, memos. We have some hard.
Centralized, organized.
Yeah.
System.
Yeah, that's what we need.
Yeah.
Who does the emergency planning?
Right now, between Chief Yang and uh Captain Kurt Mahoney and myself, but Chief Yang and Captain Kurt Mahoney, they are, they go out and they're involved with emergency planning, EOC activation. Chief Yang is actually currently designated as the EOC director. He comes up here, he's gone through um, you know, simulated setups. And then when we did the city workforce training for disaster service worker, we also gave them a kind of a brief summary of what it is to activate an EOC and what your roles are. But it's also a, a position that really needs to be uh established because when the disaster hits, um, you know, we're gonna be doing operations, but we're gonna need folks to make sure there's continuity of, of governance and that the community, so. Right now, it's all shared.
When was, can I ask, I'm sorry, I have one more question. Have we ever had this position before? When was the last time we had it?
Let me ask Chief Daly, training captain, when was the last time?
Years ago.
I would be, I would say like 12 years, 13 years. It was a full-time captain position, uh, and that was alongside with the deputy fire marshal. So those were the two staff captains.
Yeah, my recollection is we eliminated that position during uh about midpoint of the recession. So it wasn't an early cut, as I recall, but it was a cut that came later into uh the sort of depth of the recession impact on our budget. I would say 2010-ish in that range. Yeah.
Okay, so 2010 position, uh, was a big economic down, downturn, so, yes, sir.
Is it a promotion from a captain to a division or division chief, acting division chief? Is that what's, what caused the $86,000 impact?
Yes, the, the, the captain, a fully-loaded captain is uh $268,000. $86,000 more is what it, what a fully-loaded, when I talk fully-loaded, I mean.
Yeah, benefits.
Full with all the benefits, yes. And that would be the difference to, to raise, elevate that position. And it would uh provide me a lot of uh benefit as well to have a staff captain. We've been doing a trial program with it. So we've been testing it. We have some performance metrics on, hey, this, actually, I think it's working pretty good and we're getting some positive feedback. And uh, we track all our projects on uh this interactive, shared drive. We can all know what projects work on at any given time and what the completion rate is and who can work on what. But yes, that's where the $86,000 came.
And just to reiterate, the pilot program for the division chief's decision package 49, the training captain position is decision package 48.
48, yeah. And so the training captain.
Question if I could, uh, Chief, on if, uh, decision package 48. One of the additional responsibilities is grant writing.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I wanted to ask you, how much uh money in grants do you think may be made available by having this uh new fire training captain emergency prepared and this coordinator? And have you had an opportunity to look into that?
I'll give you some, my experience, my previous career was that we were actually able to fund a full section, which is 15 personnel and staff uh with the grant allocations. So there are grants out there. So, there are grants out there, but some of the grants, you have to be careful, are either matching grants, which sometimes are not really a good decision, and some of them are not, don't fund enough, there's not work put in time in. But my experience has been that there's a lot of grants available out there from all areas. In fact, some branches of government give you grants that you would never think of, like the National Highway Transportation Group would have grants to benefit firefighters and all that. So, that would be a key finding. And there's grant writers at the state, and there's the International Association of Firefighters in DC actually has a grant section that has union shop members that help locals access these grants. Safer Grant is one of them.
I want to read from page 61 of the fire assessment conducted by former acting chief Kaufman. It says, Section 8, Training, this is page 61 of the PDF. "The number-one concern of the members of the RBFD is their training. Most of the interviews revealed that the cause for their inconsistency and deficiency in training was a direct result of their loss of their training officer position that was staffed by a fire captain." Of course, it goes on, so, just a refresher for those council members who are not here.
Thank you.
It seemed to be a common theme when I read the assessment. And I think, to the public, the term "training captain" sometimes is misleading, because it's so much more, so much more. And also, in training, firefighters are also able to ascend through the state fire marshals' programs, so they can get accreditation, but without having to, you know, kind of someone to shepherd their training, so.
Can I ask you about one other thing before you move on? You mentioned early on, as part of the trial program that you implemented, some form of tier dispatching?
Yes.
What was your assessment about the effectiveness and efficiencies of that program? Did you, do you have enough of a database to frame a reference?
I think yes. Your question, yes. So, I think the truck responses have dropped, so that was one of the ones that we quit sending the truck on certain calls. And in the harbor...
The truck is the 50-foot ladder truck?
That's right, 54-foot ladder truck. So, I don't have, I don't, we haven't had enough time span, but qualitative data in the firehouse is that, yeah, it makes a difference. And we can implement more tier dispatching down the road, because that's one way that we can look at how we deploy. But we did kind of a, you know, a rough sketch, hey, these kind of calls, we don't need to send the hook and ladder on. These kind of calls, we can send them on. And so, Chief May, who's our operations chief, he actually put together a run list that said, these are the calls that the trucks are not going to, that the truck is not going to go on.
When you say "made a difference," are you talking about financially?
It makes an impact on the apparatus, and it leaves it available, but the 54-foot ladder truck requires a lot of maintenance. So, it's less wear and tear on the equipment, which means the equipment's in service longer, which means it's less maintenance. And it also makes sure that that piece of equipment is available for critical calls.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we get that new truck from Long Beach yet, by the way?
They went and looked at it. Chief Daley was just back in Wisconsin, and it's ready to roll. And there, I spoke to the Long Beach Fire Chief, he'd love to buy it back from us, actually. Because there's a...
Talk to someone down there, they do.
There's a 40...
They're reconsidering that decision.
There's a 40-month waitlist.
Good get, good get on that.
The increase, so. The next budget request will be the apparatus that's going to come out, really, of Public Works, and I don't, I don't think it's any of my decision packages here, but it's a replacement of, a scheduled replacement of our battalion command apparatus and a paramedic squad. So, those are scheduled, they were scheduled last year, and this year, they are on our list. The equipment, the SCBA is a self-contained breathing apparatus, that's, jokingly, that's what separates cops from firefighters, is we put on this big gear and we go in this burning building. And the SCBAs, which is really our lifeline, they also have a shelf life that's governed by NIOSH and other regulatory agencies. So, we're due to replace the entire departments. Last year, we set aside some money. This here is the second half of the money. Chief Daley and the apparatus and apparatus committee actually found breathing apparatus at a discount rate that would benefit us. And one of the cool things they have on there is they have a thermal imaging camera. So, when the firefighter's in the building looking for someone who's trapped in a burning building, they actually have a little heat-seeking camera on their equipment that they can search and see bodies through the heat and smoke.
Decision package 25, for your reference.
Yeah, thank you. So, that's 25, that's the SCBA replacement. Is there any potential cost recovery for the old SCBAs that are being replaced?
No, they're out of, they're well used.
I imagine they're like car seats, like, once you use them, you just throw them.
Yeah. I mean, we could, I don't even know, in my prior department, we actually would destroy them, because we wouldn't want the liability of them being out there. You could, you know, other countries might, but it just, it's a lot to maintain, yeah, but, no, I hear you, because they're expensive.
Yeah. And just to go back, the apparatus will be detailed in decision package 39 as part of our annual vehicle replacement purchase program. And you'll receive a budget response report that further details what's in decision package 39 on a unit-by-unit basis. That's one of the normal BRRs you receive from us each year, so you'll, you'll get that in the next two weeks.
And the next request is personal protective equipment, PPE.
And that spans two decision packages, really, 26 and 27.
I'll make sure I queue these up next time in my... That's also another mandate that firefighters, because of cancer and cancer screening and exposure to cancer, you know, when I came on the fire department 33 years ago, it was the coolest to look like the firefighter that had the dirtiest jacket with the most heat and smoke damage on it. And what they found was that, and I had three friends of mine pass away of cancer because of it, because it would leach into your areas under your arm. And so, there's requirements now that firefighters need to have a second set of firefighting gear. And the first set, when you go to a fire and take them, you have special washing machines that wash them, and you get your second set out and you put those on. And so, that second set is really important to us. It's part of the National Cancer Survivor Initiative by the International Association of Firefighters. Then it's actually something the IFF fought for really hard. So, nationwide, they're going to a second set. Not everyone does it at first, because it's expensive.
I had a question about that, actually. So, decision package 26 said that this is for outfitting new, eight new employees?
So, there's a second set of turnouts for the entire organization. And then, there's $100,000 allotment set aside, because we're looking to hire eight new employees next year.
Right. And so, you said the first part was for decision package 27, and the $50,000 that you're mentioning there is for everyone?
The $50,000 is for a second set of turnouts, and the $100,000 is to outfit...
The eight.
The eight recruits.
I just want to make sure that the 50 was for everyone.
Yes.
Got it.
And the outfitting of new firefighters, though, goes beyond just the turnout gear. It's everything else that they need. And we typically have a one-time decision package for you that aligns with our upcoming recruitment expectation for the next fiscal year and set that money aside. In an ideal world, we probably would just make that a recurring expenditure, so we have resources each and every year. But by doing that, you might, there were years and years past where we might only hire two people, and you've set resources aside for the expectation of eight or 10. So, we've gotten in the habit of forecasting each year's need as a one-time DP. And one other thing that I think is worth noting, as it pertains to apparatus, at some point, and we can talk about it more tonight or down the road, but decision package 51 speaks to us adding some additional resources to the vehicle replacement fund to enhance the maintenance of some of our fire apparatus, particularly our holdover equipment. There were some questions and concerns raised about what our reserve vehicles and equipment look like. And in looking at it, it made sense for us to add resources to help provide more continuity of service in that regard, based on those concerns. So, at some point, it's worth you looking at 51, and I think drilling into that as well.
On 51, the proposed work to be done, would that expand the life of the fire apparatus?
It, what it does is, yes, that's, one answer is yes, absolutely, is it's, we do forecast maintenance on the rig. So, if we do this preventative maintenance, it's going to last longer. Another part of this preventative maintenance is two of our apparatus require upgrades to meet current compliance with CHP lighting requirements. So, that's a one-time cost there. But for the most part, we try to get Public Works and Ted and his staff do as much as they can to get our rigs ready. But sometimes, we need to go to a third outside vendor, because it's an emergency repair, and these other shops that we work with have the equipment, facilities, and they know how, they get them in, they get them out. So, this is kind of a way, like, ideally, if we could all do it in one shop, but it's kind of hard to do that. So, this is for us to have a budget to also handle additional scope of work that's required to extend the life, to make sure it stays operating.
And to recognize that this needs to be an ongoing commitment for us to, I think, properly equip those reserve vessels and make sure that we're not also further burdening our vehicle maintenance personnel, who it might be testing their expertise in this regard. So, basically adding pre-planned contractual funds for the advanced maintenance of our apparatus, and recognizing that the fund needs it, as opposed to just over-expending and then having it come back and be allocated in arrears through the ISF program.
Because currently, the way it kind of works right now, just in my time here, was that we would take those funds out of our account versus Ted and I, we had a great meeting about, hey, let's just allocate that budget to Public Works and know that they'll be kind of the gatekeepers. And obviously, the better we can do in-house repairs, the better for all of us. And then, if there's a time when we can't, then Ted and the staff would then send it out to these vendors that work on many fire, a lot of fire equipment through the area.
And the ongoing expense to the city manager, that's the $255,000?
Yeah.
That'd be every year going out?
It'd be everywhere, year committed, recognizing the fire department has these unique needs, and investing in our reserve apparatus, allowing us to reserve, invest in that reserve apparatus, make sure it's operational when we need it, and to avoid, on a preventative basis, any of the, you know, the concerns that have arisen in the last couple of years. There was a time when all of our reserve apparatus were simply holdover vehicles from prior frontline units. We didn't even fund a replacement schedule for our reserve equipment. We simply used whatever was the most recent version of the frontline apparatus that came offline. And we would do that until the next version of it was available through a replacement. As we've extended our lifespan of our vehicles, fewer vehicles come offline, the frequency has slowed, and that's put extra burden on the maintenance associated with reserve apparatus. And I think we're at a point where we need to recalibrate that and ensure that those units are available to us as needed, rather than rely on maybe borrowing or, you know, rolling with a piece of equipment that isn't fully, fully functional for us.
There's national standards, NFA 1900 talks about, what's the ideal replacement cycle? And they'll say anywhere between 12, 12 to 15 years in frontline service, and then five years in reserve. But that entire period has to be funded. So, when that fire truck goes into reserve status or relief, that you continue to put money into the account. And that's going to be really important when we get this new fire engine, is that we're going to put a 2015 rig, it's worth a lot of money, we're going to put that in reserve status. But it's going to be better off if we continue to fund this rig we're putting in relief status, because it's a good investment to have, so. And we've had some great discussions with Public Works about how we're going to do Then the next slide, so this is what the new proposal would look like. So, we start shoring up the administrative side of the house, and we have fire marshal, emergency manager, essentially, an administrative chief, who would have a captain that would handle training and help with emergency preparedness, help write grants, help us continue to do the training we're out there. We'll continue with a part-time plan checker. We have an inspector, the administrative secretary. The communications director, I, we won't have one for now, I don't know if we plan to fill in it again, but this would be kind of what Wright looks like, based on the budget request I'm making. The next slide is cost recovery, so...
Is this DP four?
Yes.
I checked the number, I think it might be.
I'm sorry.
It is number four.
So, EMS cost recovery. When I came on the fire department, most of the call loads were basically fire suppression-type calls. And the fire service has evolved from fire suppression to rescue, basic first aid to advanced ALS. And kind of the, the theory behind the fire department in the incipient phases was that taxpayers, out of their, or tax assessment, provided funding for a fire department, because it was a global benefit. So, there was a benefit if your house is burning, there's a benefit in having a well-staffed department, because then it can keep your house from burning in the next. But with the advent and the increase in EMS calls, really what's happening is what was once basically a fire-based system has had a really huge demand of EMS on the system. And so, people then say, well, if my neighbor's house is burning, there's a global interest and benefit to put the fire out so my house isn't burned out. But if your neighbor, you know, has a heart attack or some medical illness, your neighbor next door is not going to catch it, okay? So, there's a user, so there's, and last year, we had 5,500 patients that used medical services. And departments across the state, there's up to 30 departments now, are trying to find a kind of a meaningful way that's fair, that shifts the funding from just tax-based general fund to user fees, to say, those that use the EMS service, which is not what the fire department was initially designed to do, tax dollars weren't initially designed to provide all health care. But that's kind of what's happening in this day and age. And so, the EMS fee is designed to be a user fee. You use a service, there's 70,000 residents, but 5,500 use EMS, and we transport treat, use medications on them, et cetera, and finding a way to balance that, balance the user versus the global benefit. There's departments, there's chiefs that I talked to that have what's called a first responder or pre-hospital care fee. And it's based on your personnel costs, your equipment costs, fuel, maintenance, administrative fees, the supplies and other factors. When we go on a 911 call, we're using oxygen, we're using the patches that we hook up to put, take a picture of your heart, we're using bandages. And all those medical supplies, they don't get reused. We restock every day, every day, every day, every day. And those fees just continue to come out of the general fund of the department. So, implementing a EMS treatment fee is one way to kind of put in place a user fee. And looking at the, what it costs, what our hourly rate is, what the averages are, I came up with $1,300, $313 would be a good ballpark estimate of what an EMS fee is. Now, that's billed to the insurance, and the way it would work is, a patient, if we have their insurance information, great, we would send the EMS user fee to their insurance. And if they don't have their insurance information with them, then they'll get a bill from outside vendor that we already use for fire inspections, and it says, here, you got this, you requested ambulance, they came out and they provided paramedic needs for you, can you send us your insurance information, we'll send your insurance a, the bill. And, and then if they don't have insurance or there's a hardship, all of these departments have a compassion clause that basically is, okay, we're not going to be sending Mrs. Smith to collections. But I think it's, I personally feel that in a system... But I think it's, I personally feel that in a system nowadays where most of our calls are EMS, that there should be some type of checks and balance against what it is that we're expected to do and what is a user benefit. And I put a ballpark estimate, it depends what our recovery percentage is, it depends on what the process is. But if you look at the departments, they're on the other side of the slide, those are currently departments that charge this fee. And it's just based on data readily available on the website. So that's probably, this is probably worthy, I'm sure, of questions and discussion you like to have.
And I think one thing that's really critical about this recommendation and one of the key reasons I felt comfortable in proposing it to you all is this compassion clause. And that's very important. This is not intended to pursue individuals in our community who may not have proper insurance coverage or full coverage or an ability to pay. This is about us billing insurance that provide this as a regular service and cover this as a regular cost. And these cities are examples of that and who have success in collecting this fee through insurance providers. So effectively by not charging it, these premiums include it and we're not recovering those expenses. So we're leaving effectively as a community money on the table for work that we're providing to our residents. And that's, that's really why we think it makes sense. We'd, we'd adopted this fee, I think, in a different version years ago before it evolved and I think medical insurances began to cover it and we, and we did not collect it. This is us rebooting the program with better knowledge, better understanding of what's out there in the medical community and what Medicare and, and Medi-Cal and other premium insurances will, will pay for these types of services. It's effectively a restocking fee. Some people use the phrase restocking fee. We, we expend materials and supplies every time we go on a medical call. Those same materials and supplies could, for some people, if they can drive themselves to urgent care, would be provided in that urgent care experience. So this is us effectively, I mean, in many respects, the fire department has become a traveling urgent care.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
It's almost what we do on a daily basis.
And the, one of the common questions I get when, you know, we go on a 911 call and someone comes back and how thankful they are we saved their life. And they're like, I can't believe, like, so how much was that? And I said, no, it doesn't cost anything. Well, how could that be that you provided all that, that didn't cost anything? And that's, so someone that I'm actually surprised that they're not going to get a bill. But I think the user model, I think it makes sense if you think about it in the grand scale. It's a way to, because otherwise taxes are just subsidizing medical healthcare in general. But either way, I think it's something we should consider.
And maybe this is based, if I may ask a couple of questions, maybe this is based on paperwork associated with charging a user fee versus services rendered fee. But if you entered, if you went to urgent care, I imagine you'd get a visitation fee plus, if you got a shot administered or something like that, you'd get billed based on the services actually provided. So is this just from an efficiency standpoint? It'd be a lot more efficient to bill on a call basis rather than a services provided basis?
Yes, I think per call, per EMS call, talking to the administrators that do this, generally speaking, if you have a, if you have it in your master fee schedule, that's the easiest way to do it. They send it. I'll also tell you that insurance companies have gotten kind of hip to this. And so there are also kind of, there'll be a staring contest too. But you know what? We, somehow we can find some balance.
Yeah, thank you for that. And also, what percentage of, when you do go on medical calls, what percentage of those patients that you find require the use of an ambulance or transportation on an ambulance?
So it's, it's about a 50/50 split. So we would charge the rate regardless.
You show up, they get charged.
Yeah, we show up, you get charged. And but if we transport you to the hospital, you're going to get a bill.
From?
From, because we don't run an ambulance service. Yeah, you'll get a bill from McCormick.
But do we have an ambulance schedule or fee schedule for those instances where we do run our ambulance? Because we do have an ambulance.
Okay, we, we have, we, we don't, we cannot legally use our ambulance unless it's a dire emergency because we don't have transportation rights in our own city.
Right.
So we have an ambulance, yes, we have used it. And we've used it only in cases where the third-party private ambulance was unable.
Right.
To come to the call. So then we use it. But then because we're not a, we don't have transportation rights and we can't bill for it. But we, Chief Yang and I have been working with the transport company to enter into MOU where they would say, on the times that you had to transport, we'll enter an agreement that we'll do a pass-through and you get to keep the funds.
Okay, that was, that's it. Thank you.
I'll let you finish. I got lots of questions.
I had a couple of quick questions to pick up on that.
Yeah.
So the proposed pre-hospital paramedic assessment fee, that would only be charged to those who actually have insurance? Or would it be means-based, meaning only those who can pay? Have you had an opportunity to think through that?
I have. Yeah, I see where you go. Probably the, the most palatable is if you have insurance, that's what we're going to take. And if you don't have it, some departments, they, they leave it at that. And they'll tell the third-party administrator, if they don't have insurance, round file the bill. Some cities will say, if there's, you know, if the individual's willing to pay the bill. So it's a mixed bag. But the compassion clause is basically, we don't want someone to get stuck with a bill who can't afford it. That's a decision on this side of the house where we say, you're not going to have to pay it.
And I think we should strongly, if we're going to adopt this and the council's comfortable with this concept, we really should include a compassion clause that makes very clear that we are billing, we are billing insurance providers and we will do what we can to collect the $313 from insurance providers. If our residents cannot provide an insurance coverage, we will not send a bill. Because our intention here is, now, we may have to, out of fairness, send a bill, but we will not collect on that bill.
Well, okay, that's, that's what I was going to ask is, presumably, you're going to send a bill to everybody. And they, they, then the resident, if they didn't give insurance information, I don't think residents want to be asked at the moment they're picked up in this state, do you have insurance and what's your insurance?
Well, actually, that's very common. That's the most common.
That you guys do ask.
A hundred percent. That's what the ambulance, first thing we do. And with my prior career, can I get your ID? Can I get your insurance card?
All right. So, but it just seems like it would who's us to send a bill once, maybe twice, but that's it.
And then drop it.
And it doesn't get submitted to insurance, then that's it.
You don't go to collections.
Yeah, we're not going to collections.
We make attempts.
We're not, we're not sending red.
I don't know that we need to advertise that. I think we need to have a discussion and that might be a case by case basis.
We're missing one thing here.
So, so hold on for a second. You're, you're going to bill everyone and only the honest people pay? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No.
I know, I think you're missing one thing here. A lot of people have deductibles. So nothing pays out until you pay the deductible. So let's say you have a $500 deductible, you haven't used anything that would go towards it. You're going to pay the $313 no matter what. So, you know, in a way, that does get passed on to the consumer, not just the insurance company.
There, to your point, so I researched this. So the company that does this has the same thing.
Right.
They're, and to Councilman Abaji's point, they're going to get a bill.
Yeah.
That says, do not pay, send in your insurance information. Okay. And then the company bills the insurance. And if they haven't met their deductible, then there's not going to be a bill. If their deductible is met and the insurance says, oh, okay, yes, we're going to cover that bill. But there's not going to be, so the, the company I spoke to today, they're very, they do 30 cities, they do 140 cities in the Western US.
Yeah.
And this is how they do it. And they're like, this is, and I don't want to like give up all the trade secrets up here publicly, but that's.
Well, and we want to be honest about how this is impacting our residents. That's why we're having the candid conversation. And, and every one of these agencies that has this fee has effectively a compassion clause that they found a way to administer. And we certainly can provide more detail on how that's done, more technically. We can do that through a BRR or the like. And, but I would strongly advise that if we are going to adopt this fee, and I, I think it makes a lot of sense given the circumstances, we have to be honest with the community to say that we intend to include in a compassionate clause in how we do business. Because this is a department that's 100% subsidized by your general fund dollars, you have the ability to determine who receives fees and who is waived fees in, in our delivery of service. You have that ability. If we were taking federal funds to cover EMS operations or other things, we might have an equity standard that doesn't allow us to make that decision to simply not charge those who don't provide insurance coverage or have a premium above the cost of the fee. But you, as a council, have discretion. This is a fee right now that would, in a sense, help us recover our general fund costs across the board.
I get it. I get it.
Yeah. And then can I add something else? If we owned an ambulance, if we had our own ambulances, we would be charging $1,800 a call and we would be sending it to collections because you're.
That's wholly different service though.
Yeah, but, but it's kind of, what I'm saying is, is if you provide a service, so not all departments have ambulances, but the ones that do are always on the forefront of.
Yeah, I'm looking at LA County's fee schedule and it's 1,800.
Oh, I know, because I used to have to sit in front of the commission and, and go over the fee schedule.
Well, that'll be in addition to this, if there's a fee on its call.
Well, that's coming from the private ambulance company.
Can I make a, can I make a note just to consider on the fees though, too, just to consider is that while they are collecting or charging 1,800 fees, it's like a timeshare business. It depends on what insurance company you are with and the levels at which you will get reimbursed. So you may have a million dollars of AR and if you're with Simply Life, Medicare, Medicaid, if it's 20 bucks, guess what? You get 20 bucks out of the cost that it was for, so you could charge the sky. But it depends on the insurance thing too. So very timeshare driven when it comes to the AR side of things. So just to consider.
I'll add one more caveat, too. Insurances generally are more welcoming to emergency calls for service. You know, they don't want you not to go to the ER too because you had so. Generally, this is a pre-hospital emergency.
Yeah. Well, to pick up on Councilmember Lowenstein, oh, I'm sorry, who was that? Go ahead.
Yeah, go for it.
No.
And I have one more after this.
I'm finished. Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
Go ahead.
You sure?
Yes, sir. Go, go for it. And then we've got Abaji.
Okay. So the point that Councilmember Lowenstein was making about people have deductibles and they have to pay this out-of-pocket money they have to pay. In your experience, all of your years of experience, are there, is there a group of people who are already hesitant to call an ambulance in the first place? Hey, I'm going to be fine. I don't want to call 911. I want to go to the hospital. And will this additional potential cost to them, $300 plus, do you think that could, you know, break the camel's back, as it were, in a few instances where people say, you know what? I'm not calling. I'm not going to do it. And then we have a, a public health issue in that respect?
I, I've never, generally, people call 911 is because it's, it's their last dying breath. And for them, that's their emergency. That's, so I have never experienced that. Now, sometimes firefighters will go to a call and say, you, probably this call, you don't really need to go buy ambulance. And they're doing that out of compassion to say, I don't want to see you get an $1,800 bill from an ambulance company when I think you can just drive your child to the urgent care. And that's very common. But in the moment of calling, that's, it's probably never, in fact, I've been on the receiving end of 911 calls when I used to audit them. They're, it's, it's, they're calling 911 because this is it. This is their emergency. And for us, this may be the only time we ever interact with them in their life.
It's good to hear that it won't have an impact. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Go for, go for it. Anything else?
I have one more after this.
After this slide, you have one more?
Yeah.
Okay. That's Mr. Abaji, real quick and then let him.
Yeah, just the 313 actually cover the restocking and the other cost?
Oh, the basic analysis I did, yes. And it was consistent with other, and I actually talked to the consultants that do this and they're like, that's a pretty good, that's, that's a fair assessment of, you know, because generally speaking, in metropolitan departments in Southern California, costs are going to be the same. And you can see what other departments in the region.
Based on publicly available data.
Yes, exactly.
In the 313, do you think you'll actually be recovering that amount? Or will there be some administrative costs that are going to shrink that down?
If you hire the third-party, we have a third-party consultant that does our fire inspection billing, which I'll talk next, they charge a flat rate like $17 per patient. So which is also a consideration that we have to do a really good job on our end, front-loading and training our folks. Because you don't want to start sending random bills and get charged $17 every time to collect nothing. So on our end, there's also, look at it from the, okay, if we're going to implement it, what is the training on our end look like to ensure that we're getting all the right information?
And that was my last question. Is there more you feel you need to do, training on your own to implement this, looking at an appropriate compassionate relief clause, doing further a review or survey of fees? Is there more you, you'd like to do on this before we go forward? Maybe input if needed from your department's counsel or the city attorney?
I think, yeah, I could talk, Mike, we can do more research. It's pretty boilerplate out there. And, and we already have it in our master fee schedule in Redondo. You just don't have the adopt this fee. But you already have it on your master fee schedule since 2010, which is, you know, I'm talking to the consultants, they're like, well, you've already climbed the mountain because you already have it on your master fee schedule. You just haven't updated the cost.
Or actually billed people.
Or actually.
I, I think the problem is in 2010, we were on the sort of cutting edge of this conversation. And there wasn't the administrative apparatus to implement it, implement it successfully. That's changed with the success that these other agencies have had. And, and we would not have recommended this to you if it wasn't for the fact that these other fire departments have had success billing, collecting and following through on this fee. Because I think what we attempted to do in 2010, although it was before my time in this role, was thinking about this and not really understanding the mechanics of it. Now the mechanics are out there. They're available to us. It's templated. There are FAQs in most of these departments that explain very clearly how this works, when the billing occurs, why it occurs, why you're charged, what options you have to pay or not pay the fee. And that's why I think very clearly the compassionate billing clause is a major part of this. We do not want to implement this fee without it. But there is money out there that we can collect. We may not collect it perfectly, but there is money out there and these other departments are collecting it successfully and have been so for years. And that's why this is before you.
And I could give you, you know, professional opinion on is that the fire service has really evolved. And we are providing healthcare, which we love to do. They get platinum healthcare in Redondo Beach. But at some point, you, you know, even as a fire chief to say, at what point is there a subsidy, you know, and if a user is willing to pay? So I, you know, that's just some.
It's a policy call. I mean, that's why it's before you. It's part, it's a decision package and something that you all have to chew on.
Just on that point, it's a policy call. Is the $935,000 that is anticipated to increase revenue part of the balanced budget?
It is. It's part of our proposed budget. What you might note in our recommendation is you've got a $1.7 million unallocated fund balance. So if you were to choose not to adopt this $935,000 anticipated revenue, it would eat into that figure. And more notably, our structural ongoing revenues in excess of expenditures are about at 1.2 million. So if you did not adopt this revenue as a structural revenue source, that number would go down about $300,000. So there's a reason why you have cushion in both of those areas so you can make these decisions without blowing a hole in the balancing of the budget.
Thanks for bringing that down, City Manager. One follow-up question. If we adopt decision packet number four, does that, do we need to provide direction, decision packet, package number four plus compassion clause? Or your understanding from our discussion here today that it were directing?
We're, we've estimated these revenues anticipating a compassionate clause. So there's a discounting to the number of calls for service that would be eligible under this, expecting that we would not collect on all calls for service. So that's part of the proposal. Implementation is going to take some additional work. We're going to have to come back with a contract and we're going to have to do things to, to execute. So there is delay in, in this collection as well that's also anticipated in these revenue calculations.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go to my last slide and then we'll do, okay. And the next would be cost recovery on fire inspections. And we approved the risk-based fire inspection program. And we talked about it was a program that's been implemented here. Getting a lot of positive feedback from folks on the street. And really what it also did is it kind of more equitably shared the fees so that residential, so prior it was $113 per unit, no matter what. And looking at kind of how we address fire prevention now, we can drop the residential's to $78. now, we can drop the residentials to $78 a year, because we're using a new system now where the firefighters go out in the fire trucks, and they're able at scale to inspect multiple buildings. The schools would go up slightly from 113 to 128. Large businesses would go to 138. They used to be at 113. And then small businesses will be 138, but only every three years. And that was the program we implemented. So the inspection cycle got shifted to instead of annually, to once every three.
And what I'd like to-
Residentials every three years now.
Not, residentials are annual by law.
Residential are annual by law.
By state law, yeah.
Yeah.
But we dropped the fee from 113 to 78, because firefighters are now going out en masse on the fire trucks and are able to, you know-
This is, and this is an implementation of the RBFI program you approved a couple of months back. We, for us to effectuate those fee changes, we need to do it now as part of the budget. This is a rare decision package where we're actually recommending a decrease in revenue as a result of reduced fees in these following areas.
Yeah, actually, you should just say, that would, should say 90 less.
The core budget includes $300,000 of annual revenue from fire inspections. This implementation would reduce that amount by $90,000 to $210,000 collected a year. And it would lower the fees in these, in the residential category and the small business category by going to tri-annual inspection. And that's decision package number 50.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Yep.
And again, each of these fee changes will be identified and codified on a line-item basis in your proposed master fee schedule that we'll talk about on June 13th. So that's where you'll see the residential change, you know, from 113 to 78. Or the small business fee going from an annual fee to a every-three-year fee at $138. So those, that's where you'll see the specific line-item adjustments. The decision packages capture the essence and the aggregate value of those changes. But of course, if they're not implemented, we've, you know, we have an adjustment to the budget to make. But in this case, we're lowering the fee. That's what's important. If we didn't approve this decision package, the estimated revenues for inspections go back up to $300,000, and we are leaving the old fees in place, which would affect residents and small businesses.
Yeah. Last slide is questions. And that QR code works?
Don't make us check it.
I checked it this morning.
So this is, this is why, is just by the nature of the questions, I thought it was helpful to at least have Cameron and Pat present tonight preemptively. So you can, we can start flushing this out. You can start thinking about it. These are substantive policy changes. There's a lot of meat on the bone here to digest and think about their big policy decisions. So we've got, you know, three weeks to grapple with them. But if you've got any additional budget response reports tonight you want us to think about, obviously, you're going to hear from the public here, too, as well. But what I, what direction we're looking for tonight is, hey, what follow information do you really want to see from us? It can relate to what you just heard, or it could be completely off topic, off-topic and just about the general budget and capital budget across the board.
Okay. So I actually have some questions for Cameron as well, but I forgot to ask them to him. But we'll get to that later, if he's here, no worries. But Chief, since you're here, I got a bunch of questions I've written down that I haven't asked yet, waiting. Let's just start off with, you made a comment a minute ago, we provide a platinum service here in Redondo Beach.
Yes.
For our service.
For EMS.
EMS, absolutely. Do you know what they do in Culver City or Beverly Hills?
Sure do.
You know the service they have implemented in Culver City for their service, EMS service?
Their fees, you're saying?
Paramedic? No, not the paramedic, but just the paramedic and-
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I could buy our response times, buy our auto pulse, buy our Heart Warrior program. So I bring three decades of experience. I'm like, yeah, this is a plan.
Do you know about their program where they actually go visit the residents after calls and pre-calls and make sure that they don't have-
Community paramedicine is kind of the next iteration of this. So some departments are getting grants for community paramedicine, or they do follow-up, because there's a vested interest in the community, like threat-consequence principle, really, if you can get out in the community and-
Proactively.
Proactively. And also, like, that's kind of the reason why also we've seen increasing call loads, because people aren't doing preventative, like, people don't go to get their checkups sent.
Right. So let's, to shorten that, basically, what's not happening right now in this community, we have an increased calls for service. But we aren't proactively going to locations that we do know there are issues and making sure they're okay. But more importantly, is after we get a call for service at said location, person comes back from the hospital, no one ever comes back and visits this individual. In Culver City, they're actually going to that individual's place and making sure that they're actually following up on post-hospital treatment, on their medications, they have the services that they need. And that has significantly decreased level of calls for service, and they don't charge for that. That's part of the overall package, and they're seeing the decrease in call volumes.
We did that where I worked for Cedars-Sinai, because the Affordable Care Act, hospitals get fined if there's a, if, hospitals get fined if a patient keeps coming back.
Right.
So Cedars-Sinai, Kaiser, all these big-
You don't do that here, though.
They, no. But for response side, our consequence management is top tier.
So let's go to the billing here. Assisted living fees for service. Did you look into assistant living fees? Because that is a commercial aspect of what's happening in this community. It's ever-growing. And assistant living facilities tend to push off their pre-hospital care or insurance nursing off onto us. Have we looked into those types of fees, impact fees?
Yes. And actually, we've actually met with some of the facilities also, because I also have experience in this, is that a lot of these facilities are told, don't touch the patient, call 911, we don't want the liability. So we've met with some of the facilities. We could implement another fee on the master fee schedule that would be addressed towards assisted living. Almost, the only problem there is that you could end up with someone not wanting to call 911, because-
But we're talking about assisted living facility, the individual's not calling 911, the administrative staff is calling for, to, and to your point earlier, somebody not wanting to call 911. You made a comment earlier that they're only calling 911 if there's a life-threatening situation, and oh, my gosh, just they're at the wit's end. Well, that's not true either, though, right? So homeless people get a lot of 911 calls for service.
No.
Transients.
If someone else is calling, then they have a different context of what-
Might not be for life-threatening. Are, is a person who's experiencing homelessness, are they getting a bill for $300?
Probably not.
Okay. So let me give you another example here, coastal zone. So specifically, you know, I work on the beaches as lifeguard. We call you guys all the time for calls for service. End of last summer, I had a 15-year-old male with a syncable episode. As per protocol, we have to call paramedics, get it checked out. We actually did everything we needed to do. Lifeguard's unseen. So by the time the paramedic showed up, this was, I call the circus with the truck, 56 ladder foot truck, and battalion chief and everyone else. The only resources that were used were reusable resources, so BP, coal, perf, EKG, all that stuff. There's no actual consumables being used on this call.
Yeah.
This individual would get a $300 bill?
Well, the consumables, well, first, if they have insurance, the consumables are only a portion. In fact, our entire consumable budget is not that much. It's the staffing. So what they do is they take, what's the average call, what's the hourly rate, what's the equipment maintenance, what's the full cost recovery? Then they take all those numbers, and the consumables are just a fraction of it.
So we're going to be charging for the entire medical incident that they're being called for?
An average of it, yeah. 20 minutes is what I think what the standard is to use.
Okay. So since we're in the coastal zone, we're going to get a lot of people, visitors from outside of Redondo Beach.
Yeah.
So we're going to start billing a lot of people from outside of Redondo Beach who get called.
Well, I'm not billing anybody unless you guys want to bill someone.
I'm, we're going down this path now and trying to figure out what we're going to be doing for billing.
Are we already billing?
No.
No, we're not. We're not billing right now.
Ambulance.
Nice.
Yeah, that's $1,800. So if we are people that live in our coastal zone, people that show up to our coastal zone, and we start having different practice for the two, that would, might be an issue. People just going to the beach, people not even wanting necessarily calling one, but the lifeguards do it for them because that's protocol. Now, we're sending them a bill? Is, I mean, what if someone else called, you know?
Listen, you don't have to argue with me. I'm just giving you a scenario.
Well, no, and I think that speaks to the sort of the nature and the expansion potentially of the compassionate clause, right? We can, we can write that, again, this is, these are general fund activities, general fund-supported services. We can write the fee schedule to mirror those, to mirror those needs and subsidies, right? We're not recovering subsidy here. We need to create an equitable format.
We're only going to end up billing the people who actually can pay and are honest enough to actually pay the bill. Otherwise, we're going to have, we're-
We're going to have to figure out the appropriate approach to the compassionate clause. Every agency that's got this in place, Burbank, Huntington Beach, Newport, Long Beach, across the board, Anaheim, they have grappled with some of these issues. And I think there's a template that we can draw from. But so, so it might make sense for us, what I would suggest to, you know, before just continuing down this line of questioning, is perhaps we bring back as a BRR, additional information that some of these agencies have used in this regard to help build out and create some understanding of how the compassionate clause works.
And what I want to know as well is who's going to be doing the actual billing? And we doing the billing? Who's going to be charged for that?
We have a third-party company that already does billing for us. They do our fire inspection billing.
Or using the same company that does the fire inspection billing?
There's others out there.
Okay. Okay. So let's go back to the training and compliance aspect. You want to put a training officer in place, but you don't have any software in place, or I don't see any software, I don't think. So we want to have someone in charge of training, but how are they going to be actually making sure, recording that? Is it just continuously going to be Excel files? Is that a compliant?
Some of it, I think we would start with, let's scan everyone's training records right now. So people have hard copies of their certs, I'd say, first.
Basically, it's paper right now.
Let's start scanning what they have, because actually, at the end of the day, that's what the state fire marshal, they still want the hard copy. So do that. The next would be, see if we have two in-house software companies. We use Firehouse. And I want to see if they have a training suite. I think they do. And see if they have a training suite, which is very common in a department, and go from there. And, but I think for, to start with would be, let's go ahead and aggregate. In fact, I told somebody, I go, this is, the first six months of this position is going to be just getting all the data together of what training serves, who has what, scanning, uploading, creating files. And then the next phase would be, okay, what type of platform should we use? We use Firehouse. It's already budgeted. They do staffing. They do other aspects of the department that we have, equipment monitoring, apparatus maintenance, and they might have a training platform.
Okay. So last year's budget, I believe we had 63 people, I want to say, in fire services, I want to say, 64, 64 people in fire services, administrative analyst, only one plan checker. Is hazmat specialist considered civilian?
Yeah, but that position, we don't have, yeah.
Okay. So it says we have 59 total sworn, but five total non-sworn. So we have administrative, two administrative, well, administrative specialist, administrative analyst. But when I was there the other day, and we were saying, we're going over this, we're not actually filling a lot of these spots right now.
We have part-time positions like, we have part-time inspector, plan checker. It's a full-time position, but we're not, we're not getting applicants. So we have part-time position there. So that's a position that's funded, that it's not filled. Our admin analyst, I was using that savings to help with the fourth division chief, and then our community, communications director. So currently, I have two funded vacancies that I haven't filled.
Civilian?
Civilian.
Okay. And that, and you want to increase that to 67 people, and that would be all civilians?
So we would-
Additional?
No, it's just, it's, no, it's one, the proposed budget adds one position to the department. So the analyst, the analyst would be filled, that position will be filled this fiscal year. The, the only addition is the training captain.
Yeah.
So the, the current fire marshal position would be the position that would be overhired as an admin chief. So that's not a net positive. That's just a, it's a temporary reclass of the, of that rank. The training captain would be the one net addition to the administrative structure of the department. The civilian positions aren't proposed for modification with the budget.
Okay. But it does say in this year's budget, we're going up to 67.
I don't know.
The bookmarks, oh, here it is. 67. It does say, personnel, total personnel 67, page 183 of the budget itself.
That might be a, that could be a typo.
Hazmat is not-
62 total sworn, five non-sworn.
Now, the five non-sworn, we have one, two, three positions. So the hazmat specialists, we don't.
Total non-sworn, or total sworn in 21, 22 was 59, is what we approved. Now, we want to prove the 62. And then five non-sworn in 2021, and now five non-sworn. So we're going up-
I'll look at those numbers. I don't think those are accurate.
Yeah, that might be a, that might be a typo. Let me look at the summary table here.
So I'd count, we'd be going up three?
Yeah, because we're not, I think we're just adding-
Okay. So we'll can figure that out later. I want to get hung up on that. So I see in the budget here, we're proposing a 12% decrease, roughly a $3 million decrease this year.
You know, the problem here, Councilman, is that this is, this is showing the proposed, the summary of personnel traditionally does not include the decision packages. This is including the titles as additives. So this needs to, this needs to be adjusted. That'll be one of the corrections.
So the plus three sworn was from last year's-
It's a retitling.
Adding the extra truck.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
The decision package is that?
That was last year's decision package, where we added the third person back on the letter engine that you fought for and won. Just wanted to remind you on that. You're welcome.
I'm reading it.
So going, so going to maintenance, well, actually, this year's budget, you guys are proposing roughly a $3 million decrease or 12% decrease in the total budget overall. It says, is that correct to assume here at page, what is this, page 185? And a lot of this is coming from overtime, $1.6 million from overtime. And there's some other locations in here it's coming from. But the one location I'm particularly looking at is, you went through with me through the fire station one and two.
Yeah.
Quality of the facilities. We're proposing here for maintenance, the maintenance repair and maintenance agreements to go down by 32%, 24% in this, City Manager. I mean, you can see that there on page 184. I mean-
Page 184 of what?
Page 184 of the budget.
It's 221 of the job.
I don't have the budget.
Yeah, that's, so if you're looking at, so what you're seeing in that budget, so that's the, that's the adopted over core. So you've got adopted one-time appropriations in those, those areas that were part of last year's budget that not part of core. So you're adopted, and last year in particular is very unique, because we had all the one-time appropriations. So that comes out of core. That gets stripped out of core.
The one-time.
Yeah, the one-time. So that's, it's not, I wouldn't reflect that as the department's cost of decline. Your year-over-year budget from adopted to proposed core is adjusted downward as a result of those one-time appropriations coming off the books.
And these positions that were slightly upgrading as a test, that's a one-time, that's not core.
Correct. That's a one-time. So the same thing, the personnel salaries would be adjusted upward to reflect that 70-plus thousand dollar expense, and it would come out as a core expense down the road.
Right. I didn't notice here anything regarding the Harvard Department vote requirements.
The vote, that's part of the maintenance in the $410,000. So I think there was 60,000 or- So I think there was sixty thousand or ninety-five thousand set aside to maintain the vessels.
Okay. I don't see.
And then the squad. Squad sixty-three.
Okay.
Which is that apparatus, yeah.
Couple of weeks ago, I asked for the apparatus and current age of apparatus. What was the engine that we are now getting rid of? That engine sixty?
Twenty, it's a twenty-fifteen.
No, the one, that twenty-two-year-old engine that went barbecue. At the two thousand one.
Number's it, yeah, it's.
Sixty-five?
It's sitting over.
Engine sixty-six. So then we still have engine sixty-five, which is a two thousand one, as a reserve?
And a truck.
And a truck.
Truck and an engine reserve.
And there is a BRR coming, specific to our vehicle fleet, that has discussed all age, age life expectancy for every unit in our fleet.
The lifecycle.
And the lifecycle. That's a BRR.
I didn't see that in the BRR list, okay, glad that's.
It's under.
Vehicle replacement.
Were added.
It's number twenty, it's one, it's number twenty-two. How does the city's vehicle and heavy equipment replacement program work? And what city vehicles and equipment are scheduled for replacement by the Public Works Department in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year? What is the current replacement cycle for each vehicle? And what is the cost to shorten the replacement cycle?
Okay, so since it did have fire in there, I didn't take that as.
Yeah, that's, that includes all apparatus.
All apparatus. And that's gonna include, as we talked about, a lifecycle for our fire apparatus and engines, ten-year, fifteen-year, twenty-year, get rid of.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, it doesn't, now, because reserve apparatus aren't part of our vehicle equipment inventory, it doesn't include that discussion. So if.
We're gonna need to have that discussion.
If we want to talk, but that, I think, well, we could probably provide you a BRR to talk about it.
Let, let, let's, let's do that, and here's the reason why. I see another twenty, two thousand one engine, engine sixty-five, station two reserve, right? That's now twenty, nineteen years old. And, okay, so it takes us, how long to get a new fire engine right now? Said, sands the whole Long Beach discussion.
Forty months, but you know what?
Forty months? That's, I am not gonna believe that, from what I'm hearing right now on the.
Chief Butler knows a guy.
Okay, I like that.
I'll tell you something, Chief Gailey just went, there are a couple of those rigs left that Long Beach didn't buy. Seagrave still has.
Want them back, Long Beach.
Yeah, but they're, they have, well.
Well, I'm not gonna get into that. Anyways, my point is this, it, it takes us two, three years at minimum, right? To buy an engine. So if we start buying it, starting the project today, right now, two to three years, I mean, really, you just said thirty, thirty-six months, so three years. Right? So we have a two thousand one engine here. That's in reserve. We should probably, that would be a twenty-one, that would be, that's twenty-one years old, plus twenty-four years old. A little bit old.
On a reserve basis, yeah.
On a reserve basis, a little bit old. Reserve being used, pressed in the service's frontline.
Because our, I think our vehicle replacement timeline is nineteen years here.
Right, that's a little bit.
So if you can.
It used to be seventeen, yeah, I mean, it's been elongated over the last.
So last question for you. What is, what did you not get that you'd like to get moving forward? Without, without, imagine like, you know, certain, a certain boss that's not here in the room.
No, 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 listen, I'm, yeah, I'm pretty plain-spoken, you get to know me about that. Very respectful and never disloyal. I would say I'd like to see some, and I've been talking to Mike about this, some form of implementation at the dispatch center that would help us with call processing and with pre-arrival instructions. Because our dispatch center is part of the reason we're a class-one department. So I'd say if we could somehow move towards, and I've talked to Mike, move towards enhancing our dispatch center. And then as we look at more and more fire prevention development, then we'll have to take a look and see, do we need to staff up our prevention office? So we have the Galleria, Egato, DHL, who knows what's gonna happen down the road. But I would say, one area that I'd say we would, down the road, like to see shored up would be the prevention side.
Civilian personnel, any more civilian personnel, like communications, you mentioned earlier, data analyst.
I have an analyst that I'm interviewing that has background in mathematics and analysis. I just think administrative staff, I mean, most of what we do is core, core operations. But I think this is a good start. And in this trial program, I come back and give you updates and say, we're, you know, if Randy's telling me that we're having a backlog in inspections, then that's a telltale.
Yeah, and we have the capacity, the one, that's one area that we do staff up through third-party contracting to help fill gaps in service. We don't necessarily have to bring on a full-time staff member to help support us in that regard. There are other options. As Pat mentioned, we're using a part-time model now, that's basically a, you know, it's deploying a number of part-timers to, underneath the full-time umbrella banner, to get things done. If we find a quality full-time plan checker that will hang with us on a fire inspection basis, we'll, we'll pick them up and, and we'll be able to accommodate service requests. The, the communications dispatcher conversation is an important one, and it's one that we'll likely need to aggress through our MOU conversations. Just, and that's why there's not something formally in, formally in the proposed budget to, specific to those changes.
So if we were to make this division chief, a fourth administrative division chief, not that I don't like you guys over there, division chiefs, but if, if we were to make, not make that permanent, or make it permanent, it would be how much of a, right now, we're just kind of.
Eighty-six thousand.
Additionally.
No, it, it, it's the same charge to make it permanent, this is a one-year expense, it would be that expense ongoing.
Right, so whatever the captain's position is plus eighty-six, and we would backfill the captain's position?
No, in this case, you're just upgrading the captain's position.
Getting rid of the captain's position.
Eliminate, eliminate the deputy fire marshal to upgrade it to a chief's level that can then handle emergency management. So it is, there's a trade-off, there's a trade-off.
And, and, and deputy fire marshal is not a field level, level personnel?
There, it's captain.
Field level personnel or non-field level, like administrative, forty hours, or, you know, four tens?
Forty hours.
Four tens, or something?
They're on four ten.
But not, but not stuck in a twelve-hour shift?
What's that?
Not, not stuck in a normal ABC shift?
No, they're not, no, he works a day job. Kurt Mahoney.
Yeah.
Kurt is our current deputy fire marshal. And you see him everywhere, doing all the training and all that.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you. Councilman Lozine, your hand up?
I do. I'm gonna keep this fairly brief, because we have other things to attend to. It's actually, no questions for you, Chief Butler, thank you very much. These are other questions related to decision packages. The first one is seventy-five, ongoing facility maintenance costs, parks. Why is it coming out of general fund versus, say, open space acquisition subdivision trust funds?
Because it's an ongoing maintenance activity. One of the Quimby obligations is that it's for capital investment, not for maintenance costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. It's only twenty-five thousand anyway. Another thing is, how much do we contribute to the school district on?
Well, that's, as you know, a loaded question, having been on the other side of that equation as well.
I have been on this, yeah.
You know, we, we do provide dedicated school resources officers, we do receive some reimbursement funding for that activity.
That's roughly what, a hundred thousand?
About a hundred thousand dollars a year, I think, in revenue we, we receive from the, the district. As you know, we fully cover the cost of, of crossing guards in our community. I think Joe could give you the fully loaded cost there, Joe, if you want to come up quickly.
How much, what about sewer fees, electricity fees, et cetera?
So electricity fees, I think, is a net neutral. What I could not give for you tonight, but I will follow up on it, is the value of the solid waste fees. Because trying to quantify that without contacting Athens and getting a cubic tonnage collection rate is, is, would be a true estimate. But it is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, there's no question. And then sewer fees are based on size and capacity, in the tens of thousands of dollars, theoretically. So we contribute quite a bit, we support our district, as I've said, the district and the success of the schools is ultimately our success through property taxes. But when it comes to specific services like crossing guards and the like, especially as we expand it, it is a big part of our budget, and it is, it is a big part of our proposed increases here. It's, it's an increasing cost for us.
Okay. Which brings me to crossing guards. How much are we spending on crossing guards?
I'm ready for you. Okay, so we have, it's, it's different, we have our city-employed crossing guards.
Okay.
And then we have the outside contract with all city management. And that's because we just haven't been able to recruit an adequate number of city-employed crossing guards, so that we can fill all the intersections. Right now, we're staffing twenty-five intersections.
Okay.
We probably have fifteen city-employed crossing guards right now.
Okay.
And then with the contract with all city management, I mean, ideally, we want to get nine, but they're not, they're not even able to fill the nine positions through the contracts, so we're averaging about six per day, and then we're using the rest with MSOs, cadets, other city employees that can fill in. But I, I did a little math problem here. So essentially, a crossing guard is four hours per day, hundred and eighty school days a year, which works out to seven hundred and twenty hours per year. That works out, and we, we just raised the rate for the crossing guards, so that we can be competitive in the marketplace.
Right.
So now we can go between twenty and twenty-five dollars an hour. So we can bring them in at twenty dollars an hour, and then as they, each year, they can get an increase up to twenty-five dollars an hour maximum. So the average right now is about twenty-three dollars an hour, based on how many years people have when we, when we made the adjustment. So it works out to about sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars per city-employed crossing guard per year, if they show up for every shift, because there's.
There's twenty, there's twenty, how many?
Well, there's twenty-five intersections.
Okay.
But we're only, we only have about fifteen of those right now. And that's if they show up for every shift, because they're part-time employees, so if they're not here, we're not expending those funds. So if we were to have no outside contract and fill all twenty-five intersections with city-employed crossing guards, it would be four hundred and fourteen thousand, roughly. That number's gonna go up, down a little bit, depending on if we bring in new employees, or if people stick with us for a long time and get raises. So decision package forty-five adds fifty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars to our existing budget of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which would bring our total part-time budget for the crossing guard program to just over two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's part-time.
Yeah, all of our crossing guards are part-time. Except for.
But the contractual services.
Right, so, and what we did was, we tried to figure out this year, and really put some effort into, how much are we actually spending based on what the company can provide us? So we didn't have an inflated number with funding that we weren't gonna spend. So what we were able to do is reduce the decision package forty-seven down to a hundred and five thousand dollars. And that would also include a carryover of twenty to thirty thousand dollars from the current fiscal year from all city management that we don't think we're gonna spend, because they haven't been able to provide all the services that were contracted.
Right.
So if we took, if we take the two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, it would be our total budget with the approval of decision package forty-five, and then factor in the contract amount for decision package forty-seven, it would bring our total to about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So we'd, we'd still be right around there. The diff, the thing to keep in, in mind is that the crossing guard company charges us, they're raising the rates. So they're gonna be thirty-two dollars and eighty cents per hour per crossing guard, where when we hire people here as employees, we're paying them twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour, because we don't have the administration costs and everything else that this company is charging us. So ideally, and I think we're on the right track, because we are seeing an increase in applicants for crossing guards, but it takes time to process the applications, do the backgrounds, get people in. And sometimes, you know, we bring in three and we lose one, so we only actually met two. So I think that with this structure here, we're gonna be able to staff all twenty-five intersections.
Right.
Going forward for the next school year. And we are a little bit light, likely, with the budget, but I think that that's okay, because when we look at bringing people in, we'll have cost savings moving forward with the contract. And if we have to use a part-time MSO or a cadet to fill a spot as needed, that will be acceptable based on where I think we're gonna be a year from now. And it still prevents us from having to use full-time code enforcement, full-time MSOs that are out there doing parking enforcement, and most importantly, the police officers that we need to keep available to respond to emergency calls for service.
So you would say then roughly three, three hundred and seventy thousand, give or take, is basically what we're spending on crossing guards annually?
Right, so the way that I factored it in was that if, if decision package forty-five is approved, that would be two hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-six in the general fund for part-time crossing guards. If decision package forty-seven is approved, that would add an additional hundred and five thousand dollars that we would apply to a contract with all city management. And considering the carryover from the existing fiscal year, which is estimated to be twenty and thirty thousand, can't quite give you a hard number, because the school year's not over yet, I'll put that number at three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. And that would be with us filling nineteen of the twenty-five intersections.
Yes.
Fifteen with the current employees that we have, we're trying to hire more, I'll make up the difference with my existing staffing. And then six of those positions through the contract at all city management, so that we would fill all twenty-five positions year-round.
Okay. All right, so I want the public to know what's involved here. It's a lot of money. There's no doubt. Those of you who know me, know I dedicated eighty years of my life to making sure our schools are great. A lot of us are huge fans of our school district. I sent my kids to the school district, they've gone through, one's gone through, the other one is almost through. I would think that we should consider asking the school district for some type of contribution for this, because we do provide a school resource officer that they do reimburse. We provide sewer, we provide waste, solid waste, we provide a number of things that we, and probably things I'm not even thinking of.
There, there's, it's a, it's, it's an extended list. We, we support them in some, some areas with mowing and.
Right.
Ball fields, we do other things.
And, you know, we should, you know, we need to, we need to take care of our schools. But we also need help, because this is a lot of money. This is a lot of money, there were almost four hundred thousand dollars we're dedicating just to crossing guards. Now, I'm not saying we should pull them, because they're incredibly important, but I also think that we shouldn't be the one, just the only ones carrying the burden for the increased costs that we're running into, and the difficulties we're running into in terms of, of hiring folks.
And it might make sense for us to provide you a BRR on this topic, because the, the other factor here is, our crossing guard expenses, to Joe's point, have been growing almost exponentially in the last few years. It had become very difficult to hire and, and incentivize people to come on board, and we had been trying and throwing money at this problem, continuing to throw money at this problem, so.
Just why we were a little bit hesitant last year, because of the issues we're having.
Which is why we did one-time funds and one-time funds, and the reason this year you're seeing us propose this on, at least in one of the areas, on a more of an ongoing basis, because this is the new reality. If we're gonna deliver this service to the community, this is the cost, and it's grown.
And we do provide the after-school program, which is a tremendous value. I know as a parent, I took advantage of it, and sent my kids there over to CDC.
It is the affordable cost option, yeah.
So we do a lot of great things for the school district, rightfully so, but I also think that the school district also has to help us, get us over the finish line, because it's incredibly expensive, it, it impacts our budget every year. There are things that we don't do, because we have to fund for crossing guards.
It would be challenging to add additional crossing guard positions this year, based on where we're at with our staffing and needing to hire more, backfilling with existing employees, and the fact that we're limited with the contract. We have talked to, I have personally met with superintendent to talk about crossing guards, and even discussed programs such as a community crossing guard program, where the PTA got involved, and actually had to have, had asked parents to be involved.
Right.
As crossing guards, and they weren't interested.
No one signed up.
Right. They weren't interested, but, but part of the thing was, when the school district was involved with discussing crossing guards, now they wanted to have more of an input on where the crossing guards are placed, in close proximity of the schools. We have a detailed analysis that we conduct through our traffic unit, that's based on that's based on pedestrian traffic, vehicle traffic, traffic signals, and that's how we determine. We get a lot of inquiries about, we need a crossing guard at this intersection. We look at them all. A lot of them don't warrant a crossing guard.
Yeah.
Does it warrant some sort of attention? Absolutely. But we can't just put a crossing guard at every single intersection where somebody asks for one. And as soon as we start considering funding from outside resources, that could be a factor as well.
And before any, again, before anybody goes off the deep end and says, "We're trying to pull crossing guards", that's not the case here. We're just asking the school district to perhaps consider helping us with this, because it is, it's, it's a hit on our budget. It is.
Yeah, and it's, it's a growing, growing cost, and it's worth recognizing and acknowledging that we are subsidizing it at a greater rate every year, and it's gone up significantly in the last three years in particular.
Right, it has. Thanks, Chief. I appreciate it.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Sure.
I think that's a great idea to get a BRR on it and figure out, you know, our real costs on it. And we had a discussion before about possibly using school sites for park open spaces, and the school district had, you know, that was in negotiation with them. This is a good point to bring up when we do talk about that, that we do share resources and help out in ways, and they can help us with their open space.
Agreed, 100%.
I agree too.
This is a symbiotic relationship. We work with each other, right?
Symbiotic indeed, and I had a BRR and still do on that very topic, so...
So, one quick thing, and, and, because I know we have to move, but this is more directed to both of you guys. So this is, Nils and I, our seventh budget. The one thing I've learned is, if something is of importance to you in your district, consider, even if it's not going to be carried out this year, maybe consider funding it. And by that, I mean something like, let's say, a park, something in a park, like I funded a swing set in Encinita Circle. If it's some blocks that need love, consider funding it. It's up to you how you want to do it. But even if it's not going to be executed this year, the appropriation is important, because you never know what's going to happen next year. You never know what, you know, future lies with the economy. Consider funding it. Not funding it to the extent that Mr. Obaji funds it. His first year. I'm kidding him.
Actually, you need to fund it more, because it's going to be underfunded by the time it comes to appropriations.
You know, you should talk to him. He's very effective. And rightfully so. He's done a lot for his district. It's important that his district gets a lot of love, because it hasn't over the years. So that's just a word of advice. You know, you guys can take it as you wish. Think about two, three years down the line, not just this year. Hey, what streets are really bad? What alleyways are really bad? Those are the things that I think people will notice that you got done. And again, the appropriation is what's important. The carryover funds can happen a year or two down the road, so... Thank you. Appreciate it. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I don't see any more. You got a question?
Yep. First, thank you, Councilmember Lowenstein, first for making our schools great again, and also for the acknowledgement.
Is that really the acronym?
It's not, it's not because I'm effective, it's because District 4 is the dense, most dense district in the entire city, and has Artisia Boulevard Grand Avenue that everybody drives through. So we need love, because we get, you know, we get run through quite a lot.
And you're making, you're making Artisia Boulevard great again.
I will, one day, hopefully. One day. One can only hope. So I did actually want to preempt a fight for later on. So just like you want to, Councilmember Lowenstein, recover money from the school district so that we can fund crossing guards, that BRR on the $300, $313 fee is precisely that relative to the fire department. So Mayor Protem Narenheim, when you are, it is tomfoolery to take the anecdotal evidence of one person on the beach who needed paramedic service against his will and use that as a basis to undermine a decision package that stands to recover $900,000 in costs, while in the next breath, you're looking at replacing million-dollar vehicles for the fire department. So I appreciate the spirit that, you know, in which you're being judicious about what charges are passed on to the residents, but we are, we cannot go for a top-notch fire department and also not seek to recover the cost of carrying forward that fire department.
So on that note, thank you, sir. Can you include in the BRR how many 911-generated calls or come from the lifeguards to the harbor and the beaches and the pier?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. It's not just one time.
Yeah, we are going to, we'll follow up with an EMS fee BRR, specific to examples from other cities, so we have a little better history on collection and compassion clause, and we'll add some detail on calls for service.
But just clarifying, somebody's going to get perhaps the EMS fee and an ambulance fee.
And if they have to transport it...
They'll get an ambulance fee regardless.
Yeah. And these agents, and these agencies, I mean, and that's happening in most of these communities, yeah.
Yeah.
And we know that Redondo Beach is the most welcoming to all of Los Angeles County in the world, so the likelihood of that person being a Redondoin who's getting the bill is probably very low, so...
Like, in fact, some communities only assess non-residents. Interesting.
Yeah.
Interesting. I want to, yeah.
Not sure how that's going to work out in our city, but...
Yeah, it gets, yeah.
I'm just not going to touch that.
On the note of the question I was posed to the chief, or what else would he want? He did say, you know, he'd like to enhance our dispatch center as far as it pertains to fire calls, so maybe we can get a BRR on what would the cost of enhancing fire dispatch be?
Yeah, what it is, is a change in classification and compensation for our dispatchers and the level of training that they receive and the expectation for their level of service. And that is something we're going to have to address through an MOU change and a meet-and-confer process. I'm sure it's a welcome conversation that the association will have, but it will require adjustments there. So we can, we can provide you a BRR on the cost of what we perceive those upgrades to be. I was sort of leaving that in the general $1.8 million in our decision package across the board for more of a meet-and-confer effort, but we can, we could definitely itemize dispatch in that regard.
Cool, thank you. That's it.
All right, any other questions on the dais? Okay. I actually have a non-fire question. A couple items here. I was going over our contracts for our city attorney here, and Hermosa Prosecution Services hasn't been updated since 2014. We're still at $175 an hour. It's now, what, eight years later, nine years later? Are we going to look at, what's the contract on that and looking at increasing that bill, hourly wage?
So I've had conversations with previous city managers, and I'm certainly fine with that. It would be more of a conversation with our city manager and his counterpart in Hermosa. So we, we responded to an RFP right after the council put on strategic plan, not only looking to outsource, but looking how we can rent out the services. And it would be more of a conversation from them as to what they may want to see if they would be willing to pay more for the service.
Well, willing.
Well, willing to. The alternate is to go out and do another RFP.
For them. They would do an RFP, not us.
You know, our council can always, under the contract, I think it's a 60-day, either party can terminate the contracts. I'm ambivalent. I think it improves public safety in our area. I got the recent stats, and our office prosecutes only almost as many cases as misdemeanor cases as the much bigger city of Torrance and the DA's office combined. And we prosecute twice as many as Inglewood and twice as many as Hawthorne. And that is because of our commitment, all of our commitments to quality of life. And we prosecute cases before they become more serious ones. So I do think it helps us in that we bring that spirit to a neighboring city that frankly didn't have it prior to us being hired. So the benefit is, is both in public safety. Clearly, I would agree that after nine years, it might be time to...
Revisit the conversation to Councilmember Lowenstein.
But I think that would be more direction to...
All right.
The city manager can have the conversation.
Mr. City Manager.
Look at the Hermosa contract.
We get $200,000 per year from Hermosa for doing their prosecution. And we signed up for it. We didn't add anyone else. We, what we did was increase efficiency. So I went to the, not only went to the council and said, "Hey, we want to make this bid. Is this okay with you"? I made certain it more than, it covered our costs. It gave us, you know, contributions to our core services. But what we did was, we were prosecuting in one division. They were prosecuting in another. Both of us were sharing a caseload with a DA's office. And so I asked the court, "If we got it, will you mind moving the DA's into one courtroom, and we can staff the other"? And so we have an arraignment courtroom we cover. We have our pre-trial and motions calendar we cover, and then we go wherever trials are set. So we didn't have to add any additional attorneys. It basically meant that instead of Hermosa having downtime while the DA's calendar will call and us having downtime, I thought it was a creative way to cover some of our ongoing costs. Clearly, after nine years, it might be prudent to request.
So, Mr. City Manager.
I'd never mind dialing for dollars. But, so...
And?
We could ask. I, I think it's a fair question as a policy man. I mean, Mike and I have had some conversations in this regard. Is it, is it worth, you know, is it worth the revenue we collect? It's helpful, I think, in some respects. Is it worth $200,000? I mean, you could do a value-based analysis and come to the conclusion that we should be receiving more for the work that we do and spend. But we obviously have a contract that we honor and operate under. I'm happy...
And if I may, to be clear, I had his, the conversations with his predecessor. Mostly I've had fleeting conversations, and the problem was, when we were, when he was going to go down that path, COVID hit, and, you know, just sort of changed the, the, it changed everything for everybody, so... Just to be clear.
Yeah, yeah. And I think Suja and I have not specifically talked about this, particularly this service, but we have had conversations about other, you know, cost share arrangements and, you know, they might, Hermosa might be willing to pay us more for the value of the service. And theoretically, the council could choose to...
It seems like it was a good deal back then. It was a good deal back then. I wouldn't imagine what kind of deal it is. I mean, to Councilmember Lowenstein's point, we are subsidizing that cost, that value, same as the school district and other locations. So if we're going to be charging and implementing a new $313 fee to our residents for something that we should be providing, that we are providing for free, maybe we should start having that conversation. Would you like a BRR on that? Do you want to talk to them about that? Is that more of an after-action budget request?
Probably, probably an after-action, and I don't think we can anticipate in the adopted budget a change there, but we can certainly try and make that a kind of a work item.
And I will say, it wouldn't change our staffing.
Right.
If we didn't do that. So that's the one thing that's not compelling. It's not like, when we had the conversation about Manhattan Beach, there we would have to hire a new person to do that. And there it would be very important to make certain that they were paying us to make it worthwhile. Our expenses would stay the same. We'd just have $200,000 less. Now, on the other hand, we've added homeless court services. They've added hosting it, you know, four months a year. So I, I think there are compelling reasons to do that.
Okay. Yeah, real quick, and we'll go to public.
I think that's a great point that you make, and let's not forget that a couple of years back, if not last year, we approved an increase to the deputy city attorney's pay.
Yep.
And so that's just another aspect of cost recovery.
Yep.
Associated with them working long hours and the like, so...
Okay, so we're going to move on to public comment. Sorry for taking so long. As you tell, this is, we're busy. First one up is Ron Morocco. I believe he has left. If he returns, he is first up as soon as he walks in. So if you're Morocco, if you are there, Mr. Morocco, feel free to zoom in if you'd like, watching the ether. You can sign up. The city clerk's office will take care of you. After that is Lena Corio. You are next. Double duty. I like that.
All right. Yeah, I got two chances to speak this time, so... Okay, so hi there again. Lena Corio, president with RBPSA. So I wanted to come up to, on behalf of the miscellaneous groups, I just wanted to express our support of the decision packages related to, basically, you know, employee staffing. The, we're encouraged to see that this time around, there's recognition that there have been employees working out of class for quite some time. And the decision package, packages do recognize that those, those issues need to be, to be rectified. So we're fully supportive of those decision packages that support the reclassifications, as well as decision package number 14 for future employee compensations. This is the first time in many years we've actually seen money set aside during the budget process for future negotiations. Usually what ends up happening is we go into negotiations and the money is seen as an afterthought. And they find, you know, it's found through like some one-time funding and other funds. So we're really encouraged and we, you know, we're grateful for that consideration. I did just want to illustrate though one point. In terms of the general fund starting balance, that's noted, it's noted on page two of the admin report, just over 2.4 million. Just wanted to put a little bit of employee perspective on that. We actually see that as that, that balance really being because of the deflated employee salaries. So if the city is not paying employees in keeping with the compensation of the going rate of the market, that's where that savings is coming from. So what we would argue is that for decision package 14, rather than the 8.1 million, we really feel it should be the 2.4 million starting general fund balance, is what decision package 14 should really, should really reflect. But otherwise, we're generally supportive in how everything else has been presented, so, and we thank you.
Ms. Corio, you said earlier that we'd gotten raises, and I haven't seen a raise actually in my city salary, so could you tell me a little bit more about that?
So I believe on, last October, so I, it gets, city council, I believe, gets like a stipend, right? A monthly stipend, right?
No, actually considered salary.
Okay, or salary, right?
$927, it's just $5.43 an hour.
Yes, we get paid $5 an hour. These two...
These two.
Got a little more money now that they started, but it's not a raise, because they never were getting paid anything beforehand anyhow. But we're still getting paid $5 an hour, so can you please advocate for us?
Because you're actually very effective.
No, and I'm fully supportive of that, but, you know, I'd be advocating for our employees as much as I would advocate for you guys. No, absolutely. You got, you're, that stipend hadn't been raised since, what, 2008? You know, so it's not a non-support of that. It's, it's a support of both, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, next up. Anyone else want to come out and speak to this? It's open mic. I don't have any more cards. Next up will be Zoom, so get your Zoom fingers ready, if no one else wants to speak.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Protem staff. Eugene Solomon speaking for myself tonight. When you were talking about, I think it was decision package four with regard to the perishables in the fire department, just take note or think about how medical billing works. So that's not going to be just the event where the paramedics show up. That's probably part of a much larger event that's taking place, that might include transport, that might include care at an urgent care, likely a hospital, an emergency room, and so on. And when the medical billing comes through for that, all of the different items that you've been visited upon that day, all different people that saw you, all the different medical treatments that were provided to you, all the medications, examinations, whatever it is, are going to be assigned a code and broken down to the insurance company and billed to your insurance company by each of those departments, whether it be RB Fire Department, whether it be the transport service, the ambulance service, and down the line. That will be presented to your insurance company. Then your insurance company will send you something called an explanation of benefits, and it's a laundry list of all the different things that happened to you this day. And then it will show what was charged by the provider, what was char, what was covered by your insurance, what is not covered by your insurance, and what you owe. So try not to, please, look at it as an isolated item. It's part of a larger scale, and it will not be something that sticks out, let's say, to the insurance company or the individual resident or person who was provided those services, whether they were resident or not. It's part of a larger picture of that. And I think the compassion clause component of it is that if you didn't have insurance, or you had a plan that was a $10,000 deductible, and then all of that falls to you, rather than being compensated by the insurance company, that that's the out, for lack of a better way of putting it, for that person who may not have the resources because they had to pay a lot of big deductible, or they weren't able to afford insurance, or their insurance didn't cover that part of the service. So that's where I think the compassion clause comes in, and it's part of a bigger picture. Please don't look at it as an isolated component of just that, oh, they're just going to get a bill for $300. That's likely not how it's going to work. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else in person would like to come down and speak? All right, onwards to Zoom.
Okay, Sheila Lamb. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem Narenheim and Councilmember Sheila Lamb, District 4. Thank you for this evening's presentation and for giving ample time for residents to comment on this year's budget. The presentations tonight were very informative and valuable. My comments will focus on decision package 28 and a separate request for additional funding. I support decision package 28. The ongoing actions of the California State Government to take away the power of Redondo Beach to control land development within our boundaries has put an extra burden on Redondo Beach planning staff. Redondo Beach planning staff. As a member of the Planning Commission, this, these additional mandates have come to our attention on a number of occasions. I support the addition of a senior planner position to assist the director to, to address these legislative mandates. In addition, in recent conversations with residents, there has been an expressed concern about inefficiencies within the Building and Safety Division of the Community Development Department. I understand that there has been an awareness of broad inefficiencies within this division and, and, and those inefficiencies have been addressed with remedies such as purchasing new permitting software to better regulate and streamline the permitting process. However, these recent conversations with residents have focused more on inefficiencies related to the ability of the division to review and enforce safety codes, which ensure contractors follow state and local laws. These types of inefficiencies unnecessarily increase the city's risk for litigation, litigation as well as pose safety issues for residents. I request that this 2324 budget include additional funding for an operational audit of the Building and Safety Division to give the council and city manager a clear assessment of the full range of operational inefficiencies that prevent this division from operating at the highest level. I believe that this request for additional funding satisfactorily beats two criteria set forth by the city manager for decision package inclusion, inclusion in the budget. Criteria four, would it protect the health and safety and quality of life of the public? And criteria five, would the decision package improve organizational efficiency or effectiveness? I believe this request would meet both of those criteria. Again, I ask for your consideration of this additional funding for the Building and Safety Division audit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for Zoom. And for ecomments, we have one support, that's it.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to comment in this in person before we close this up for the evening and then continue?
Oh geez, Louise, you didn't even finish.
Close up for this evening and then continue this for the first meeting in June, our normal meeting in June, it'll be June 6. Anyone else? All right, is there a motion? Yeah?
Just a comment, I really appreciate how the budget was bookmarked, if that was you missed.
Well, actually, my bookmarks didn't work. It's on the left-hand side, but you click on it, it doesn't click. They're not clickable.
I clicked on one and it worked.
That may be user error.
I wouldn't be surprised.
Nicely said.
We're going to allocate to Protem.
We will double check to make sure.
The CIP. The CIP is clickable. I made my own clickable thing.
We will allocate to make sure those things work.
I don't know computers that well, but.
Yeah, let's. We'll check. Before we continue though, can I make sure I've got a good complete list of BRR follow-ups? Because I know there might be some others that you want to ask.
I did have a few, and now it'd be an appropriate time. Yeah, yeah.
Go for it, okay.
Oh, how's it going with the follow-ups? So should we do it now?
Yeah, let's do it now. Budget do it now.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Barron, we'll go through the list.
Backwards.
Yes.
Okay. A BRR regarding the process and cost to identify and potentially secure locations for a new modular fire station at the north end of Redondo Beach.
You got that.
So what we'll do with that is I'll expand the existing BRR, speaking to the cost of the fire station to include the process to identify the location as part of that effort.
Right, the location and the potential cost of acquisition.
Yep.
Thank you. A BRR. If you're ready there, I know you're.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Okay. On the estimated revenues that would be generated by taxing existing cannabis delivery to Redondo Beach, including the methods of foreign enforcement and collection of those taxes, and the administrative steps, costs, and timeline required to begin doing that.
So for, for collecting existing cannabis delivery, I think we have, I think we did kick that around in our initial ordinance conversations, but we can, and then the cost, so you're also looking for potential costs to enforce and, and ensure collection?
Yes. And, and the timeline as to when we may be able to begin doing that. All right. A BRR regarding the process to identify and the price to potentially acquire by lease or for ownership, either on our own or in partnership with another municipality. A vacant or otherwise suitable lot in another city in Spa 8, preferably an industrial area, for additional pallet shelters or for other temporary homeless-related uses.
Okay, and what I would ask, these are well, well crafted, so it would be helpful if you also follow up with an email, if you're willing to do it.
I will do that.
With each of these BRRs, so I don't miss anything.
I will do that. I do have a few more, I'll keep going. This one relates in part to DP 75, which is the baseball fields maintenance. All right, and specifically, this would apply to Anderson Park in District 5, Perry Park in District 4, and Dominguez Park in District 3. These are fields, just quick background, that Redondo Beach Little League uses all year round, spring, summer, fall. Children as young as five, six, seven, as old as 16. And in particular, the cost to, a BRR for the cost to renovate the bullpen warm-up areas, that would be the pitching and catching areas. There's two at Perry Park, there's one at Anderson, and there's one at Dominguez. They are almost in complete disrepair. And they are.
Is that including fencing and, and mounding and netting inside the?
So yeah, so it wouldn't be the fencing, it would be the bullpen, not the batting cages, but the bullpen areas which are on, at Perry Park, there's one in the left field, one in right field.
Okay, so no fencing, just cost for regrading and mounding, basically?
Grading, mounding, and then the catcher's area as well. The one at Anderson is along the first, third baseline, the one at Dominguez, the first baseline. And, and those are essential for the, the children to warm up on prior to coming out to pitch. Perry, yeah, there's two at Perry, you're correct.
So two at Anderson, two at Perry, one at Dominguez, by your count?
Two at Perry, one at Anderson, one at Dominguez.
One, okay.
Thank you. And at Dominguez Park, the home plate area is completely eroded, that whole area, and it slopes down so that children who are running to first base are actually running up a hill.
That, yeah, that has to do with the settling of the landfill.
Yeah, so whatever, if we could assess that as part of the.
It's good training.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's obstacle course edition.
It's a pitcher's park.
Yeah, yeah, indeed.
So that's regrading the full field at Dominguez.
Yeah, and it's mostly that area closest to home plate.
Which, based on settlement, probably triggers a more expansive, but we can cover that in the BRR.
Okay.
And this is the main ball field at Dominguez?
Dominguez, thank you, the main ball field, the large ball field. A BRR along the same lines, continuing, the deferred maintenance and repairs at the bathroom at Perry Park snack bar, if any.
Yeah.
Getting more and more use with the skate park as well, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
If you, I mean, rather than him writing these down.
Yes.
If you can just speak them out loud so that we all know what you, what you're getting.
Speak them out loud, send them and move on.
And then, yeah, so that way he doesn't have to read them.
Send them the details, yeah.
Does that make sense, Mr. Wazowski?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's just, I mean, I'm taking short notes anyway, so I'll need the detail.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that, I'll go, I'll go much faster. BRR to conduct all deferred maintenance repairs and improvements to Dale Page Park bathrooms. BRR to fix the state plunging dip in the street on the west part of the intersection of Ruland and McKay. I have two BRRs related to the Redondo Beach Unified School District, which we discussed earlier this evening. The first one is a BRR on obtaining free and reduced rate access during the summer months to the Redondo Beach Unified School District athletic fields for city resident use, individual or organized use like AYSO in particular. Next is a BRR for Redondo Beach Unified to provide Little League access to the gate on the west side of the Anderson Park Field, which is locked and requires, and I've heard this from residents, requires people to walk all the way around to get onto that field.
Tell me, tell me the site, one more.
What's that?
What's the site? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh yeah, Anderson Park, the Lincoln Elementary School.
Got it, Lincoln Access.
Baseball field, it's, it's access, there's already access, but that gate's locked and, and senior citizens and those who are less ambulatory have difficulty doing the long walk. All right, I have two items that may be covered by existing or pending BRRs. The first is a BRR for charging stations at the SCE right-of-way on Artesia Boulevard, where we, the city has a.
Declined, they declined to do that.
Well, we, we had a discussion with Diane Forte and it seemed like, no?
I had specifically asked Luke Schmutz about it.
Yes.
And putting them, but basically he said, they said, no, they don't want pejorative stations there. The SCE does not, will not do that.
Okay.
Power lines, right?
It would, it would, well, it would be not directly under the power lines, it'd be less than 20 feet below the power lines or 10.
Yeah, I know, they said no.
Is it no?
They said no, yeah.
So no, okay. YMC lunch program for Perry Park Senior Center, do we have that on a BRR?
Yeah, that's coming.
Okay.
Yep.
And I, I have a, one more BRR that, speaking with the mayor on. I don't know if our city attorney wants to articulate that on, on my behalf, if you have that available, if.
This is the cost for preemptive.
Well, it's, I want to get the bill correct. There's a bill that will undermine the Coastal Act and.
SB 423?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to quote it correctly, it's, yeah, SB 423, and it would be, if it gets approved, it will circumvent the voter-approved Coastal Act. And so you may want to allocate some money so that we can, we can, you know, and, and I'll make if, I'll contact some other coastal cities. And again, it, the cost will go down the more coastal cities that join in that. So given that BRR request, I'll start making some phone calls on Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Protem and the city manager.
All right, Mr. Wazowski, Councilmember Wazowski.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, so one of them, I don't know if you can light me up, I'm not sure this is going to work, I think I left my ACMI cord to be, please, Madam Clerk. Is that showing anything? Should, yes, here we go, I think. All right. So I'd like a BRR on the cost of repainting or muralizing the retaining walls, so both actually, the, the retaining walls on Grant Avenue between Inglewood and Kingsdale, under where the train bridge is, or near, you see these, the retaining walls right here. And they seem like a great place to put either some art or just paint in a uniform way, though. I do, I do see that there's some seemingly water intrusion here that could be an issue or such to a uniform look. All right, another one is to add a, in this, in this capital improvement project, I'm not sure if it's funded or not, but in any event, a BRR to add a pollinator fountain at this, at the civic center. And, and, and by the way, I'm not thinking of anything super expensive or glamorous. If you look at, if you just Google Basalt Rock Fountain, you see the images of this stuff, and this is like between 400 and $2,000 for just, you know, a freshwater source that allows pollinators to pollinate. In addition, I'd like a third BRR on muralizing this face of the transit center, they discussed this at the Art Commission. It's got a lot of vertical, vertical kind of design to it. That could be a beautiful outward-facing art space, and we could even use the money we got for art at the transit center rather than even the John Parsons fund.
What direction is that facing, is that?
That's facing, that's on Kingsdale facing.
East. That's the east direction.
Yeah. And the Art Commission also discussed ground art at the transit center. And since we have almost a million dollars in our art fund, I'd like to get a BRR on how much ground art would be at the transit center. Ground art would be specified by, by Commissioner Lappin, just on the sidewalk in the transit center where people are walking, not where the buses are rolling over. Just an estimate, I suppose, of how much to allocate. Another thing I want a BRR for, please, is at the south, sorry, the southeast corner of Inglewood and Grant Avenue, there's going to be a portion that we're in the midst of acquiring for metro purposes, but there's a portion of that triangle lot that the city owns. And that would be a great place to put a vertical garden of sorts that cascades up, native garden with pollinator fountain, to block view of the cemetery there and just be a beautiful place to pass by as you drive by, not like a walk-up place. But that, so I'd like a BRR on vertical landscaping like that graduated, it's not, don't get the idea from the succulents, I'm not going for succulents, going for ideally native plants and the like. And let me double check my list, but I, oh, also for the Building and Safety Department audit called for by Commissioner Lamb, she's brought up, in, in a private conversation with me, she brought up a potential liability the city could be facing based on an oversight in building and safety. So I'd just like to see what that would cost to get an outside person, take a look at our processes and systems there. That's it, the mayor did want to request a, you know, increasing trash cleanup at the Veteran, Veterans Park. I know there's noticing requirements associated with personal property that's left behind there, so if we get a BRR on that, I'd be appreciative.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to him about it a little bit.
And that's it for me, thank you. I can also email you.
All right, Councilmember Kelly.
Oh, sorry, sorry, last one, last one. This isn't part of the ACAP. A BRR for the cost of banner signs along Artesia Boulevard or the ACAP region, you know, where you could advertise beach life coming soon, or Memorial Day event, or any, any private or public person could essentially advertise through the city on those banner That would change the look of this, of the Boulevard, that's it.
If that is in alliance with our flag or our signage ordinance, right?
So there's sort of two costs.
That may be something we're addressing later with your, your.
Flag policy.
Flag policy, and so.
And it's a two-step process, you've got the hardware at the streetlights, and then you've got the ongoing marketing costs associated with advertising and that kind of a thing.
The hardware with the street.
Streetlight, you need hardware to.
Streetlight, you need hardware to put the pennants up and then.
Then light it up.
And then you hang the banners.
Light it up.
Well, you don't, yeah, I mean, you got to hang the banners. You got to install the brackets to hang the banners.
Right.
And then you got to pay somebody to create and hang the banners on a periodic basis, depending on what messaging we provide.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying we're going to budget fund it this year, but it's part of our A cap and we've got to take baby steps towards accomplishing that goal. So let's just get an idea of what that's going to cost. Maybe on a, maybe not on the whole stretch of Artesia Boulevard, but at least where we want to concentrate the restaurant nodes in the A cap. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, I have a couple. I will email you, but I'll just say them out here. We have one for Franklin Park already. I just want to make sure that we're including for the play structure, that it's an all abilities play structure with maybe some sensory den type of thing, also including signage for non-verbal children and increased regular cleaning for immunocompromised children.
Wait, say that last one, that last part.
The last one would be like increased regular cleaning for immunocompromised, immunocompromised.
Okay. To that particular equipment.
Just, yeah, so if it was on a schedule, then that could be advertised to those kinds of parents that this would be the best time for those kids to come play at that structure. The other one would be, I talked to Elizabeth about this, a quote from a grant writer to complete the application for the closed shooting range that's due at the end of June. Third one is complete the proposed and approved conceptual plan for the Ito family open space and the dedication. And the last one, we may already have it, so just correct me if I'm wrong. The senior center at Perry Park, what work and costs are necessary to get it up and running for that senior lunch, hot lunch program through.
Yeah, that one's, that's in the B R R list.
That's it for me.
And go back to, if you wouldn't mind, the Ito.
Yeah.
Ito request.
The Ito family open space. There's been a conceptual plan that was approved by Parks and Rec, historical and public arts.
And I think there's a plaque that's on order for installation, yeah.
So to actually complete all of that and do the dedication.
Okay, let me, so let me make sure, if there's outstanding costs that have not been funded, it might just be a matter of timing and install. I don't know if there's actually additional money needed. I'll report back. Maybe I'll rephrase it to status of that project and any additional costs.
That's it for me.
Yep.
If you can email those to him as well.
Oh, it's there.
Perfect, thank you. All right, Councilmember Longsen.
I have 20. No, I'm just kidding. I actually sent mine to Ted and Andy. If you want me to forward it to you, I can do it as well.
Please, yeah.
Okay, just have one, and that is just an updated cost on a regional skate park.
Updated cost on.
Regional?
Yeah, remember how we, there's three different levels, there's skate spot, skate park, regional park.
For where?
I'm not going to say where, because we don't know yet, but it was 900,000 last time I checked. This was like four years ago. Just want an updated cost.
Regional skate park costs.
Yep.
You've got two great ones right now.
Yeah, I know. This is for long term. This isn't for probably this year, but long term. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to update the apparatus lifecycle in the Budget Response Report, right, Public 24? And then lifecycle.
Yeah, that's going to be part of that.
For the clarification. And as per the speaker, the fire buildings as well. We have, I think, B R R number one, I want to say, with all the buildings, but I want to say.
Yeah, we have, I think, costs to, well, we have a, we have a capital project recommendation for $250,000 to bring somebody on to, or not $250,000, for, I think, $50,000 to do a, provide a list of options and costs for upgrades to our various facilities.
So that includes the fire, the two fire stations, well, three fire stations, and then City Hall?
It does. Let me just make sure there wasn't also a separate B R R. I think there is a separate B R R. So what we would probably do is, the B R R could be phrased as what is going to be included in the scope of work in the capital project for civic facility, fire facility, upgrades and options.
Yeah, and if you can include as well as, when you say upgrade or repair, does that mean maintenance, upgrade and maintenance, so conversion of the current facilities to make them more, well, actual palatable?
No, it's, it's uprange. So it's like, what's, what's a basic repair effort look like?
Right.
Order magnitude, what's a reconstruction effort look like, order magnitude, kind of from sort of basic repairs to full-on new construction is, but we can expand on that in the B R R.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. All right, no more Zoom members. Anyone, public want to speak one last time? Is there a motion to continue the public hearing?
We did it.
Did we? Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, onwards to the next item, item L two, which is our speed and traffic decreasing. Is there, we did ex parte for this already. Is there a motion to open up a public hearing for item L two?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. All right, moving right along at 10:15 tonight.
Mayor Protem waiting on us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's Saman, Public Works Director, and with me is our city engineer, Andy Wenji. He's going to go ahead and present on this item. I think this is a very good news item, something that you know we need to do as far as speed surveys for the police department to be able to do electronic enforcement with their equipment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andy and he'll share the good news.
Thank you, Ted. The good news is this won't cost you a dime tonight, so.
Awesome. Approved.
How many complaints are we going to get?
For the record, Andy Wenji, city engineer, good evening, everyone. This item is to approve the engineering and traffic studies performed in support of speed limit enforcement for 36 street segments and to introduce for first reading an ordinance modification to modify the speed limits on five of those street segments. Just a little background, the California Vehicle Code establishes speed limit, preemphasious speed limits of 25 miles an hour for residential and business districts and 15 miles per hour for alleys. The C V C also allows local jurisdictions to establish by ordinance different speed limits to facilitate the orderly movement of traffic that is reasonable and safe. City of Redondo Beach has identified 50 such segments in its code summarized by the speed zones on the slide. These limits must be supported by technical analysis known as an engineering and traffic survey or an E N T survey, which must be refreshed from time to time. The C V C requires the use of the E N T survey to prevent an arbitrary establishment and enforcement of speed limits by electronic means, also known as the speed trap. The E N T survey evaluates collision history and calculates an accident rate, collects data in the form of spot speed measurements and evaluates the roadway geometry and characteristics of land use by onsite surveillance. The collected spot speed survey data is used to determine an 85th percentile speed, which is considered the upper end of appropriate speed for the segment. The 85th percentile speed is rounded to a numeral, a numeral ending in zero or five and can be reduced by use of engineering judgment based on field conditions. A new law, A B 43, also allows, under certain conditions, the previously established speed limit to stay the same, assuming no changes in conditions is evaluated by a qualified engineer when the new 85th percentile would otherwise indicate a higher speed. The E N T survey of the 36 street segments studied was, was completed last year and presented to the Public Works and Sustainability Commission in March. They unanimously supported the recommendations of the study. The study recommends that 31 of the segments maintain their current speed limit. Five of the 31 were able to take advantage of the A B 43 provision that allows the speed limit to remain the same despite a higher 80th percentile. It also recommended that five segments revive the speed limit downward by five miles per hour. These are due to lower 85th percentile calculation or an application of engineering judgment to use five miles per hour below the 85th percentile based on engineering judgment. The full report and its long appendix is included in the attachments to the staff report, where you can view any of the 36 streets and the results that were found for those segments. Staff is asking the city council to approve that report tonight. Staff is also asking, in order to implement the recommended lower speeds, the council to modify City Code Section 3-7 dot 503 through a proposed ordinance modification. This ordinance, number 3256 dash 23, is presented tonight for first reading and would reduce by five miles per hour the street segments listed on this slide, which are Inglewood Avenue between Grant and Artesia, Hurando Street between Harbor Drive and P C H in the eastbound direction. The westbound is already set at 30 miles an hour. Barrel Street between Harbor Drive and P C H, Torrance Boulevard between the Pier and P C H, and Catalina Avenue between Palis Verdes Boulevard and Avenue I. The procedure is to open the public hearing, take testimony, close the hearing, and assuming your deliberations support it, approve the E N T survey report and introduce by title ordinance 3256 dash 23. And that concludes my prepared remarks.
Wouldn't the new speed limit signs cost us money?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't the new speed limit signs cost us money?
Not the city. Revenue generator for the city, perhaps. The residents.
You think we have enforcement. Some would argue that.
You think that the city actually gets money from tickets, which it gets a tiny bit.
That's probably true.
All we're doing is we're making the tools available.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice job.
All right, so I see off here Catalina Avenue between P B Boulevard and Avenue I. I don't even know how you can go 30, 35 anywhere in there. There's so many stop signs. When you actually stop, on those stop signs, we'll get to that later on. Torrance Circle between Pier and P C H, that's not even, that's like a couple hundred yards.
Well, Torrance Boulevard is, runs from the parking garage up to Catalina and then from Catalina to P C H.
That's right. Quarter of a mile. But they have the two stops.
Torrance Circle is actually, Torrance Circle is actually the little circular turnaround area.
Right.
As distinct from the Torrance Boulevard section of that.
And then Hurando between Harbor Drive and P C H, eastbound only. I thought that was curious.
So the westbound side is signed 30 miles per hour. It's in the city of Hermosa Beach on the sidewalk where the signs are. I'm not sure how that happened, but it was 30, 30 miles an hour going westbound and 35 going eastbound.
Slow them down. Maybe they'll stop and buy something.
What's interesting about all these segments, with one exception, is that we've had significant changes to the roadways. The Hurando project in about five, four, five or six years ago occurred after the last speed limits were set. And so now we have the new reverse angle parking and narrower roadway width there, which has brought the 85th percentile down, I would guess. Barrel Street between Harbor Drive and P C H, we've added three stop signs in that, in that area.
Stop sign King Jr.
Torrance Boulevard between Pier, well, between P C H and Catalina, we added a stop sign at Broadway. That probably contribute, accounts for that reduction. And Catalina, of course, we've had the sidewalk, the Parkway Dining, Parklight Dining in the roadway there, which has significantly narrowed the roadway and created the psychological need for slowness through there. So I think, I think those roadway improvements are, you know, demonstrate results here in these lower 85th percentile speeds.
And the last one, Inglewood Avenue between Grant and Artesia.
Right, currently it's 35 miles an hour begins at, at Grant as you go north. So between Grant and Artesia, I'm sorry, 40 miles an hour begins at Grant as you go north and beyond Artesia, to the north of Artesia, it's already 40. This would move that distinction between the 35 zone and the 40 zone up to Artesia from Grant. So the last four blocks north of Grant before you get to Artesia would change from 40 to 35. Artesia is actually probably a better break in roadway characteristics there that would warrant the change being moved to that location.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, I don't have my things on here. Councilmember Wazie.
I want to thank the Department of Public Works, Engineer Wenji and Director Saman, because this is where the law, state law change gave us an opportunity and you took full advantage of it and are coming back with recommendations. I really appreciate it, especially because your recommendation asked it, Inglewood Avenue, besides just the description you gave, Artesia, Inglewood Avenue dips, starts to go downhill right thereafter it crosses Artesia Boulevard, and there have been many accidents where vehicles literally fly into the apartments over there on the right side of the street, on the west side of the street. So I'm hoping that when they, with the change in the speed limit, there'll be new signs there to indicate that, hey, you're just under a 35 zone and that'll help people slow down there. So thank you for this. I appreciate it. Motion approved.
I got the closed flag hearing first after we do public testimony. Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? Exciting. You're driving slower. Slow down Redondo.
Drive slow Redondo.
Drive slow Redondo, there you go.
I had to speak on this one just because I live near Catalina and I think the city really wants to get a lot of revenue. Just between Catalina and, gosh, Ruby Sapphire and the streets over there, you get tickets probably, I don't know, 100 a day, I would think. Over the weekend, I walked by twice, almost got hit by cars two different times walking over crosswalk. And I'm not a small guy, but I was waving at cars to me and the guy still almost ran into me and another friend. So I don't, and I'm not sure the speed limit, if it's 25 or 20 in that section. I don't know if you know offhand, though.
I don't.
I think it's 25, but I was going to say if you're going to extend that, that slowdown speed from, like you did from P B Drive to Avenue I, you may want to look at the other first part of the street because people do drive very quickly over there and they do not stop. Other than that, I think there's some good suggestions on there. Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to come down and speak? We'll get to the stop sign enforcement some other time in the village. I've got an intersection for you to slow down. All right, anyone else on Zoom?
None on Zoom, and I have one who supports it. That's it on ecomments.
All righty. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any motions on this?
Motion approved.
Accept staff recommendations and approve?
Yes, motion to adopt, I guess I made the proper motion.
We have to bring back the ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
L two.
And amend the ordinances?
The recommendation is, I'm sorry, I thought the slide was, approve the engineering traffic studies for the segments and then introduce the ordinance for first reading.
Yeah, introduce by title only ordinance number 3256 two three. And I won't read the rest.
And accept the staff report. Recommendations, report and recommendations.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Is that clear? Enough direction? Simple?
We'll be back with second reading.
Any debate, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? None. Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Something to read.
Introduction by title only ordinance number 3256 dash 23. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Redondo Beach, California, many municipal codes, Section 3 dash 7 point 503 subsections A through F, inclusive related to speed zones, establishing 20 miles per hour on South Catalina Avenue between Palis Verdes Boulevard and Avenue I, 25 mph on Barrel Street between Harbor Drive and Pacific Coast Highway and Torrance Boulevard between the Pier and South Pacific Coast Highway, 30 miles on Hurando Street between North Harbor Drive and North Pacific Coast Highway and 35 miles per hour on Inglewood Avenue between Grant Avenue and Artesia Boulevard. First reading. Thank you.
All right. All right, this brings us to item M one, which is a strategic plan. We had started it last week, last time, and, or two weeks ago. And so we're now, we're continuing this forward about our strategic plan. I've got some comments in here I wanted to update and get clarification on. So I think the way we want to handle this is, let's just go to all councilmembers. We'll just do all the goals individually rather than just take them all one by one. So I'll start off on goal number one, modernize city communications. I have a question on the item number six. Do we need to create something that's publicly accessible or can we create something that's internal so that we, the council can know and report?
Yes, I, I mean, we could do both technically. I mean, I think the.
I mean, I think the spirit of this was to create something that would provide advance noticing on items of significant community interest and foreshadow those on the website. But what I caution against is the time, you'll recall, is making sure that we're not overcommitting and allowing ourselves to have some flexibility in agenda management if things arrive late or if things need to be accelerated or what have you. What I can also do internally is continue, and we've done this with hearings and we can expand on this, try to give you some foreshadowing through our internal communicate on your upcoming calendar and schedule that you receive from us on a weekly basis. So if you, we can do that in practice. I don't necessarily think that's got to be something we do here on the strategic plan.
Okay. Next thing is, I see the city branding and city website has been all pushed back by a few, few weeks, few months.
Yeah, I think those are, I'd say that those are conservative estimates. We actually, I think, are planning to bring the branding, first branding conversation to you at latter part of July, if not first meeting in August. So trying to provide realistic timeframes here for you, so when you see the date, you know it's going to occur by the date, particularly with the volume of strategic plan items that you have here. We needed to find a way to kind of sequence all of the different initiatives. So the by is not really meant to be at, it's meant to be, you know, sort of on or before. But those are hopefully conservative estimates that we can, we can meet for you.
Okay. And the last thing I have here for communications is, I've been speaking with Councilmember Barron about this, you know, a list of outstanding complaints that we have against us and complaints going that we're prosecuting, so to speak, as well. So liabilities, calendar, open litigation that we have against us. I mean, in talking with some people, I don't know how many lawsuits we have against us. We were just served with, well, another one, or two this last week, two or three. So for the legal department, Mr. Webb, providing us with the ability to see how many outstanding complaints we have against us that we're defending and.
How many cases we're prosecuting?
Yeah. Timelines.
Civil cases we're prosecuting.
Thank you. That saves, that saves two-thirds of my comments. So yeah, and we're, I think I've mentioned, we're, I've talked with city manager and he's going to make it possible by not overscheduling on your second meeting of the month, so we can actually follow your city ordinance that the majority of the second meeting will be dealt with outstanding civil litigation for closed session matters. And we'll reinstate our semi-annual litigation review, and we can make it more often than that. And as part of that, we'll provide you with an ongoing list of the cases. We bring, as you know, every time we get sued, I bring as soon as I can the case to you to get authorization to defend it, and then we do subsequent meetings once we've reviewed it and need to discuss strategy with you. So that's not a problem at all.
And what that really means, August.
Second.
And what that really.
Second meeting of August.
Second meeting of August. And what that means in practice is you get a very long closed session agenda and maybe a very short, although maybe there's a meaningful item, then open session. But the idea is we don't complete it in the first ninety minutes, we conduct ourselves an open session, and then we plan to go back to close at a reasonable hour as opposed to being tempted not to do it at, say, eleven o'clock at night. So that's the focus of the second meeting.
Yes. And with the advantage of the semi-annual is we can talk about everything because it's all on, on the, on the agenda. So we can do it more often. It just depends on whether we can keep the second meeting because there hasn't been an appetite to go, with good reason, back into closed session at eleven o'clock to talk about something in depth. So absolutely no problem, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. And does that, maybe include like a list to liabilities, you know, people asking us for cash, thinking that we're an endless?
Well, I'm not certain how you define it. So risk management isn't within the purview of my office. I don't know how many claims.
Yeah, claims would be the different question.
Not claims, actual complaints.
Yeah, so, yeah, any.
Decide on claims.
Right, right. Well, you can theoretically, if we, we bring some claims to you if it's out more than twenty-five thousand.
Right.
But because we, but we think liability is clear, it'd be wise to sell it. So we bring some of those to you under the one potential, you know, potential litigation. So I'm not certain how you, every, every lawsuit, whether we, civil lawsuit, whether we filed it or they filed it, or we have good reason to believe, you know, verbal threat or a letter from a party or their attorney that we're facing litigation, it will include all of that. What other, like, complaints or?
So just in terms of timing for the, when they're going to trial?
Oh, yeah.
Stage they're in, what, what we're expecting for?
Yeah, so we're, one of the things we're working on now is, so the third-party administrator is hired by the council, overseen by risk management. I'm trying to get updates from them through Christine Shin of my office that we can make a regular part of. You can look at the whole, whole.
Right. Enchilada.
Yeah, and not just the particular case we're looking at now and trying to make a decision, is it wise to settle? Is it wise to counter? Is it wise to take it to trial? So.
Okay.
You know, we're just trying to make, make certain that that part of the information, since we don't control it, is more accurate.
Okay. Councilmember Lonestein, goal one, do you have anything to add?
I believe Councilman Barron was.
Oh, we're going to go in order this way.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was.
We'll get to you.
Okay.
Nothing, goal one.
Nothing, goal one.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is a frustration. I saw one of the commissions, can't believe I'm watching commission meetings, but they, when they had the director's report, the director had nothing to report, and I see that semi-frequently, or the director reports something, you know, very recent. But the commissioners would like to know the status of all the other items they've worked on that are still pending in the background.
Well, that shouldn't come through director's report. That should come through a regular agendized item. If they want to have substantive discussion about the status of those projects, it needs to be an agendized matter that they.
But if, what if they don't want a discussion about it? They just want to know what's the status of, for example, selecting artists for this wall? Or what's the status of, you know, the gateway being put down at Gateway, you know, that facility, right? Have we paid the money out on that? There's the, you know, just, just an update on all the things pending. I watched our commission meetings.
So what's the, what's the concern or question? The strategic plan related?
The idea is maybe as a consent item or just as part of, that there's some document that we're, where the director's presumably tracking all the items that are, that have been before the art commission that are still pending and/or the commission that are still pending. And, hey, here's the status of those projects right now.
Yeah, what I can do is, I think, rather than create an objective, what I can do is we can talk a little bit offline about that particular case, and it might be in some instances, it's just the liaison being prepared with kind of a general status if they have queries and understand kind of what, what those issues are and being able to communicate, communicate with their commissions. There's nothing that prevents them providing updates or communicates and emailing the commissions as long as they're not violating the Brown Act and replying to all and managing the work or attempting to manage the work. Status reports can be provided periodically in a variety of means. So it doesn't, it, it's something we can create as a template perhaps, but it really is going to be commission by commission, I think, related issues. Some liaisons have, there's more art to that effort and managing the commission, and that might require a little bit of staff training and requirement there.
I can see you being problematic on the public works commission, so that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Barron?
I, I, no, I have nothing else on that. I was just going to comment on your discussion with the city attorney about, and I think Councilmember Obaji jumped in as well with, but I think we're good on that. You presumably have existing work products already that you could utilize, so we could track the cases that are ongoing, date of file, status, amount.
Yes, we do. The part I was trying to explain is that the part that I don't have current access to is a reevaluation from the TPA of the exposure. So they, they have an estimate, they have a reserve of how much they set aside for attorney's fees, how much they set aside for damages. Sometimes I can't understand the logic behind that. So what I'm trying to do now is have the, is to get more information so that when we provide that information to you, it's more current and I can stand behind that or tell you I still don't understand, you know, where that came from.
Okay.
But we have a current list of cases and when they're going to trial.
When they go to trial, when they were filed. Last time it was before the city council in closed session. I don't know if you tracked that.
Yeah, yeah, I will. We, we haven't, but we will track that.
Yeah, whatever information you have that you think would be helpful to give the city council a global perspective of all the cases where they're at and, you know.
So like, I used to do that before, and I think it will be more worthwhile now with the current council.
All right. All right. Goal number two, vitalized core areas. The only question I have on here is River Village outdoor dining parklets. I mean, we've been kind of working on that for a while. That's for the January first. Why is that?
Well, that's when our current extension from the coastal commission expires. So theoretically, we need to have some resolution with coastal by then. That's, that's the date. I'm certainly hoping it's well before Jan. 1, but we're a little bit at their mercy right now.
And we're going to include TUPs, the temporary ones for the non-coastal and other areas?
We, we can. That's a slightly different conversation. TUPs is a different conversation.
Okay. We'll keep it separate.
Yeah.
I want to keep it focused on getting that, that done first.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Lonestein?
Real quickly, on fourteen, it's Harbor, not Habba. It's your pleasure in Boston, and it's Habba.
Oh, this is.
Do it again.
And then, and then the second thing is on number six, broadband Wi-Fi access in the harbor, in Habba, by May first. That's a long way away just to discuss it, right?
Well, this one isn't to discuss. This is to actually expand it, to do it. So if you want.
Implement.
Yes, to implement. So if you want to.
Nope, that's fine then.
Yeah. If you want to discuss it first.
If you can get it done by May first of next year.
Well, I can't tell you how much farther it's going to go, but you know, the goal here is to accomplish something by that date.
Is that going to include utilizing our private parties to do this?
Yeah, to the extent possible.
Okay, good. Because I don't want us being necessarily paying for all this.
We can't do it in a vacuum. I mean, this is.
It's your act, am I?
Yeah.
Am I?
That's why Mike's here.
Okay. Councilmember Kaljevich?
Nothing, none to.
Councilmember Obaji?
Nothing.
Councilmember Barron?
Nope.
All right. Moving along. Goal number three. Why is my thing here? There it is. Another user. All right. I don't have anything other than, what, do we really need pollinators?
Nothing.
We're going to have a discussion about it.
Yeah.
We're having it, we're having a discussion.
Yeah, good point. All right.
Moving on.
Obaji?
About when?
Anything on goal number three?
Pollinator gardens everywhere.
They're only four thousand dollars a piece.
We're going to paint one on the bridge over Artesia.
Councilmember Barron?
No.
It's going to be a super fountain.
It's going to be a mural of a pollinator fountain.
Goal, goal number four. It's going to be a mural. Goal number four, invest in infrastructure. I have nothing to add or ask. Councilmember Lonestein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Kaljevich?
Negative.
Did we capture the sentiments of two weeks ago? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember, Obaji?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Barron?
This is on number four?
Yes, sir. Okay. Goal number five. Let's see here. Actually, Councilmember Lonestein and I, mental health response. Provide a report on city possible options, provide a unified response to mental health in this community. Councilmember Lonestein and I just talked to Action Jackson, Mayor of Hermosa, and he's all in. Talked to someone in Manhattan, he's all in.
Awesome.
That's what they say.
Oh, no, they're in. They're in.
They were upset they weren't in.
They went in.
They were upset they weren't in, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So can we make sure we include in that report?
Beach City.
Yeah, we can add the words.
JPA or whatever.
Provided a report to the council on possible options in the, in print, including our beach city, potential beach city partners or South Bay partners to provide a more unified response to mental health issues in the community.
Yep.
Does that work?
Works for me.
Yeah.
Hermosa has that million-dollar grant, but it's limited to Hermosa in the application they filed with, with Ted Lieu. And you may recall.
Yeah.
So I don't want to go into it, but they, that's the reason they're all in. They have a million dollars. So if we can figure out a way.
But they, but, but they, if they pay fifty, if it's a hun, say it's three hundred thousand dollars, if they pay a hundred, we pay a hundred, Manhattan, we pay a hundred, we all pay a hundred out of our own grants and extend that grant further.
But the person is going to be spread across all of these cities.
They don't have that much need.
But question, do the homeless abide by city limits? Like, do they cross, do they cross over or do they stay in one city? Like, they're like residents of Hermosa, residents of Manhattan, residents of Redondo.
They are residents of the South Bay, and they are very reluctant to relocate outside this area. But we are working with one of the decision packages, we're looking at doing, we're working with the county to try and do a pilot program through our mental health court, and that would be Redondo specifically, but it would be for one year and then could expand to include specifically Hermosa, Manhattan, and Torrance because DMH works for, reports out of those four cities. And so it'd be very, it would be those four cities that would be most useful. So it may be, if you could focus on those four in this strategic plan item, that could be very feasible.
Okay.
So we want to include Torrance in there?
No.
So DMH.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah, it really is. It's Manhattan, Hermosa, and El Segundo because that's how they capture that data. They give, give more numbers, for example, how many fifty-one, fifty requests they write for those four. They sometimes can parse it out by city, but they can give it for that area, and it makes sense to have the unified approach for those four.
Yep.
Let me just make a comment. I was at a meeting with, with residents, and Mayor Jackson was there, and we're talking about expanding, potentially expanding the palace shelters, and he was all about trying to get, and followed up with me afterwards about trying to get, and, you know, I guess we could say that if we had a bunch of open beds, we'd open it up to Hermosa Beach and others.
Charge them.
But right now, that's not the case, right?
Yeah, he mentioned it to me too.
Well, yeah, so they're, they're pushing hard and now I understand. Uh, thanks to you, City Attorney.
All right. Did, did you have anything on item numbers fi- five? Five?
Five.
Five? Barrett?
No.
Okay. Uh, goal number six, enhance the delivery of city services.
I, I will say on five, I did, uh, speak to the city manager about some of these items. I think we clarified it earlier today, so I think we're good on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all right. Uh, item number.
Six.
Uh, six, yes. Item number seven on item number six, goal number six. Uh, by March 19th, 2024, here's a problem with Memorial Bench Black Program. Where essentially, just so everyone knows, you can buy a bench for whatever reason you want. The Espinade is very popular. There's like, I want to say, there's basically none left and we get requests. And I have to have the responsibility to let people know that there's no benches left or if their, um, request is fol- prop, follow our guidelines. Uh, and so I'd like to have this item kind of moved up quicker, uh, as well as adding in in the Memorial Bench Plaque Program, adding in artwork at the southern end of, of the Espinade for the, um, Art Commission to create some type of artwork that people can, um, help donate to and you know what I mean, what I'm going with that.
So that's what the alternative commemorative opportunities, in my view, was going to include art and some other ideas. But we, if you want to call it out, we could say, again, in prins, you know, including an art.
A plaque and artwork at the AI. Yes.
Can I also amend this?
That particular item, it's number seven? Yeah.
Um, and also not just opportunities, not just on the Espinade. It seems like where we have other parts with concrete benches, uh, that are failing or old, you open up the opportunity.
We have a program in parks already.
Oh, okay.
And we're just not full in those areas.
We're not full, okay.
The problem with the Espinade is it's the most requested location, followed by Wilderness Park, followed by Zuliger Park, and we are just tapped out of spots on the Espinade. We've turned a lot of families away. We, for a long period of time, we turned families away. My client got very creative and found a few more spots. Those have since gone. So this is, I think, meant to do something more expansive that might be more lasting in a smaller scale.
It says March 19th, 2024. Can we move that up? Six months? Three months?
Well, maybe ask me that after we adopt the budget and I know how many, how many resources are in the Community Services Department. Um, yeah, we could probably move that up for you. Um.
Foul. Okay. All right.
Maybe ended by end of January?
Yeah, that'd be nice. Um, two months would be.
Pick it up a little bit?
Because I, I get the requests almost weekly now and it's.
Because we're saying no and that's.
And it's, it's, we're saying no and, uh, many other various reasons. It's popular. All right. Um, and then the other thing is, um, all right, that's it. Um, Councilmember Lonestein.
Yeah, this is number 10, Green Line advocacy. Do we really want to wait till May of 2024 for this? I mean.
Well, it's, it's, it's an ongoing, so we're going to continue to advocate the city's position. And May 14th is the end of the year period.
Yeah.
The, I mean, we're going to be advocating, I think, through the entire EIR process. So the draft EIR is going to get released in, uh, you know, some allegedly sometimes this summer or fall. There's a BRR to talk about potential litigation costs. If we want to challenge the EIR once it's approved or and or released, that's, that, this is going to be.
Okay.
An ongoing effort.
That's fine then.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
All right. Councilmember Kalijevic.
Nothing.
Councilmember Obaji.
Nothing. Thank you for that, Councilmember Lonestein.
Councilmember Barrett.
Uh, yeah, yes, on item one, the residential design standards. It has a when date of August 1, 2023.
Mm-hmm.
I may be unavailable August 8th. I did want to participate in this, uh, agenda item when it does come about. If you could set it for a date other than August 8th, 2023?
Well, it looks like I've got it by August 1st.
Mm-hmm.
So you, you, you want to make sure it's not on the 8th, whatever occurs.
Please.
Well, and if we honor our, uh, litigation, expanded, uh, closed session environment on the second meeting of the 8th.
Okay.
Um, we, we, we probably wouldn't be able to do the residential design standards that night anyway.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, we can certainly, we don't, I don't think we need to change this. If this gets pushed, we'll be certain to ensure it, we don't have it on the 8th for you.
Thank you. And then on item 10, Green Line Advocacy, I'm not, uh, participating or taking a position on that at this time, even if, uh, I approve what we have on this, uh, uh, strategic planning document.
All right. Uh, members of the public want to come down and speak to our strategic planning, comments, questions, concerns? I reread your email. Just kidding.
Uh, good evening. It's still evening, not quite morning. Um, Mark Anton, King Harbor Boater. Um, I recommend that, uh, s- uh, simple clauses be added to three of the strategic plan objectives. I fully support these objectives, but they could be modestly enhanced to fully capture the underlying intents of the Harbor Commission. The Harbor Commission submitted a comprehensive five-page list of recommendations. One of those was to explore the feasibility of extending the South Sea Wall. Their right, their rationale is that the Army Corps of Engineers study shows that the wave and surge action could be significantly reduced. Um, and with the planned investment in more CND infrastructure, extension of the sea wall would reduce the risk of storm damage to the new amenities. Also, the calming effect of that extension would reduce the shutdown times of the new boat ramp and make it safer to use. However, the strategic plan objective for breakwater repair, um, says some very general things, but neglects to add, to put in that very specific recommendation. So I, I suggest to you that we simply include the simple words, including extension of the South Sea Wall. Uh, second item to hit on is, uh, their recommendation to provide options to expand the Harbor Commission's jurisdiction to cover AES site, the Sinesta Hotel, Redondo Hotel and Gold's Gym. Their rationale that the members of the city council and public have long called for integration of the redevelopment of the harbor and AES sites for an integrated overall waterfront plan. They further note that the AES property represents the only realistic opportunity to extend, expand harbor infrastructure and activities in close proximity to the harbor. The harbor itself may have insufficient space to accommodate all of the parking for the participated uses in the amenities plan. Similarly, the AES site would be an ideal site for dry boat storage and expansion of harbor educational uses. Here again, the strategic plan objection, uh, uh, has some great general verbiage in there, but neglects really the heart and soul of their recommendation, which is to include the AES site. So I recommend adding those simple four words as a dependent clause, including the AES site. Finally, regarding, uh, Harbor Director, within the Harbor Patrol section of the Fire Department Assessment by Chief Kaufman, it was recommended that the city establish a new position of Harbor Director to provide centralized harbor management and leadership. For years, boaters and harbor stakeholders have noted that the following departments do a great job in their respective areas, but there's no centralized leadership. Waterfront Department, great at managing leases. Harbor Master, great at public safety. Harbor Commission, great at CUPs and Harbor Recommendations, but is not an operational body. The related strategic plan objective only, uh, states again kind of some general things. And I understand we're trying to not take up a lot of ink in the strategic plan. But again, um, I think, uh, that sentence, uh, the section on City Harbor Department could use a simple dependent clause at the end saying, including a potential Harbor Director. So I recommend that the following three objectives be enhanced to include these simple clauses. Under breakwater repair, we just add comma, including extension of the South Sea Wall. For Harbor Commission purview, we add comma, including the AES site. And for City Harbor Department, we add comma, including a potential Harbor Director. Uh, I just finished this, sent it over to the city manager. So if you like those, he's got the language if you want to insert them. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to come and speak? In person, anyone on Zoom?
None on Zoom and we have one on eComment who supports it, supports our strategic plan.
Okay. Uh, so real quick, we had campaign finance reform, uh, enforcement with, uh, firm. Where is that currently coming back? Was supposed to come back to us?
Yes, um, none of the firms, none of the information. I'm trying to pick the right time. Um, there were none of the firms that were interested in doing that. So, um, firms don't do what our model is, which is investigation and then go to court to testify in a criminal matter. So, uh, if you, um, I've had the city clerk and the assistant to the city manager already do all the outreach to verify and double check that that model that the council had, landed on, which was having a firm do the criminal investigation. That's not, um, so if, we can have a discussion. It's ready to go. Um, we're just.
You'll be bringing that discussion back at the right time? Okay.
You tell me, like, I was thinking August because often council members take vacations in July and this is something where all of you should be present. So, um.
I heard the second meeting in August is fantastic.
Yeah, that, see, we're already, we're already, you're already showing the reasons why we stopped doing this, so.
Don't let, don't let any other order of business affect.
No, no.
No, we won't. We'll keep you here for that.
It's just a, it's a joke. It's just, we need all of you available. So if you can, you know, maybe August 15th, if that, if no one else is taking a vacation. So I'll, I'll aim for that.
All right. Any other comments?
Nope.
All right. Uh, motion to accept staff recommendations with, uh, said changes to the strategic plan. Um, and, uh, any updates so that we have included?
Say again.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. As you naturally. All right.
Okay.
Onward. Last item of the night, 10:59. Uh, item P1, Ms. House, regarding, uh, discussion possible action regarding the adoption of a city council policy with display of a ceremonial flag, four ceremonial flags, of ceremonial flags for, from city buildings or on city property. Uh, all right.
I'll keep it brief. Um, so good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. Tonight, we have three, uh, separate but very much related items for your consideration. The first is the flag policy. So as you may recall, at the April 18th City Council meeting, staff was directed to return with a policy regarding the display of ceremonial flags from city buildings or on city property. Staff was asked to replicate the San Jose flag policy, um, with minor adjustments required to tailor the policy to Redondo Beach. And that policy was drafted by our city attorney's office and was attached to our administrative report and our city attorney will speak to it a little later on. The second item was related to the city council's decision to fly the progress flag at City Hall during the month of June to recognize Pride Month. Staff was recently contacted by representatives of PFLAG and the South Bay LGBT Center. And they were interested in helping the city with the coronation of a short ceremony commemorating the raising of the progress flag. And so typically, these types of ceremonial events take place, uh, immediately prior to a city council meeting, typically between 5:30 and 6:00. It includes a few speakers and then the ceremonial activity takes place after that. So in this case, it would be the raising of the progress flag. And so staff is seeking direction from council on whether, uh, we should proceed, uh, to coordinate the ceremony to celebrate the raising of the progress flag, probably, uh, before next week's council meeting, since that is the first meeting in June. Um, and so just, just also as a heads up, the city attorney's office is aware of the request. Um, they haven't been part of our conversation with the community groups, but they're aware of it. And our city attorney is, uh, prepared to walk council through any questions or concerns you might have about hosting an event like that. And then our last item, uh, is a follow-up. Staff was previously asked to look into the possibility of lighting the pier to display rainbow colors during the Pride, uh, during Pride Month, so the month of June. Our Public Works team did look into it. Uh, it is feasible, they're able to do it, but not this year. We just don't have enough time to procure the materials and then schedule staff to actually hang up the lighting materials. And so we're just seeking direction to see if you want us to go ahead and begin planning to do this for next year. So, so those are the three items we need direction on. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to our city attorney, Mike Webb, so that he can speak about the draft of flag policy before you tonight.
Uh, given that this is 11 o'clock at night, that may be the best council, um, presentation I've ever heard. So, um, so I was directed by the council to, um, well, actually, uh, staff was directed to come back with the San Jose model. But when we looked at it, the San Jose policy was the city council policy. And so I recommended to staff that, uh, we amend it. You have both our policy and the San Jose model. Um, and you also have in your blue folder, the code sections that unlike San Jose, we specifically adopted the, uh, federal codes and the state, uh, government codes on display of flags. We don't list particular dates because that's contained within the, uh, federal regulations and that may change over time. Um, and so you may recall, um, discussion of the case that, uh, City of Boston last la- lost last year. And in that case, one of the things they focused on was that, um, Boston didn't have a policy and to make certain, to preserve that that was an exclusive forum for expression of government speech. And there were, um, i- i- it was unanimous, but there was a primary opinion that was on behalf of the six of the judges justices and there were two concurring opinions. I won't deal with, oh, three concurring opinions. I won't deal with two of them because they dealt with, uh, the religious nature of the, the flag dispute and it, whether it did or did not violate the Establishment Clause. But I'll talk about both, one of the concurring opinions as well. The, the main opinion said you look at three issues in determining, um, whether it's public versus government speech. You look at the history of the expression. You look at public perception of who's speaking, whether it's the government or a member of the public. Um, and then you look at the amount of government control over the speech. The concurrence, they agreed in the result, but they said, no, it really doesn't matter how the public perceives it. They look at, is it an intentional expression by the government through its official representatives, such as people they've deputized or government employees? So in either way, our flag policy, you know, brings me comfort if the council wishes to express official policies on behalf of the city, which you've been elected to do and wants to communicate, um, uh, uh, express an opinion on behalf of the city on our flagpole. One aside is that, look at the banner section. We changed it from San Jose in that the city manager will adopt the, under this, will, will pass the, um, will pass the, uh, administrative procedure regarding banner policies. But it's clear that you can't have it be a manner of public speech. It has to be approved by the council, San Jose. They, other people can pay for it, but only upon council approval. And so that's why I interjection, uh, uh, interjected when you had the discussion before on the, I think, a bu- a budget item. So having said that, I feel comfortable that as a manner of speech, on behalf of the government, if you wish to authorize the flying of the pride flag, you can do so. And you, if you see the, the flag policy by resolution, you can express, you know, other issues that you want to express on behalf of the city. Um, although I was not included in the discussions on the representatives, um, who wish to coordinate the ceremony, that does cause me some concern that the flying of the flag does not. And that's because of either whether it's the main opinion, which is who does the public perceive is communicating? Or under the concurring opinion, is the government speaking through its official deputies? Um, that muddies the water. I can't say we'll lose, but it does muddy the water. And there's a note, Boston had such a problem where they, they're just allowing anybody to post it and they'd have a presentation and post whatever flag they wanted until they got concerned about putting a Christian flag up. And when they looked at the, the arguments that the city attorney was trying to, um, to justify and different amicus, they specifically, the court mentioned, like, a, a pride flag could be expressive of Boston's, you know, general, you know, anti-discrimination inclusiveness stuff. And they referred, amicus, uh, referred to a speech by the then mayor during the ceremony. So it does cause me some concern regarding having this, this ceremony done by, other than the mayor, the mayor Protem, a council member that the council, you know, chooses to speak, a member of the city staff, um, could all speak. But I think it should be a city-controlled and run ceremony. It concerns me that it does muddy the water.
It shouldn't be, is what you're saying.
It should be the city that controls it, not an outside. You speaking, not a member of the community speaking, because you're speaking. This is speech on your behalf. If somebody else, uh, no matter what the group, if they speak.
Now you got to let everybody come and speak.
That's the concern is that.
Turns into a.
Okay.
So, so I, I'm very comfortable with the policy, with the council choosing to express this on behalf of the council, on behalf of the city, if it so desires. I'm less confident if it starts becoming other groups because then how do you distinguish if another group wants to do that? It's got to be government speech and that's why, even though it's 11, I went through the, the different standards. Um, and then I, I didn't address the, the lighting at the pier because staff says they can't do it, so.
Discussion for another day.
Yes. And that's it.
Easy answer on that one. Okay. Okay. So, I'll just start off with item number four under ceremonial flags, flags of professional sports teams. I'd like to strike that. I just don't think we should be, I appreciate these sport teams, but now, we're just, I think we, personally, I just think we should not have that item there.
Well, you have to have their rival's flag up there, too.
Not even when USC goes to the BCS championship.
Absolutely not the USC.
We wouldn't have put that in, except it's in the San Jose ordinance, and you gave direction to do so.
We could take it out.
Not so literally. I mean, we're like, use it as a model because it's the.
That's fine. We can just take it straight.
The second thing is, we're having a lot more South Bay-based professional sports team, and I could see if somebody goes to the World Series, if the Clippers go to the NBA playoffs, if the Rams in, in so far.
Chargers.
The Chargers, or, you know, the Kings, a lot of their players live in the city, and they donate a lot to their foundation, donates, has donated a lot to, so I could see the council wanting to, it's up to you, because they can't do it. It's up to you. It's just like, if they go to Stanley Cup, or someone goes, do you want to have it in there?
So, you have a great point. Kings do a bunch here, they donate a bunch, and now someone's gonna show up and say, hey, look, I've donated a bunch, why don't you fly my flag now, too? I just, we're going down this path, you listen, to me, my thing is real simple. We have one flag right over there for one nation. We're all underneath that flag in that tent. So, when we start now breaking off professional sports teams, just even more, love the Kings, they're great, love the Dodgers, they're great.
We recognize them anyway.
That's just my preference.
Well, you can have the resolution. Just again, it wouldn't have been in there if it wasn't in, the one thing I did mention, I didn't mention, is how many of you know that there's a city flag? Okay, so, in this, well, that's the problem.
Couple months ago.
It hasn't been in here for a very long time. If you pass this, I would ask you to direct the assistant to the city manager to get it from right behind this doorway.
Oh, my goodness. I've never seen that before.
That's in his job description right there.
So, it's, there are two, and this policy says you have to fly at a minimum in the chambers and in the mayor's office, and it is in the mayor's office, and it was former council member Pinsler who directed, I believe, who directed the city to come up with it, because we were one of the few cities that didn't have a flag at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, so, anyways. But yes, if you want to take out sports teams, that's entirely you.
And then, can you get the definition here? Flags displayed in conjunction with official ceremonial items. Other flags may be displayed in conjunction with official sections, ceremonial items or resolutions of the City Council. What exactly does that mean?
Well, if you're having a ceremony, if you want to have, we had the Stanley Cup, you know, championship parade. If you want to recognize somebody and fly a flag for them, if a Little League team wins the, you know, Little League World, you know, any sort of, we wanted to leave flexibility for you to pass a resolution and say, hey, we want to express that. So, that's what is in there, so you wouldn't have to change the policy. You could pass a resolution and say, we want to fly.
So, this would have to be for outright out here on city property as?
It applies to, in the definition, it applies to every, there's a government code section that says it has to be at the entrance or the ground of every city-controlled building.
Right.
And that's what this flag policy applies to. By separating out that to, from the banners from other locations and leaving that for the city manager, AP, that leaves him to be more flexible.
Yeah, I'm not even, I don't, I'm not in favor of that either. I'd rather just have plain and simple what we currently have. Anyways, Councilor Baji, your hand is up.
Yes, I don't want our city flag to be part of this resolution. I don't want to be required to fly our city flag. I don't like our city flag.
That's what I seem to remember.
That's that. That's fine, we can cross number four. I did want to, taking a look at, number four above, I guess, under standards, indoor city flag shall be displayed at a minimum in the city council chambers and in the mayor's office. Do we want to require the display of indoor flags? I don't think so. Like, I don't want to be a violation of our flag policy, so I don't want, might not display it, so.
It's in, I asked Renee to open the mayor's office to see if it was in there, and sure enough, it's in there, and you probably passed that, I don't know how many times on your way to the chambers, and never noticed it. So, you can take, you can direct us to take the city flag out of it, and then we don't have to have that as any of it in there. It's up to you.
Yes, thank you. By the way, I really appreciate your legal analysis on the Supreme Court case and your diligence on that, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you.
And on the lighting up of the pier, I'm okay with that. I'd hope that whatever lights we get, or I'd like whatever lights we get to be versatile. So, for example, around Fourth of July, they could be red, white, and blue, light up the pier, and other events, what have you.
Happening this year, though.
Yeah, we're not able to do it this year. It's an intensive effort.
I'm just saying, to the extent that this.
It's a shroud effectively. You wrap internally, or you use materials to alter the lighting temporarily, so it can be done, it just takes time, energy, preparedness, and there's an installation schedule that takes some weeks of planning.
I believe it. I believe that. And what else? I, you know, I'd like to support these groups with a ceremony here in the city, if we can pull it off, but if it's, we're too jammed up this year, then, you know, next time. That's it.
All right. Is there any members of the public who want to speak? Come on down. Actually, I have one, Shannon Keating. That's you. You are first. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. I'm Shannon Keating, District Two resident and long-term resident of Redondo Beach. We've lived in this city for, I believe, over thirty years right now. My wife and I are working on our fortieth anniversary this year. And I have to say, when we first came out as a couple, we dealt with our own coming-out process, and it is, it's a process. You're on a road, and my family had a coming-out process. And I just want to say, bravo to Redondo Beach, that you're on your road to coming out, because Redondo Beach has everybody here as citizens, as people who come to enjoy our beach, our pier, our restaurants, our beach life festival. And by flying the pride flag during the month of June, you're taking a step to say, we're an open city, we're a welcoming city, and you are welcome here. I live near Harvard Drive, where there are beautiful murals. Y'all are talking about murals tonight, and there's a mural that strikes my heart every time, that is part of the You Are Enough campaign, and that speaks to me as a Vi woman. And I just have to say, as hard as it may be, and I'm with you, I love that flag, and I have lived through this last weekend, remembering family members who have served my country. But I have to tell you, as a member of the LGBT community, we're hidden. I was hidden forty years ago. I would have been hidden here tonight to you if I didn't come up and say who I am. And I love this city, and I am so proud of you all that you are making this step. I understand the concerns and what it takes, but it takes courage. And we're all on a road of courage, and I just want to applaud you tonight. So, thank you for considering this. I hope you will consider to do this ceremony. It can be led by Mayor Pro Tem, a council member. We can have members from the community there, from the LGBT Center, from PFLAG, and you're going to see the representation of our city. And so, I just highly recommend that you don't miss the opportunity with this inaugural event, if you can have a ceremony. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Thank you. Anyone else want to come down and speak? Come on up. Come on up. Speak now, or you'll regret it.
I just thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak as well. I am her other half for all these years, as you probably guessed. But I guess what the pride flag means is so important to the community, that symbol, and I come as a psychologist. I've worked with college students at many of the universities that you've all have been talking about, that you don't want those flags up, or different things. But I've worked for years with university students, many of whom have been closeted, but as a psychologist, I see them, many of whom have been suicidal, and some who have suicided. So, you can't imagine what it means to people to actually see that symbol that says, this is a city where you are welcome to live, that we value your life and your being. And so, I concur with what Shannon was saying about, we know it takes courage. I remember what it meant when the White House lit up after same-sex marriage, after just marriage equality came to be. And Shannon and I worked a great deal, and in this community, too, to promote marriage equality. But what it means to those who are affected, including our kids, our grandkids, many other people's kids and grandkids and relatives, is just immeasurable. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else want to come down and speak?
Good evening. I think those were incredible words of wisdom. Thank you so much for sharing that here tonight. I don't know that there's much more that needs to be said beyond that, but I do want to recognize and I want to thank our police department here this evening, should they still be with us here. I did notice today that a very timely post ended up going through their social media showcasing their support to the pride community as well. And with that, you know, it says here, where they're ensuring justice and equality for all to gain trust within the community, achieving their vision, where they are the community leading the way. And yet, it also saddens me to see some of the comments that are put on there. And I think, as it was mentioned a little earlier here, this is a process for our city. I recognize that. I am grateful for the consideration we have here with putting this flag hopefully up at our city hall here. I understand that it was the first step that we were looking to do further from there. I want to say thank you to the council as well. Last week, we got to speak in front of the Art Commission as we start planning what a long-term installation could be here in the city. More than anything else, I'm just grateful that we have a voice here and we get to speak with our city here and kind of represent on the community for that. I understand the city attorney's assessment with the ceremony, and I respect that. What I would ask is for the council to consider, as it was mentioned earlier, it's one thing for the flag to come up, but if we're going to hide and you're not going to invite the community out to be a part of this, to at least be there as we raise this flag, it would be a very important significance to the community. And if possible, while I know that the date was set or recommended for next Tuesday, it is also difficult for many people to come out on a Tuesday afternoon before council. If there is a chance, consider putting maybe Saturday morning on June tenth. You'd be welcome to that as well, too. But more than anything else, thank you so much for the consideration and support, and again, thank you for the very thoughtful steps that Elizabeth State and city staff in general on this stuff, as well as the council here, in letting us be a part of the conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to come down and speak? Anyone on Zoom?
We have none on Zoom, and we have two on eComment that support it. That's it.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve this flag policy, taking out item number four on the ceremonial flags.
And standards, please.
And what?
And number four on standards, please.
And number four of standards says, indoor flag shall be displayed at a minimum.
Indoor city flag.
Indoor city flags shall be displayed, okay, and take out number four as well? All right. And that's because you don't like the artwork?
Well, I just don't want to impose a rule on ourselves to do something in the flag policy that if somebody moves his flag and puts it behind the door, the California flag, then all of a sudden, we're violating our flag policy.
Yeah. That's fine.
What about the ceremony?
What?
The ceremony?
Ceremony.
Yeah, ceremony. But it's not gonna, it can't be, I'm raising the flag, it's gonna be.
I think we should organize outside of what we're doing here today with this flag policy and then the following day?
Well, you can have a ceremony. I just strongly.
We should be the ones speaking.
You should do, you should invite the members of the community that want to be there and want to observe it and everything else. Just you should be the ones talking, because the important thing for this to be protected and not have it be something that is an open forum is, it's government speech on behalf of the city, and you were the ones elected to decide what speech should be made on behalf of the city. So, if the mayor can do it, great. If not, if the Mayor Pro Tem can do it, or you could say, you know, all the council people or whichever of the council people wants to do it can speak at the ceremony. It's just gotta be you and not an outside group, because it's important this remain only for official government speech.
Okay. So, I, we, I did have a.
Okay, yeah.
Not to interrupt your.
Yeah, go for it.
I just also wanted to commend the City Attorney on the great review and legal work on it. He's actually, what he's saying was actually supported by a case I came across from last week, just last week, a federal case in San Jose involving a pride issue, and they reiterated exactly what the city attorney said, which is, the inquiry about whether, you know, this is gonna work or not is, includes the public's likely perception as to who the government or a private person is speaking. So, that's just from last week, and so, the question I have for the City Attorney is, this potential ceremony, was that something the city was going to do before being contacted by representatives of PFLAG and the South Bay LGBT Center? And if not, does that then kind of push us closer into this being a private person motivating the actions of?
So, I don't know. I suspect not, but I don't know what the city had decided to do. I, one of the things that is great is that this began with the council. This was a self-initiated activity that the council supported, so it was clearly always public speech. It's a little concerning, because I don't know the conversation, whether the community approached the staff, but again, if it is, you know, the city can determine how it wants to put flags up, but I just, as long as you are the one speaking on behalf of the city, I think it's still expression of government speech.
I think what we're losing here in this conversation, that there's community members that want to be a part of this. We should probably think about not doing this for council meeting, have this official action. That way, we could have members of the community come down and speak. That's really how that part of this is.
You're trying to misinterpret.
No, it gets done outside of.
An official.
But it's on city grounds.
It's on city grounds.
It's city action. So, the problem is, this is supposed to be, what I understand is, people want to be there when you host the flag up as an expression of your official speech. people want to be there when you host the flag up as an expression of your official speech. A outside city, just people just showing up after it was up there, I think neither will be what the community wants and also muddy the waters for us. And so the clearest way is, you're expressing it, you control it, and the community is there to observe it.
Right. Can I make a substitute motion?
Yeah. Well, you may, and you can do anything you want.
But may I?
Yeah, you may.
Well, I just, and yeah, my number one concern is to keep us out of litigation. If we can, you know, carve the policy along the lines that you're advising us. We just came from a full docket in closed session, et cetera. So this question may come to the forefront. So if the assistant city manager can let us know, was this ceremony originally planned? Or was this idea the result of representatives after being contacted by PFLAG and the South Bay LGBT?
Let me, maybe I'll add to that. So Elizabeth's following up on this work. This concept was initially brought to my attention by Councilmember Lowenstein by an email inquiry. So I would argue from staff's perspective, the notion of a potential event was generated by the council. But as with all events, there's community interest. And it's really the council's determination whether or not we want to celebrate this and conduct an activity. I think the council needs to decide. If the council decides you'd like to have this event, it will be a city event. If we think there's not time to coordinate it, then this isn't the year, and we'll plan for it next year when we have more opportunity and pre-planning, scheduling to accommodate.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment that I think it's really important that, you know, we've chosen to do this, and I think we need, we need to make the statement as the council that we've decided to do this and show up for the community that we're going to have this event and we're going to present it, and we would love for them to be there while we do it. We need to make the statement.
If you, I believe you have the opportunity to make that declaration. If you want to, if you want to coordinate this activity and have it, we can do it. If not, now this doesn't have to be the year.
Do we have the time to, are you able to do it, Ms. House, coordinate the event? Okay, all right.
So it's under this type of guise where it's a small activity with some remarks from you all. And it proceeds accordingly.
If I may make the substitute motion, it's adopt the flag policy, striking from number, standards number one, third, the Redondo Beach City flag, striking from standards number four, indoor city flags shall be put up at minimum and striking from ceremonial flags number four also. Flags are professional sports teams.
Are you, you're wanting to get rid of the phrase "city flag" throughout the policy, right? Because it's in the title, too.
Yes, city flags.
You want it gone from the entire policy, right?
No reference to city flag.
Okay. And the other thing you may want to do is, and referencing a comment from Mayor Pro Tem and the fact that the government code requires us to put the US flag and the state flag outside every building we own. We don't have enough pride flags to put it out. So you may want to amend number three under ceremonial flags that other flags may be displayed in conjunction with, at the end, at the city hall, you know, outside the police station. So that's specifically where you're.
So amended number three.
At locations dictated by the council.
Yes. And make certain that you're dictating for this, it's that location.
Official flag pole below the mayor's.
And then the ceremony?
Yes. And on the ceremony, we'll have a ceremony next week. Any council member, all the council members are invited to speak, and the mayor for that matter, if he's up to it. And they're the only ones who will be allowed to speak.
I'll second that motion.
What parts are you amending here in the motion, in the, sorry, in the flag policy? What parts?
Number four, ceremonial flags is stricken. Number three is amended to reflect where we decide to put the flags. And on this occasion, we're deciding to put the pride flag on the flag pole. And we're striking number four from standards. And we're striking the Redondo Beach City flag everywhere in this policy.
And to be clear, I think you're striking under purpose, section three, right? The display of ceremonial flags. I thought I heard you say four. I'm not sure what that was.
I thought ceremonial flags, city attorney wanted to amend number three.
Yeah, three, right? That's the area you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what about number four?
Striking that.
That's under standards. Striking that.
Both number fours.
Fourth number four is stricken.
Amending, amending number three under ceremonial flags.
And any other direction you need, Ms. House, relative to the pier for next year?
If you just wanted us to move, yeah. Just supported that effort.
And then for the city manager. So this, just catching up on what you said, this was direction to have the ceremony prior to.
The pier, the referral to.
For the ceremony.
Yeah, the ceremony was, the first item that was Todd passed an email on to me asking about this possibility. And it was our decision to agendize it for council discussion to determine, is this an activity that the council, as an expression of government speech, would like to make?
And that was, that was before PFLAG and South Bay reached out?
Well, Todd's inquiry is just a general ceremony.
In my opinion, my legal opinion, I'm not the city attorney, it doesn't matter. You know, the people can come and say, put a tree here, put a pollinator garden. But until we take action, a majority votes to do it, it's not done, and it's not government action.
I hear you.
All right. So now we are taking action, or at least we pose a motion, and we'll vote on it if a majority votes for it, to have that ceremony and to have the government speaker speak at the ceremony.
Okay, call to vote.
Could I ask the city attorney my final question before we vote?
Sure, but I think it just exposes us to more litigation. Go ahead.
With all that said, Mr. City Attorney, do you bless this motion as being, you know, legally tight under these circumstances?
He's an opinion.
So. I think that posting the flag is clearly government speech. And I think that government presentation of ceremony of how it raises the flag that only has the mayor and the elected city council members speaking at it, despite however many members of the public are there to welcome it or oppose it or whatever it could be, is official government speech. So I'm very cautious by nature, but I think this is as much of a belt-suspenders approach as possible. And the other is to be afraid of expressing communication. And I think that's not warranted in this case, and I would warn you if I am, if you were at risk. So yes, I do bless it. I'm breaking out into a rash.
Councilmember Budge, are you saying you're taking out all portions of the city flags in this policy?
Yeah, as in, I pretend there's no city flag.
Strike all references.
We've come full circle on the Redondo flag, by the way. Okay, let's vote.
All right.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Great.
All right. Who's in favor? Hi. All right, I'm opposed. We show the city flag.
Four one.
Four one.
All right. Break the motion up into two.
All right.
No, I don't mean, oh my God.
We got a couple of things left. Well, don't complain about staying late here, Councilmember Lowenstein.
I want to call.
No, 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 no. We're not adding more things to our docket. All right. So items discussed, city manager items, mayor and council items. Sorry, skipped over you, city manager items. I'm sorry.
Given the lateness of the night, all good. Thank you.
Okay. I have some referrals here. They're all actually legal referrals. I'd like to bring back to closed session the Johnny Diaz versus Redondo Beach case to closed session.
And I'm planning on doing it anyways. We only agendized it once for getting a authorization to defend, so.
Can, yeah, okay. So can you bring back any supporting information or in, how do I say this? Video or material evidence or anything that we need to?
I can't, I don't have it. So we'll have to check with the.
Physical evidence.
Well, not, no, I just, I literally don't have like body cams and everything. And this occurred outside our jurisdiction. So I don't know how long it will take to get the body cam footage from LAPD, if that's what you're.
Well, everyone, we had our officers.
Our attorney has had the case for, I think, two weeks. So I'll bring it back as soon as we have it, and I'll make the request. I'm out tomorrow, but I'll make the request on Thursday for both the attorney, for our internal body cam. I don't know if they had it for picking up someone from another's.
Wait, which case is this?
The warrant case.
Yes. LAPD station. So it's unusual case, as soon as we can get it.
We just talked about it two weeks ago.
I'm sorry, okay.
As soon as, and we, as soon as we can get it.
That's a different one. We're getting that one next.
Yeah, okay.
So is there a second on that?
No, I, I don't need.
You're bringing that back already? All right. I also like to bring back the Luke Carlson case.
But you should make that motion. Okay. You're accused.
I'm not accused from anymore.
I would beg to disagree. So you can make the decision. You are a potential witness, but I'm planning on bringing it back. I was going to bring it back on May 16th when, and I would have brought it back before, but we need Chief Hoffman in there. And I was going to bring it back on the 16th when Chief Hoffman returned from law enforcement.
Unity tour.
The unity tour. But I discussed it with the city manager, and you had enough volume on your case. If, you know, I can bring it back next Tuesday if the outside council is available and the chief is available.
Yeah, next week, so.
So I will bring it back. I don't need a referral, and it'd be best, I'll talk to you separately.
Okay. So that's next week, Johnny Diaz. And then the third one, actually, is.
When did you say next week? That's the part, I said, I'll bring it back as soon as I can find that the chief is available and the outside council is available. So if they can both be available next week, I'll bring it. But, you know, the chief needs to be there for body cam. Well, I can't even talk, so I'll bring it back as soon as we can.
You guys can talk about that later.
Oh my God.
All right. Is, are you talking the Johnny Diaz one or the Carlson one?
Both, both. Just as soon as we can get the body cam on Diaz and as soon as the chief and Ms. Lynn.
The Diaz one will be, it doesn't have to have just the body cam, any pertinent information.
Okay, I'll bring it back next week.
Yeah, okay. And the Carlson case, well, you're going to bring back, okay. The last one is the, I'd like to have a discussion sometime in closed session regarding SACIT versus Environmental Protection Agency. It's a recent Supreme Court case regarding wetlands. Whenever you have time to research that and bring that back to us, it redefines wetlands and actions pertaining to wetlands and.
So you can't, we can't go into closed session to discuss a case.
Okay, so as it pertains to open litigation that we currently have in place.
Does it define coastal wetlands? Because any case we have doesn't involve federal wetlands. So I can, so you can ask for a memo that I can prepare for all of you to discuss that. And then you'll have the memo, and we can discuss it in any closed session, which is probably the best way because then I can give you all the memo. You can look at it, and we can discuss it. But we can't go in so I can advise you on the law just in general. We wouldn't put, you know, Smith versus Jones appellate court opinion and go into closed session because that would be improper. So if I may, just, you'd like a memo?
Like a memo for that, to discuss that.
Is that the Bayona Wetlands case that just came out?
The what?
The Bayona Wetlands? Was it that case?
No. No, it's a Supreme Court case. Yeah. It redefines.
I just haven't read if it redefines coastal wetlands, and that's.
I'm not going to get, yeah.
So I'll look to see, that's something I meant to do.
Do we need to vote on that?
You know, if that's the general consensus, because I'm not agendizing it, I'm sending you a memo. So if that, if.
Okay. All right. Is there, is, do you guys agree with this straw poll? All three? Yes?
The answer could be yes, and the answer could be no, it just.
Yes, all right, there you go.
I got a, it's on my list of cases to read because it may be short if it's not a coastal wetlands. And if it is a coastal wetland, then I'm going to need to analyze that anyways.
There's no working, there's four opinions, there's the main, there's reconcurring. But everybody, otherwise, I think it's unanimous that they all agree.
All right, let's get, let's get a memo.
Let's have Barrett do the memo and skip this whole thing.
All right, there's some other issues at play for that. All right.
It's the new council, staff to council referral program. So we'll finish the meeting with that.
Exactly.
All right. Any other actions? Anyone?
No.
None?
No action.
All right. We are adjourning in memory of two individuals. Lauren Phillips. I just want to speak just for a second about her. She was, she was a member of District One. And she was known for not getting involved and taking a side here in Redondo Beach on the political sides, being friends with everyone, appreciating everyone's opinions. She was a hula hoop girl. She was online with the hula hoop with LED lights, lived on the Espinaud down here, passed away at a young age and wasn't, was not expected. And everyone that's on, anyone that's on Facebook at Redondo Beach knows exactly who this is. There's also a memorial for her this Sunday at, at the St. Rock. So adjourning in memory of her and adjourning in memory of James Smith, a longtime Redondo resident. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the background for him. Okay. Who did it come through? Renee, okay. So I apologize for Mr. Smith and the family. I didn't get the background on that one. So that's who we're adjourning in memory of, too. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.